The November 21st, 2018 meeting of the city council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. The proceedings are being video recorded as well as presented live on KCLV cable channel two, closed caption for hearing impaired viewers. Please note customers entry link and Cox communication may view this program in high definition on channel 1002. You may also watch this meeting live on Apple TV Roku, Amazon Fire TV and on the Go-Vegas app. The council meeting as well as all other KCLV programming may be viewed on the internet at www.kclv.tv/live. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM, Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM and the following Monday at 5:00 PM. This building is protected by state of the art fire detection and suppression sprinkler systems. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of the chambers going out to the mess inning. Proceed out the double doors to the terrace and get down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please check with a marshal or fire official for assistance. Once outside, please assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First Streets. Employees wearing safety vests or our city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related to items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you may complete and submit to our city clerk up front. Cards are available online, the clerk's office or at the rear of these chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If anyone is present today who has need for hearing impaired equipment, please see our city clerk staff up front. If you parked in the parking garage across the street, please be sure to have your ticket validated by security officers when exiting. Before we proceed with the agenda this morning, would everyone please rise for the invocation given by Pastor Koz Alici? Am I close? Could you repeat your name properly and I'll learn something? Thank you Pastor.
Koz Alici.
Koz?
Koz Alici.
Oh, well that was much easier. Persian Church of Las Vegas and then please remain standing for a pledge of allegiance and thank you Pastor for coming down.
Well, good morning and happy Thanksgiving mayor and city council members. The word of God in the book of Proverbs, chapter 29, says, "When the righteous are in authority, the people rejoice." Lord, let justice and righteousness prevail today in this place. Let our people rejoice that our elected officials care for us and want the best for our city. In this Thanksgiving week, we thank you for reviving housing market, improving economy and good weather in Las Vegas and we ask you to bless us with jobs and peace of mind. Thank you for blessing us with awesome leaders that are gathered here today. Guide them, give them discernment and wisdom to transform Las Vegas and make it a blessing to residents as well as millions of people who visit our city. As Paul miss say, "This is the day which the Lord has made. We will rejoice and be glad in it." Amen.
To our Persian family Pastor, our blessings and best wishes for Thanksgiving. Your families and all of your families are part of the Las Vegas family and we're so grateful. You've chosen to live here.
Yes, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, even the councilmen. Everybody, all of us psychologically cranberry. Even our, look at our chambers. Now you can get the flu. No flu. Oh bronchitis. Okay, are we in one, two, three? We're here. Okay, oh wow. All right, Councilman Stavros Anthony has the honor of recognizing, that's where all these gorgeous guys and girls came from. Okay, it's yours.
Thank you Mayor. All right, good morning everyone. It is my honor to recognize the United States Youth Soccer Boys National Champions. This is the first time that a team from Nevada has won the United States Soccer Youth National Championship and that team happens to be from Las Vegas and the name of the team is the LBSA 03 Boys Under 15 Silver. Congratulations. And if I could have their great coach, Manila Miranda come down here? Where's Mr. Miranda? There he is. All right, the 2018 United States Youth Soccer National Championship took place in Frisco, Texas at the Toyota Soccer Complex on July 24th through 29th, 2018. The tournament features boys and girls teams in the 13 under through 19 under age groups that have earned their way to the national championship by winning in United States Youth Soccer Regional Championship events and the United States Youth Soccer National League. The LBSA 03 Boys Under 15 Silver Team played four games in the national championship and in those four games they scored 12 goals and allowed one. That is absolutely awesome. Their goalie Jason Sotelo was awarded the Golden Glove recognition by the best 11 votes as the best goalkeeper in the national championship. Where's Jason? Jason, stand up Jason. I'll bring them all down. Good job. Also, other players getting best 11 votes were Ari Servant, Alexis Bravo and Aiden Yamashika. Why don't you guys stand up? Stand up the three of you, the best 11 votes. All right. Patty Rasmussen, the Las Vegas Sports Academy Vice President was quoted saying, "This team of boys played with skill, determination and pride. To bring home a national championship is a long and difficult task. They played the top teams in the country during the regionals and national tournaments and they never lost their focus and their level of play." I'd like now to ask the coaches say a couple of other things about the team and the national championship and what it's like to bring home to Las Vegas, Nevada, the first youth boys national championship.
Thank you, thank you very much. The championship is a great accomplishment for these boys, but behind that is a lot of work, a lot of determination, a lot of sacrifice from them and their parents. Their parents behind that is, you know, working long hours, coming home tired, bringing their kids five, six days a week practicing. The boys, a lot with honor classes, a lot of homework. I mean, a normal kid, you know, they want their playtime, video games, you know, going out with the family, but these boys are at a different level. You know, my hat's off to them, you know, that's a lot of work, a lot of sacrifice and only they know what this championship means to not just them, to their whole family. I appreciate all of you and special recognition, they deserve it and, you know, like I said, my hat's off for you guys and I'm proud of you guys. Thank you.
And yeah, absolutely. I mean, these are great players, but behind the great players are a great coach and the family and the parents and all of you that dragged these kids to practice all the time and supported them. So thank you very much. I have for each of the players a certificate of recognition signed by the mayor and the entire city council and after the mayor says a couple of words, I'm gonna announce their names and bring them down here.
Thank you, Councilman. The truth is, everything the councilman just said about you, you are the inspiration. Having played different athletic sports, I know it's the leadership and the coach, either you like, love the coach and do what's asked, or you don't have a team. But one of the things I want to mention to each one of you, you're so young in comparison to the full life you have. This is a moment to remember forever, but don't let it be the last thing you achieve. This is the beginning and you've set the goal so high for yourselves. Don't be somebody who's 20 years old and say, "The best I ever was, was today." You own your life, each one of you. You have such great potential. We hope that you go on to play major league soccer, World Cup soccer, but the whole, Councilman Coffin just said it, it's life. You own your lives. Don't be people who look back and say, "When I was 14, 15, 16 was the best I ever was." You've got so much ahead of you, each one of you and that's what your parents and families hope for? Nobody else's fault. As you go forward, everything's your own choice, you own yourself. I couldn't be prouder, our council couldn't be prouder today, but just know, this is just your beginning and we're so proud of you. Congratulations to each of you.
So here are certificates for each of the players, so when I call your name, come on down here and we'll take a group picture. So, Alexander Alvarado, Adriana Vila, Alexis Bravo, Nicholas De Leon, Abigail Gomez, Alexander Kiss, Angel Mangi, Lorenzo Mejia, Abel Mendoza, Gabriel Miranda, Ricardo McGolan, Victor Moran, Eminem Perez, Preston Rincon, Daniel Rojas, Ari Servant, Jason Sotelo, Jesus Vega, Aiden Yamashika. Did I get all the players? All right, why don't you come on down here and let's get a picture taken. You stand right here.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Thank you. We gotta work harder this year. Everybody's aiming for us now. Every championship, you gotta work harder now.
Good for you. You're gonna try to win it again.
Try to win it again. That's our goal.
All right, everybody in, squeeze in, come on. Short guys in front. No school today, all right, go do whatever the heck you want to do.
What do you hear from the coach?
I was just telling the major that this season, we got three of the players moved to the Rio Salt Lake Academy, the MLS team, so they're going, they're full time going to school, their dorms there, so, you know, that's what we work for, for, to get an opportunity to better themselves and hopefully, you know, like I tell them, their goal is to play MLS, Division One college. You know, the future is bright for this team. Thank you.
Because I'd asked you, how do you get new players coming in? So, parents, more children.
Exactly.
How many children out here? Are they all coming out to practice with you?
A lot of them are, a lot of them play, that I see, a lot of play for a team in Las Vegas, the academy, so they're coming up slowly, but surely, they got a good example from their family members.
All the people that watch TV here, how do they find out if they can get on your team?
You gotta train hard. These are very, you know, not just talented players, but very committed players, so if you're talented, your kids are talented and they got the discipline, we got tryouts every six months, so.
Oh wonderful. Okay, so I'm gonna make the point guard Councilman Anthony. So anybody who is interested in looking at soccer here and such a team as this, you call Councilman Anthony's office, please. So the team is right there, be ready for all the phone calls. He's got a great, great staff. Thank you.
Thank you Mayor, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Very proud of you. Thank you. Okay, but can you do this? Is your throat okay? Okay, so for our final ceremonial item this morning, Mayor Pro Tim Tarkanian has got something exciting.
I think it's exciting. We're honoring someone today, he isn't quite here yet. I called him this morning though and they were coming and so I'm going to, oh, they're here. Ah, here he is, just on time. If you don't mind, I'm gonna wait until he comes into the room so that I can, he can hear what I say. Yes, he's coming now. Here he comes, come on up. We can have you, Rose, you can bring him and sit right in the front rows here. Sit right here, yes, that's fine. All right. He's in his 90s, huh? You should see the work he does. Well, good morning to all and I wish you from all of us on the council a joyous and a grateful Thanksgiving. You know, often I return to the city of Las Vegas from trips, I look out the window as we land and I marvel how the lights of the city look like jewels that someone just strolled across the desert. And I think of how many jewels our city has, many human jewels that are unseen. And one of those jewels, my staff and I discovered one day as we reviewed Ward 1's Baskin Park. There he was, and there he is today, a gentleman with a large grin, sparkling eyes and a generous capacity for helping others. Nathaniel Montague, more commonly known as quote, "The magnificent Montague," unquote. And this gem of a man is our citizen coordinator for Ward 1 for Baskin Park. He walks through the park almost daily and lets us know where help is needed. By keeping an eye on Baskin, he makes sure that our residents in this much-used park are able to walk and play or picnic together in an enjoyable situation. Well, after he and I worked a little together, I learned much more about him. His history is in almost every aspect of the music world. He's cutting a record with Aretha Franklin and others. He has decades-long collecting of historical black American artifacts, even including a pastel painting done by the renowned George Washington Carter. He had all of that and that still exists as I understand today and you can tell us where it's located, in Florida. And I wanted to say that he's one of these jewels of a citizen who makes us a true city. He believes not just in helping himself, he helps many others every single day. And so I'd like to have you come up here, please, come on up.
You know he walks our path. Oh, congratulations.
Mr. Magnificent, that's his name. I'll say just a little bit about your background and Rose, why don't you come up here too? Because has she been a big part? Yes, she has. Oh, come on Rose. I do it all, yeah. She's a wonderful lady and has been a big help in the collecting and everything you've done in your life, right? Now, I'll just give you the mic to say a few words.
You say hello.
Hello, and then can I sit down?
Yeah, okay. I, it's not difficult, but I wasn't expecting this. I don't like to toot my own horn. I'm, we're laid back nowadays. I arrived here in Las Vegas 21 years ago and from Los Angeles. I had all kinds of things I've done in my career and the most rewarding was being able to deal with music and people and to entertain the people who love music. I started out with rhythm and blues, music like Stevie Wonder, Diana Ross, The Commodores, Aretha Franklin, that's the era that I lived in at that time. And I also became a writer. I owned a group called War. I've had a lot of great hits and I became a producer. All during that time, I started collecting African-American history. It became a passion. So my wife, she would always say, "You take half of your money, you're putting it into books and paintings and the other half, you're starving us to death." But I loved it and for all those years that I was on the air, I secretly was collecting and I built that collection up and finally, it was time to leave Los Angeles. So we decided to come to Las Vegas. Well, the problem I had was that I love to work out, but I don't work out in the gym. I work out in the park. So I said to Rose, "Find me an area where I can walk to the park." So she says, "Okay." So one day she said to me, "I found the area not too far from where the councilwoman lives, not too far from where the mayor lives, McNeil Estates." So she finds it, she says, "I got it." I says, "Okay, you know, you know." So she shows me, I'm in love with the house. I said, "But where's the park?" She says, "Start walking, because you love to walk." So I started walking and walking and there I see Baskin Park. I fell in love and I've been there for 21 years in Baskin Park, on the same bar, the same pull-up bar, doing the same workout seven days a week.
Tell him how old you are.
I'll tell him. And I've watched the young kids crawling, laughing, singing, the mothers bringing them and I've watched them grow up. Of course now, I'm, I'm still young, I'm just 90 years old. Yeah, I'm 90, but age is a number. Remember that? Age is a number. I'm looking at all these young and beautiful faces, age is a number and you can do whatever you want to do. I wanted to be a writer, I became a writer. I wanted to be a disc jockey, I became a disc jockey. I wanted to arrange music, I became an arranger. I wanted to beat the Congo drums, I become a Congo beater. All of these things because I wanted to, I had that desire. Now I could go on and on about my life, who I am, but the best way to really know who I am is Google. I know you know what the word Google is. Go to your computer and Google magnificentmontague.com. And you will find all of my life. I'm there. You'll find the collection, you'll find all of the people I've associated with and you will find that lately I was in the Motown musical, that one around the country, all of these things. But most of all, the reason why I am here is because this lady, this lady here, I said to my wife this morning, she don't give up. She makes sure, she's making sure I'm coming. But what's happened? I'm very quiet now, I don't say too much in the park, but I do my workout, I come home, but I'm still kind of active. I have lately, one of my songs will be featured in the next movie that's coming out on November the 30th. It's called If Bill Street Could Talk and it's by Barry Jenkins, the producer-director of Moonlight. And in that movie will be my song, Hole in the Wall by The Packers. So on November the 30th, it'll be out, it's gonna be a great movie. It's about, a story about, James Baldwin wrote the story, he was a great writer, so you should go see it. So to conclude this, a man tooting his own horn is hard. Let me say about Baskin Park. Baskin Park was in trouble. People wore it out. I helped wear it out, pulling up the bars, all that. I watched this lady do everything she could to try to get the money and appropriation to make it what it should be again. In 1913, Joyce Kilmer wrote a poem, Trees. I think that I shall never see a poem as lovely as a "I think that I shall never see a poem as lovely as a tree." He says, "The tree that looks up at God all day, and the birds they sing and so forth." Well, I don't think I'll ever see a park as beautiful, as warm, as gracious as Baskin Park. And now with its beauty and the warmth, the children can play, the tennis players can brag, they can come back to one of the greatest parks in Las Vegas. And I am glad to be a part of it, and I will continue until they bury me deep at that bar. And if you have time, stop by, and when you see the old man with his leg up, and when you see me down like this.
Wow, 90 years old.
Legs up.
That's pretty good.
That's me. That's me. So I want to thank everybody here. Remember, you can be like them. Study hard, believe in yourself, and whatever you want to be, your example, it's all here. You're fortunate to be living in Las Vegas. Thank you.
I'll tell you, the man's a very exceptional person, and he is one of our jewels. Most of what you and I have said is covered in this proclamation that the city is giving to you today. I wanted to add one more thing because I know it meant something to your wife also, and that is, remember when you played all those records and you loved the music, and when the record got on, you'd say, "Burn, baby, burn."
Yes, I forgot to tell you. I am just so much. I know you've heard the term, "Burn, baby, burn." That's my phrase, I phrased that term. They've used it in a lot of different places. They had a Millionaire, they use it, Disco Inferno, they used it, the astronauts used it. What happened, when I would play a record, and I would be getting down, baby, I mean cooling it, you know, slapping the fingers and laying back doing my thing, you know, and I'd say, "Burn, baby, burn." The record was hot, it was flaming, people were doing their thing, and I was doing my thing, and that's how it happened. And since then, "Burn, baby, burn" has been all around the world, it's been used in basketball, it's been used in civil rights, it's been used, it's become a world phrase, and on my grave, I want them to put, "Magnificent Montague, burn, baby, burn." Thank you.
You're very welcome. Well, before you leave, this proclamation from the city is for you, from the mayor and all the members within the city, and we're asking all our employees and all the citizens of Las Vegas to join us today, November 21st, as we title it, Nathaniel Magnificent Montague Day. And I do want to tell you that collection that he had, and I know how much you wanted to keep it together, and I know how hard you fought for that, and I know all that you went through that wasn't always fun. But anyway, that collection can now be found at Florida A&amp;M University's Meek Eaton Black Archives Research Center and Museum, and that's where it is today. And I want to tell you that it is perhaps the largest private collection that was then turned over to this museum that was ever collected in the world on Black history. And this man did it, and he did it with love in his heart, and I want to thank you so much for being one of the jewels of Las Vegas, not often seen, not often recognized, but one of our most important, because this man represents what all of us need to be, part of the community, part of the puzzle that makes up the whole thing of Las Vegas, and thank you. Close your time. Rose, you come up for the photo.
Right center, right stand, right center. Coming around.
Oh, yes, they want to know, how long have we been married?
I asked your wife.
Oh, keep in charge.
She's the one that has to put up with you, please.
63 years.
Awesome.
Well, of all the things I've ever done, and I've had all kinds of awards and everything, I'm humbled. It's, it takes a lot to bring emotion to me. I will remember this. You remember it, because one day, you will be standing here. Thank you.
Do we have our pictures? Were they all taken? Thank you. You take care. Rose, 60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
Again, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'll see you around back.
I go nine, sometime, sometime I go 11, and she picks me.
Look at her physical.
So whenever you ever decide to come, let me know, and I'll, you come over and join me at the park.
No, I'll watch you doing everything. And then I'll say, "Why else can we even pin? What?"
Oh, yeah, I used to pull up.
Let me give you a good luck marriage.
Rose, I'm so glad you got here, I was, you just made it, and it was wonderful, just right timing.
But you know what? I had to find the parking, even though I knew.
Yeah, I knew that, I knew that.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I know. 60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
Again, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'll see you around back.
I go nine, sometime, sometime I go 11, and she picks me.
Look at her physical.
So whenever you ever decide to come, let me know, and I'll, you come over and join me at the park.
No, I'll watch you doing everything. And then I'll say, "Why else can we even pin? What?"
Oh, yeah, I used to pull up.
So proud of you. Let me give you a good luck marriage.
Rose, I'm so glad you got here, I was, you just made it, and it was wonderful, just right timing.
But you know what? I had to find the parking, even though I knew.
Yeah, I knew that, I knew that.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay. No.
60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
Again, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
I go nine, sometime, sometime I go 11, and she picks me. So whenever you ever decide to come, let me know, and I'll, you come over and join me at the park.
No, I'll watch you doing everything. And then I'll say, "Why else can we even pin? What?"
Oh, yeah, I used to pull up.
So proud of you. Let me give you a good luck marriage.
Rose, I'm so glad you got here, I was, you just made it, and it was wonderful, just right timing.
But you know what? I had to find the parking, even though I knew.
Yeah, I knew that, I knew that.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay. No.
60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
60, I'm humbled. It's, it takes a lot to bring emotion to me. I will remember this. You remember it, because one day, you will be standing here. Thank you.
Do we have our pictures? Were they all taken? Okay, thank you. You take care. Rose, 60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
Again, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
I go nine, sometime, sometime I go 11, and she picks me. So whenever you ever decide to come, let me know, and I'll, you come over and join me at the park.
No, I'll watch you doing everything. And then I'll say, "Why else can we even pin? What?"
Oh, yeah, I used to pull up.
So proud of you. Let me give you a good luck marriage.
Rose, I'm so glad you got here, I was, you just made it, and it was wonderful, just right timing.
But you know what? I had to find the parking, even though I knew.
Yeah, I knew that, I knew that.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay. No.
60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
60, I'm humbled. It's, it takes a lot to bring emotion to me. I will remember this. You remember it, because one day, you will be standing here. Thank you.
Do we have our pictures? Were they all taken? Okay, thank you. You take care. Rose, 60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
Again, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
I go nine, sometime, sometime I go 11, and she picks me. So whenever you ever decide to come, let me know, and I'll, you come over and join me at the park.
No, I'll watch you doing everything. And then I'll say, "Why else can we even pin? What?"
Oh, yeah, I used to pull up.
So proud of you. Let me give you a good luck marriage.
Rose, I'm so glad you got here, I was, you just made it, and it was wonderful, just right timing.
But you know what? I had to find the parking, even though I knew.
Yeah, I knew that, I knew that.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay. No.
60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
60, I'm humbled. It's, it takes a lot to bring emotion to me. I will remember this. You remember it, because one day, you will be standing here. Thank you.
Do we have our pictures? Were they all taken? Okay, thank you. You take care. Rose, 60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
60, I'm humbled. It's, it takes a lot to bring emotion to me. I will remember this. You remember it, because one day, you will be standing here. Thank you.
Do we have our pictures? Were they all taken? Okay, thank you. You take care. Rose, 60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
60, I'm humbled. It's, it takes a lot to bring emotion to me. I will remember this. You remember it, because one day, you will be standing here. Thank you.
Do we have our pictures? Were they all taken? Okay, thank you. You take care. Rose, 60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
60, I'm humbled. It's, it takes a lot to bring emotion to me. I will remember this. You remember it, because one day, you will be standing here. Thank you.
Do we have our pictures? Were they all taken? Okay, thank you. You take care. Rose, 60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
60, I'm humbled. It's, it takes a lot to bring emotion to me. I will remember this. You remember it, because one day, you will be standing here. Thank you.
Do we have our pictures? Were they all taken? Okay, thank you. You take care. Rose, 60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
60, I'm humbled. It's, it takes a lot to bring emotion to me. I will remember this. You remember it, because one day, you will be standing here. Thank you.
Do we have our pictures? Were they all taken? Okay, thank you. You take care. Rose, 60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
60, I'm humbled. It's, it takes a lot to bring emotion to me. I will remember this. You remember it, because one day, you will be standing here. Thank you.
Do we have our pictures? Were they all taken? Okay, thank you. You take care. Rose, 60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
60, I'm humbled. It's, it takes a lot to bring emotion to me. I will remember this. You remember it, because one day, you will be standing here. Thank you.
Do we have our pictures? Were they all taken? Okay, thank you. You take care. Rose, 60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
60, I'm humbled. It's, it takes a lot to bring emotion to me. I will remember this. You remember it, because one day, you will be standing here. Thank you.
Do we have our pictures? Were they all taken? Okay, thank you. You take care. Rose, 60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
60, I'm humbled. It's, it takes a lot to bring emotion to me. I will remember this. You remember it, because one day, you will be standing here. Thank you.
Do we have our pictures? Were they all taken? Okay, thank you. You take care. Rose, 60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
60, I'm humbled. It's, it takes a lot to bring emotion to me. I will remember this. You remember it, because one day, you will be standing here. Thank you.
Do we have our pictures? Were they all taken? Okay, thank you. You take care. Rose, 60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
60, I'm humbled. It's, it takes a lot to bring emotion to me. I will remember this. You remember it, because one day, you will be standing here. Thank you.
Do we have our pictures? Were they all taken? Okay, thank you. You take care. Rose, 60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
60, I'm humbled. It's, it takes a lot to bring emotion to me. I will remember this. You remember it, because one day, you will be standing here. Thank you.
Do we have our pictures? Were they all taken? Okay, thank you. You take care. Rose, 60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
60, I'm humbled. It's, it takes a lot to bring emotion to me. I will remember this. You remember it, because one day, you will be standing here. Thank you.
Do we have our pictures? Were they all taken? Okay, thank you. You take care. Rose, 60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
60, I'm humbled. It's, it takes a lot to bring emotion to me. I will remember this. You remember it, because one day, you will be standing here. Thank you.
Do we have our pictures? Were they all taken? Okay, thank you. You take care. Rose, 60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
60, I'm humbled. It's, it takes a lot to bring emotion to me. I will remember this. You remember it, because one day, you will be standing here. Thank you.
Do we have our pictures? Were they all taken? Okay, thank you. You take care. Rose, 60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
60, I'm humbled. It's, it takes a lot to bring emotion to me. I will remember this. You remember it, because one day, you will be standing here. Thank you.
Do we have our pictures? Were they all taken? Okay, thank you. You take care. Rose, 60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
60, I'm humbled. It's, it takes a lot to bring emotion to me. I will remember this. You remember it, because one day, you will be standing here. Thank you.
Do we have our pictures? Were they all taken? Okay, thank you. You take care. Rose, 60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
60, I'm humbled. It's, it takes a lot to bring emotion to me. I will remember this. You remember it, because one day, you will be standing here. Thank you.
Do we have our pictures? Were they all taken? Okay, thank you. You take care. Rose, 60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
60, I'm humbled. It's, it takes a lot to bring emotion to me. I will remember this. You remember it, because one day, you will be standing here. Thank you.
Do we have our pictures? Were they all taken? Okay, thank you. You take care. Rose, 60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
60, I'm humbled. It's, it takes a lot to bring emotion to me. I will remember this. You remember it, because one day, you will be standing here. Thank you.
Do we have our pictures? Were they all taken? Okay, thank you. You take care. Rose, 60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
60, I'm humbled. It's, it takes a lot to bring emotion to me. I will remember this. You remember it, because one day, you will be standing here. Thank you.
Do we have our pictures? Were they all taken? Okay, thank you. You take care. Rose, 60, I only got it to 60 years, so it's wonderful.
60, I'm humbled. It's, it takes a lot to bring emotion to me. I will remember this. You remember it, because one day, you will be standing here. Thank you. And we're coming up on an election year in 2019 in a legislative session, which is always a time when the public and people want as much information as they can get on what's happening. And so I wanted to, I have a letter here to submit, I wanted to ask that with the ongoing issue with badlands and the legal costs that are associated with that, if we could get a monthly, like, accounting of how much this is costing taxpayers, I mean, there's a lot at risk here, we all know that, but I really do think, I know, I get asked about it a lot, I'm going to be having candidates coming and running candidates again in this next session, I will be at the legislative session on many issues, certainly a lot about taxes and trying to, as a good Republican, trying to protect our taxes. So I wanted to put this, make a request that we get a regular update of this, and I'm going to put this in the public record.
Thank you.
I have the attachment of what we were given back in 2018 as a reference, and I thank you very much for your time, and again, Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to you. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to make comments at this time? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 7. Business Items: Possible Action. Any items from the morning session that the council, staff, and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and enacted upon at this time. Mayor Protem.
In our morning discussion items, item number 54, item number 54, which is a discussion for possible action regarding the suspension and revocation, revocation of a temporary massage establishment license and denial of the request for a permanent massage establishment license for Vegas Spring Incorporated Doing Business as Sarah Massage Spa at 7871 West Charleston Boulevard, Suite Number 150. The abeyance is requested by the applicant to December 5, 2018. We also have item 55, R642018, Discussion for Possible Action to Approve a Resolution in Support of the Removal of the Sunset Provision of the Quarter Cent Sales Tax for Water and Wastewater Infrastructure Projects, and the applicant requests that it be stricken. And those are the ones that I move to approve.
Thank you. That's your motion, but we have a comment from Councilman Coffin, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Regarding item 55, I wish it wasn't being pulled, but I suppose the water authority, I don't know, they couldn't get enough votes. I know there are enough votes to pass number 55. The question is, is, by the way, the whole issue was, the county commission has to vote. It was a great, great win for Southern Nevada when we got a county to be able to control its own spending. And yet, what we have to do is back our county in this issue, because we get a lot of the money from this, for our improvement. So I'm really regretful that this is being pulled. I won't fight the pull, but I'm going to tell you that I wish they would bring it back, and, you know, not be worried about a little opposition, because usually it's uninformed, and it needs to be a little explaining. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a motion made by Madam Mayor Protem. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 8, Possible Action to Approve the Final Minutes by Reference to the October, goodness, October 3, 2018 Regular City Council Meeting. Mayor Protem may have a motion to approve the minutes, please.
I move to approve the minutes of the October 3, 2018 Regular City Council Meeting.
Thank you. Please vote, and then please post. And that motion carries. We are now on to Agenda Items 9 through 52, on the consented agenda considered to be routine, recommended for approval by their departments, and may be enacted in one motion. Note that the record should reflect my extension of items 21 through 30, as they pertain to medical marijuana-related business, and one of my sons involved in that industry. I will be voting on all other items, and are there any items that council wishes to bring forward? Okay. Madam Mayor Protem, may I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Then there's motion to approve 9 through 52. Please vote, and please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda Item 53, a public hearing regarding intent to issue the city's general obligation limited tax building bonds additionally secured by pledged revenue, Series 2019A. The bonds not to exceed $40 million will be used to construct a new municipal courthouse, city facilities, capital project fund. This is Ward 3 with Councilman Coffin, and this is a public hearing which I declare open. And I see our wonderful Ms. Appleyard, please go ahead.
Good morning, Vanetta Appleyard, Director of Finance, and Happy Thanksgiving to you all. We have before you the item to approve 40, the not-to-exceed amount of $40 million in general obligation bonds to build the municipal court building. This item has already been approved by debt management on October 4, and you also approved the intent to issue the bonds on October 17. This is the next step in that process, to issue the bonds. We anticipate selling them in February.
Well, it's very exciting for us all, and as we move forward to build our own municipal court buildings. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this item? Please come forward and state your name. Hearing none. It's a public hearing, and no motions required, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to, whoops, hold on. Okay, Agenda Item 54 has been obeyed to the 5th of December. Okay. And we've stricken 55, so we now move on to Agenda Item 56. Boards and Commissions. Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Reappointment of Members to the Youth Neighborhood Association Partnership Program, that's WIAP Grant Review Board, from the following list of nominees. Rebecca Richard, Mayor's Designee, Ann Kilponen, Ward 1, Becky Skousen, Ward 4, Harry Williams, Ward 5, Chance Bonaventura, Ward 6, and the appointment of nominees Michael Flores, Maria Fajardo, Mayor's Designees, and Demetria Murphy, Alternate Mayor's Designee, Joe Valmar, Ward 2, Edo Uraldi, Ward 3, Laurel Bell, Jose Rodriguez, Samantha Monson, Serena Sabaccio Angelica Taramon, Sapphire Taylor, Mayor's Designee, and Dismoni Black, Alternate Mayor's Designee. This is in reference to all wards, and that would be my motion to accept those recommendations. So may I have a motion? I have made a motion. Please vote and please post. And Councilwoman Fiori. And thank you very much. Motion carries. I'm going to turn the meeting over now to Madam Mayor Protem because the next items pertain to medical marijuana, and one of my sons is involved in the industry, from which I must now abstain. So we are starting with Agenda Item 67, please.
67? 57?
57. Excuse me, I can't even, and 57, right, and you'll be back for 59 as well, but at this point, 57, please. Thank you.
This is Bill Number 2018-20 for Possible Action. It amends the LVMC 6.95.090 to limit the availability of business licenses for retail marijuana stores to those that will be operated in conjunction with a medical marijuana dispensary at the same location and with the same ownership. And it's sponsored by Councilman Coffin. I do want to say that there, I hope people will understand that this is not saying, all this is saying is that you add the medical marijuana to where we have the recreational marijuana, and basically educationally as well as some supplies. And do we have anybody from the audience that wants to comment on this?
Madam Mayor Protem, would you like the bill read?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. This is Bill Number 2018-20, Second Amendment, An Ordnance to Amend LVMC 6.95.160 to describe the circumstances of which business licenses for retail marijuana stores may be issued as standalone licenses rather than in connection with the medical marijuana dispensary, and to provide for related matters.
And we have anybody who wants to make a comment from the audience, or is there anybody on the council who wishes to make a comment? Then I move to approve item number 57.
And Second Amendment?
As well as the Second Amendment, yes.
Thank you.
And now you'll take over for 58.
Councilman Creer.
Councilman Creer.
Have you voted?
Councilman Creer. All right. All right, the motion has been approved, and we'll now move to item 58.
Okay, that's Bill Number 2018-39. Councilman Anthony, would you like the bill read?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman, thank you, Mayor. Bill Number 2018-39, First Amendment, An Ordnance to Amend LVMC 19.10.160C to exempt signage within the Las Vegas Boulevard Scenic Byway Overlay District within general limitations on animated signage that prohibit full motion video, and to provide for related matters. Move for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve. Please post. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. Yes, please.
I just wanted to say, on that issue, it's passed, so that Assemblywoman Heidi Swank was here today to speak in behalf, if necessary, she approved of the bill, so she was happy to say that. So welcome, Assemblywoman Swank. Shortly you will go into chains in Carson City. We wish you well, and we all need your help.
And you know something I would like to add, Mayor, if I could, and that's just thank you for all the help you've given to us to help the citizens here within the city. You've done a great job helping us.
I want, before we move on to the next item, did the maker of the motion intend to make that First Amendment?
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to Agenda Item now, number 50.
60.
Which one? We're 59, right? And that one is, I'm turning this back over to Madam Mayor Protem. Again, it's back medical marijuana-related.
And then we have Bill Number 2018-51 for Possible Action, which amends LVMC 19.12.070. And would you like to have that read, Mr. Coffin?
I was not the chair.
That would be Councilman Anthony.
That was Anthony, and this is...
You do want it.
Okay.
Thank you. Bill Number 2018-51, An Ordnance to Amend LVMC 19.12.070 pertaining to the minimal, minimum use of requirements for marijuana dispensaries, and remove the requirement of limiting accessory uses those related to marijuana-related education, and provide for related matters. Move for approval.
All in favor, please post, or I should say, all that want to vote, please post. The motion passes, and we now move to item number 60.
Okay, thank you. Bill Number 2018-52. Councilman Anthony, would you like the bill read?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman. Bill Number 2018-52, An Ordnance to Amend Various Provisions of Municipal Code to Regulate Sale, Display, and Consumption of Alcoholic Beverages, as well as the Possession of Open Containers Within Downtown Entertainer Overlay District, and Provide for Related Matters. Move for approval.
Thank you. This is a motion to approve Agenda Item 60. Please vote, please post. That motion carries. Agenda Item 61, Bill Number 2018-53. Councilman Anthony, would you like the bill read?
Yes. Thank you, Councilman. Bill Number 2018-53, An Ordnance to Amend the Town Center Development Standards Manual to Delete and Replace Map 6 thereof, which describes street classifications for streets and other rights of way within this town center plan area, and to provide for related matters. Move for approval.
There's a motion on Agenda Item 61. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. Agenda Item 62, Bill Number 2018-54. Councilman Anthony.
Yes.
Getting briefer and briefer.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill Number 2018-54, An Ordnance to Amend Various Provisions of the Unified Development Code Title 19 to authorize us home occupation, the breeding of domestic dogs and cats under specified circumstances, and to provide for related matters. Move for approval.
Thank you. The motion to approve on Agenda Item 62, please vote and please post. That motion carries as well. Thank you, Mr. Gerbich. Recommending now Agenda Item 63, recommending committee bills eligible for adoption later meeting. Bills Number 2018-45 appears under this section in error, as it was adopted at the November 7, 2018 City Council Meeting. We'll move on to new bills. Agenda Item 64, new bills. Item 64 through 66, Bills Number 2018-55 through 2018-57 will be heard at Recommending Committee Meeting Monday, December 3. Item 67, Bill Number 2018-58 will be referred to council as the whole for consideration on December 5, council meeting. New bills, 2018-55 through 2018-57 are assigned to the Recommending Committee Councilmen Anthony and Coffin and Councilwoman Fiori. If any so designated or unable to attend the clerk's office, will coordinate finding substitutes as necessary, at my discretion. As mentioned previously, Bill Number 2018-58 will be heard by the council as a whole on December 5. Thank you, this morning session...
Mayor, the city attorney needs to read the bills.
I forgot that. I was so excited we were done so early. All right, go with it.
Thank you, Mayor. Item Number 64, Bill Number 2018-55, An Ordnance Creating the City of Las Vegas, Nevada Special Improvement District Number 610, Sky Canyon, Ordering a street project, storm sewer project, sanitary sewer project, drainage project, and water project within the City of Las Vegas, Nevada, and providing other matters related thereto. Item Number 65, Bill Number 2018-56, An Ordnance Concerning the City of Las Vegas, Nevada Special Improvement District Number 610, and Assessing the Cost of Local Improvements Against the Accessible Property Benefited by the Local Improvements, and Providing Other Matters Related Thereto. Bill Number 2018-57, An Ordnance Authorizing the Issuance and Sale by the City of its Special Improvement District Number 610, Sky Canyon, Local Improvement Bonds, Series 2018, Approving the Form of Certain Documents With Respect to Such Bonds, Ratifying Action Taken by City Officers Toward the Issuance of Such Bonds, and Providing Other Matters Related Thereto. And Bill Number 2858, let's see, did I go one too far? Yeah, sorry, that's on the afternoon agenda.
All right, so thank you very much, and we are in recess until 1 o'clock sharp. Wow. Wow.
What's it going to take so much time this afternoon?
I wish, yeah, it's posted for... I wish, yeah, it's posted for... Just an announcement to anybody that can hear. We have one minute before we resume from recess. All right, everybody. We're back. We are back here. So, we will resume, and we're going to start off with our attorney Seth Floyd, who has a correction, if he's down there. Yes, he is.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. In my attempt to read as quickly as Brad this morning, my mouth is moving faster than my brain. I skipped over reading the bill for item Number 67, so I'll do that now. Bill Number 2018-58, an ordinance to amend LVMC 19.12.070 to limit short-term residential rentals to dwelling units that are owner-occupied, have no more than three bedrooms, and are not closer than 660 feet to another short-term residential rental, eliminating the ability to obtain relief from those limitations by means of a special use permit application, providing for the continuation of existing uses that do not conform to the new limitations subject to the licensing requirements of LVMC Title 6, and the nonconforming use provisions of LVMC Title 19, and providing for other related matters.
And is this, that is not the one that's coming to the council, the whole, or is it? That is the one? Okay. So, just for those of you who are listening, that which was read, and so that will not be at recommending, that will be at the full council meeting on the 5th of December. So, just on, that was Agenda Item 67, and that was Bill Number 2018-58 on short-term rentals. And did you, and then Councilman Coffin wanted to say something, too? Did you want to?
I just wondered if we were going to have a time certain on that?
At this point, no, there's no time certain. Do we know if it's morning agenda, or?
It's morning agenda.
Okay. So, that's important for everybody who's at home or somewhere else. It's a morning agenda item. And Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm not moving to do anything at this moment, but I don't know when motions will take place regarding the agenda and drops and adds, but I still want to move 96 in my items, in Ward 3 items, up instead of 92. And so, you had indicated to my staff that we have a 2:00 time certain?
For?
On a hearing on that big project on Fremont?
Yes.
So, if you want, then, I mean, I can wait until after that is done, because I don't want to do 92 first. I want to do 96 first.
Okay. Right when we get there.
Okay.
So, let's go through the process, and Mayor Protem has our list. So, we are starting now with Agenda Item 69. 68. Of course. Possible action, any items that the council staff and our applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. The show is yours.
Yes. It's a long show today.
Okay.
In our afternoon session, discussion session, Items 80 to 81, SUP 74305 and SDR 74306, the applicant owner, Citibank of Nevada National Association, on 2.82 acres on the south side of Sahara Avenue, approximately 413 feet west of Lake Sahara Drive. And there's a request by Councilman Soroka to have this obeyed to 12518. Item Number 91, SUP 73821, applicant owner, Devete Kirk.
Could, excuse me. Mayor Protem, could you read that last number again?
Item Number 91? Is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. Item Number 81, the applicant owner is, I believe, Devete Kirk and Heather Kim. Appeal of the denial by the planning commission on a request for a special use permit. Note, the correct applicant owner is Yang Luck, and there is a request by the applicant to obey to 1219-2018. Then, Item Number 99, SUP 73826, applicant is Nevada Medical Group, owner, SSG Properties LLC, at 1591 North Buffalo Drive, Suite Number 130. There is a request by the applicant to obey to 1219-2018. Items Number 104 through 107, GPA 74265, SUP 74267, SUP 74268, and SDR 74266, applicant owner, Family Promise of Las Vegas, at 1437 and 1485 Miller Avenue, request by applicant to obey to 11619. Item Number 112, GPA 73548, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, on approximately 307 acres in the Las Vegas Medical District, generally located south of U.S. Highway 95, west of Interstate 15, north of Charleston Boulevard, and east of Rancho Drive. And there's a request by Councilwoman Tarkanian to obey to 125-2018. And I believe that was a request that came to us from the applicant to me. Item Number 118, SUP 73829, applicant owner, Michael Troisi, at 4021 Mountain View Boulevard, wants to obey to 1219-18, requested by the applicant. And that's it.
And that is your motion?
And I move to have those items, as requested by the applicants and myself, to be approved.
Thank you very much. This motion, please vote and please post.
They're just the right, should be to be obeyed.
What did I say?
Instead of being approved.
Will they add the action as requested?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Move to approve these actions as requested. And then, please vote.
And please post. Motion's carrying. Please, excuse me, if you want to address us, wait for the appropriate time. Items 69 through 71, on the consent agenda, are considered to be routine, are recommended for approval by the departments, and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items the council wishes to bring forward? Any items? Councilman Soroka, are you okay with this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so, please, that's my motion to accept this. Please vote and please post.
Now, where are we going to be able to answer that question?
Anybody who has a question, pardon, you need to vote first. And please post.
We'll exchange.
Now, any question that anybody might have, please address that to your ward council person, and insisting on proper manners. Number one, if you want to address anybody on this council, you will be respectful enough to come to the microphone, and then come up here, announce your name, and then you will say, "Through you, Mrs. Mayor..." Because whatever your issue is, there's a ward, and you need to address it that way. So, this is your time, was it the public hearing, in the beginning of the meeting, at the end? But since you asked, I'm going to let you speak at this. Excuse me, just a minute. Number one, you have to turn on your microphone. It's on now. Somebody did it. Then you have to say your name, please, for the record. You're on.
Beatrice Turner. I'm here to address...
No, no, no. You're saying, "Through you, Mayor," or chair?
Oh, excuse me. Through you, Mayor.
Thank you.
May I talk to my councilman?
Let me ask, have you been in to see him, or are you asking for a question on today's?
I'm asking for a question on this agenda of some items that was obeyed just a few minutes ago.
Absolutely. Councilman Creer, please.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm here. We was all on our way down here for the four items that was obeyed until January. So, you're telling me they're coming back in Jan, Family Promise will be coming back in January?
Let me just get a point of clarification. Is this public comment, and are we, or is this, are we open to the agenda?
No, this was...
Because technically, if it's public comment, I'm not sure if we're responding back.
No, this is not public comment.
This is not public comment.
This is public comment, not public debate.
Okay.
So, the public may make comments, you do not have to respond.
And you don't have to, but the issue is, I'm using the prerogative of the chair to allow her to ask the question, since she has done so. And if you could just respond with the permission of legal... Do you have the beard?
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Great. No problem. It's my understanding that they are weighing their options because of a meeting that I've had with them, and they've been given a few options, and so they decided instead of to pull it without prejudice, and then having to refile again to come back, they're going to figure out what they're going to do. But they're, we have had conversations, and they know exactly where I stand on the issue, and they are trying to figure out what it is that they, what their next step may be.
So, we don't have to come back in January?
We'll see. We'll see. But that's not guaranteed. I believe that they are going to weigh their options accordingly, and they are going to figure out the best approach moving forward.
So, moving forward...
So, as of right now, between now and January, they'll, we're going to work with them to figure out the best route for them to take.
So, Councilman Creer, would it not be wise, if she has further interest, to contact your office?
By all means. Yeah.
Thank you.
No doubt about it.
Thank you.
And you know what? I haven't been down here in a long time, but one, I am not a child, and you will not address me like a child. You got that, witch?
Come on, Beatrice, you'd do better than that, and have manners. Manners, this is manners. So, moving right along now, our Agenda 72 through 79, 82 through 89, may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered to be routine, non-public, public hearing items with no condition changes. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or member of the council not in agreement with the conditions, and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this portion of the agenda. So, I'm going to read them. 72, MOD 74264, applicant owner, MF Land LLC, and a request for a major modification to the Grand Canyon Village Master Plan area to remove .99 acres in the Grand Canyon Village Plan area and related items. 73, GPA 74262, and a request for a general plan amendment from PCD, Plan Community Development 2, TND, Traditional Neighborhood Development, and related items. 74, ZON 74263, and a request for a rezoning from P-D Plan Development to TD, Traditional Development, on .99 acres at the northwest corner of Grand Canyon Drive and Oso Blanca Road, Ward 6, Councilwoman Fiori. Number 75, GPA 74325, applicant, Church La Luz Del Mundo, owner, Church La Luz Del Mundo at Al, for possible action, request for a general plan amendment from Al, Low Density Residential and SC Service Commercial to PF, Public Facilities, and related item. Number 76, ZON 74324, and a request for rezoning from R1 Single Family Residential to CV Civic, and related items. 77, SDR 74326, and a request for a site development plan review for proposed parking facilities on 2.06 acres at 2404 and 2324, Mesquite Drive, and 2413, 2412, 2408, 2407, 2400, and 2324. Cedar Avenue, R1 Single Family Residential Zone, proposed CV Civic, Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Number 78, GPA 74257, applicant owner, International LLC, and a request for a general plan amendment from PCD, Plan Community Development, M Medium Density Residential, related items. 79, ZON 7425N, a request for rezoning from U, undeveloped PCD Plan Community Development, general plan designation to R3 Medium Density Residential on 10 acres on the north side of the road and road alignment, 510 feet west of Chamba Road, Ward 6, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Number 82, RQR 73209, applicant Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, owner, CNJ Prime Investments, Inc., on a required review of an approved special use permit, U 0265-94, for a 55-foot tall, 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign at 2550 Highland Drive, M Industrial Zone, Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Number 83, RQR 73210, applicant Connell or Canal Company, owner, Grand Mode 1 LLC, and a required review of an approved variance, V 002395, for two 40-foot tall, 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise signs at 2951 and 2991 North Rancho Drive, C2 General Commercial Zone, Ward 5, with Councilman Creer. Agenda Item 84, RQR 73211, applicant Clear Channel Outdoor Owner, Minimasters, Inc., and a required review of an approved special use permit, U-0298-94, for a 40-foot tall, 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign at 6900 West Craig Road, C1 Limited Commercial Zone, Ward 4, Councilman Anthony. Number 85, DIR 74354, applicant Olympia Companies LLC, owner, MF Land LLC at Al, on a request regarding the adoption of a telecommunication facility map on the Third Amendment and restate of the Sky Canyon Development Agreement on approximately 1,664 acres, northwest corner Grand Teton Drive and... one-thousand-six-hundred-sixty-four acres, northwest corner Grand Teaton Drive and Grand Canyon Drive, Ward Six, with Councilwoman Fiori. Number eighty-six, DIR seven-four-two-nine-two, applicant Olympia Companies, owner MF Land LLC at All, on a request regarding the adoption of the Fourth Amendment restatement of the Sky Canyon Development Agreement on approximately one-thousand-seventy acres, northwest corner Grand Teaton Drive and Grand Canyon Drive, with Councilwoman Fiori, Ward Six. Number eighty-seven, DIR seven-four-two-nine-three, applicant Olympia Companies LLC, owner MF Land LLC at All, on a request regarding the adoption of the Parks Agreement is included within the Fourth Amendment and restatement of the Sky Canyon Development Agreement on approximately one-thousand-seventy acres, northwest corner Grand Teaton Drive and Grand Canyon Drive, Ward Six, Councilwoman Fiori. Number eighty-eight, DIR seven-four-two-eight-nine, applicant Greystone Nevada, owner Eastland LLC at All, on a request regarding the adoption of the Eastland Development Agreement on approximately five-hundred-ninety-eight acres at the southwest corner of North Sky Canyon Park Drive and Moccasin Drive, Ward Six, Councilwoman Fiori. Number eighty-nine, DIR seven-four-two-nine-oh, applicant Greystone Nevada, owner Eastland LLC at All, the request regarding the adoption of the Parks Agreements is included within the Eastland Development Agreement on approximately five-hundred-ninety-eight acres, southwest corner Moccasin Drive, North Sky Canyon Drive, Ward Six, Councilwoman Tarkanian Fiori. Staff recommends approval of all items, Planning Commission recommends approval of items seventy-two through seventy-nine and eighty-five through eighty-nine. All items are public hearing items which I declare open. Is there anyone wishing to be heard on these items, any of them? Just don't ask me to read them again, what? Yes, Councilman Coffin, please. A count, question for staff.
Thank you, Mayor, take a breath for a minute. The items, and I'm not, I don't want to pull these off one motion, but I just want to double-check something. We have, I think we've discussed in my office, the potential problem of some of these items, particularly seventy-five, seventy-six, and seventy-seven, which create a bigger and more formalized church. And, but these are very close to Eastern. My understanding is that within the limits, for a church to be close to taverns, liquor, other things, you have to be about a thousand feet away, is that, is that right?
Through you, Madam Mayor, that is correct, Councilman. There are distance separation requirements from protected uses depending on which uses wanted to establish. Tavern would be fifteen-hundred feet, it's four-hundred feet for beer wine cooler, off sales, and then you have other uses like financial institutes, best vibes, check cashing and things like that.
Right now, if I could continue through you, Mayor.
Please, please.
I think that we don't want this to interfere with any existing businesses and propose or, business is on Eastern, it's totally commercial. And so, how do we make sure, because there's a parking lot that apparently gets close as part of this package to Eastern, that the rest of it's not so close, but at fifteen-hundred feet? I just don't want to have other businesses upon them, as you know, the restrictive list that cannot be near a church. I don't want them to be stopped on Eastern particularly.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Councilman, so the church is existing currently, the off-site parking lots that are to be established by these applications, they're not impacting the distance separation because the primary use of the church is already there and it's on one particular parcel. The satellite parking lots that are being created by these applications would not expand that distance separation.
I could just make sure then, so what we have, Your Honor, if I could, so then, for the record, we do not have this parking lot expanding the reach of the church, existing church, into the existing business or potential business areas?
Through you, Madam Mayor, the current distance separation from the existing church would not be impacted by these parking lots, it would not expand that and therefore making it a larger radius, it would, it stay exactly as it is today.
Okay, good, so that park, parking area is not counted in the distance. That's very important.
Through you, Madam Mayor, that is correct.
All right, thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, anything else?
That's all I have with questions.
Okay, anyone, public hearing? I'm gonna close public hearing, I'm gonna turn to you. Mayor Protem, may I have a motion, item seventy-two through seventy-nine, eighty-two through eighty-nine, please.
I move to pass the items as you have stated.
Okay, so, there's a motion to approve on item seventy-two through seventy-nine, pardon?
I apologize, Madam Mayor, there is an item that I need to disclose on item eighty-four, that I have a contractual agreement with Connell, excuse me, on eighty-three, I have a contractual agreement with Connell and I need to recuse myself from voting for that. But then, just disclose on eighty-four that I am, I have a billboard company as well and I am not in competition with Clear Channel and any of those boards, so I'll be voting on that one, but I need to recuse myself from eighty-three. So, I'm not sure if we need to pull that to recuse, or do, just for the record, thank you.
Let's ask if I might, Councilman, do, do we pull that one out, let them vote? Nope, just ready to go with that disclosure? Okay, so, there is a motion made for agenda item seventy-two through ninety, seventy-nine, eighty-two through eighty-nine, please vote and let's post. Thank you very much, so that puts us now to agenda item ninety. Okay, SUP seven, here are my cards, okay. Seven-two-nine-four-zero, public hearing, applicant Mark Del Rosario, owner Missaco Brooks, for possible action, request special use permit, proposed short-term residential rental use at six-six-five-seven Prospect Plain Court, RCL, single-family compact lot, Zone One, Councilwoman Tarkanian, and Planning Commission recommends denial and staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing which I declare open, and Mr. Lowenstein?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The applicant is proposing to operate a non-owner occupied three-bedroom short-term residential rental unit. The use meets all the minimum special use permit requirements of Title nineteen-twelve, therefore, staff is recommending approval with condition number one, requiring expungement if the property is to be sold. At this time, I'll turn over the presentation to Deputy Planning Director Mary McElhone for any additional information.
Okay, thank you, before we hear from you, Ms. McElhone, is the owner or representative present, would you come up, please, and state your name for the record and good afternoon?
Good afternoon, Mark Del Rosario, address one-five-two-six, Colleen, Upland, California.
Hello, Chris Del Rosario.
Thank you. Okay, let's go back to Ms. McElhone, then we'll hear from you, if that's all right, please.
Madam Mayor, there has been no code enforcement activity or compliance issues with this location, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments you would like to make, please?
Yes, and I think I sent each council member a little background information about us, and we've been in front of you guys a few times already. And we've heard the concerns of all the neighbors of the whole community about short-term rentals and I just think a lot of those concerns are related to the non-licensed short-term rentals. And so, we want to be responsible in operating one. Again, our goal is to have this operate as a part-time short-term rental, we use the house extensively for vacations. In fact, we're here with the whole family to spend Thanksgiving here and we'll be back for Christmas as well. And it's gonna be a temporary nature as well, I understand that there's a two-year permit that gets issued if somebody is approved. And we're only looking to operate for the next three to five years until we move here for our retirement. So, again, part-time and temporary in nature. And we've heard the concerns from several appearances here in front of you guys and the Planning Commission. Initially, the concerns we heard were because we lived in California and we were out-of-state operators, but we've operated as a long-term rental already for the last six months and the reviews we've received were related to our responsiveness. We do have a local property manager that will help us manage the property, he's come before you guys as well in one of the previous sessions. And we have a local handyman, we're part of the Neighborhood Watch, we have constant communication with the head of the Neighborhood Watch and we've become friendly with a couple of our neighbors as well. So, you know, being an out-of-town resident really doesn't prohibit us from responding to any kind of situation, any needs of our, of our tenants. We do have a long-term rental fourplex in the Cashman Field area already, so we know how to operate a rental. We're not a large corporation, we're simply a middle-class family that want to plan for retirement and we want to eventually move here in three to five years. So, it's just a little something to help us, and so, we're not looking to operate a high volume as well, again, because we use the property a lot for ourselves, we invested a lot of money to make the property our home, so we don't want it, you know, turned into a party home. We put in surveillance cameras in the front and the rear. We've reached out to the local police department so that we can provide them our contact information in case there are any complaints about the property. We've read all the neighbor complaints from the protest cards and we've attempted to address each one of them. We have sent letters, we have reached out to all our immediate neighbors, not the five-hundred or so, you know, folks that is in the protest cards too. I know one of the concerns I've heard from council is there's thirty-five protest cards and we've brought two or three supporters to support our application. However, there were five-hundred sent each time, totaling a thousand, so thirty-five protest cards against a thousand that were sent out seems to be, you know, pretty low percentage. And again, we've read each, each one of those and we've attempted to address people's concerns, party house, drug use and so on. And again, you know, we, we understand that there's a lot of concerns from the community and, you know, we want to be responsible operators. So, if there's other concerns that, and that's why we've reached out to council and passed emails to hear if there's any specific concerns anybody has, we've reached out to the neighbors, haven't heard any concern from any of the neighbors directly, so...
Thank you. Anything you'd like to add, Mrs. Rosario?
Ideally, I do, I would like this to be approved, but it really is just a short-term thing. My daughter is ready to graduate in three years, she's the last one. And I don't want to stay living in California forever, sorry, you know, this is our future. So, we're just asking for an approval just to help us get there, I'm not asking you guys to do it for, you know, just because we want to make money, that's not it, we'd like to keep my home and, sorry, it is mine.
Thank you.
Yeah, the other thing is, we're also willing to put restrictions on, on, on the rental, like a minimum of five days, because again, we don't want overnight renters. It is difficult to have a renter come in for thirty days, nobody takes a month off for, for vacation. So, even a five-day minimum or even a ten-day minimum, we'd be happy to, to consider.
Thank you, thank you, and it is a public hearing, is there anyone wishing to be heard on this particular agenda, item number ninety? I'm gonna close public hearing then and turn this over to Mayor Protem to Councilwoman Tarkanian.
I wish that we as a council could meet the needs of all individuals that would want the short-term rentals and I just have to tell you, almost, I would say, over fifty percent of the requests that come in to Ward One for short-term rentals, there's always someone who's going to be coming in in three to five years or one to two years, and I would think that would be the time to do the short-term rental, because we can't tell what would happen. There are many children in this area, I do not believe in short-term rentals myself where there are so many children involved in the area because strangers come in, every time you rent it out, strangers come in. And we're having a vote on this next December fifth, and if you would want to obey it until that time, I would be certainly glad to let you obey it and see how that vote turns out. But I want to tell you that I have to go first with the residents who pay the taxes in the area, who keep up the streets and all the rest, and the note, you tell me, or you stated that there were thirty-five, four, and how many were mailed out? But I will tell you, we don't often get that many, and how many were there in approval of it? I couldn't find one. So, I move that this is not compatible or harmonious with the neighborhood and I support the planning commission's denial.
Okay, now, your invitation, Mayor Protem, for them, their choices, this vote which you are moving, or you did initially say they could come back after December fifth in that discussion?
If they wish, they could discuss it, but this is my vote for now.
Okay.
This is my motion for now, with a vote with it.
What would change with the, because I mean, we are in compliance with all the rules as they stand today, which are stricter.
Would be corrected from is Mayor Protem is saying that she is moving to deny the request, however, because there is an open council meeting to discuss short-term rentals on December fifteenth, then they would be permitted to withdraw without prejudice until after that, or what is your decision?
If they wish, they can withdraw without prejudice, but right now, it's the determination evidently of the Planning Commission because of their vote, and it's the determination of myself, that this is not harmonious and compatible within this area. And that's the only thing I can say to you, I know these areas well, I know the children, the schools, and that's what I feel.
I, I understand, and I've, we've heard that concern from council before, what would have been nice is if those concerns were laid out in the zoning requirements or the application requirements, because we've heard those concerns before, in fact, when, when we looked for this house, we were in touch with the planning department to make sure it was compliance with what they were looking for. When, you have a reliance on black and white, right, these were the rules.
Okay, what I'm gonna do, Mrs. Rosario, I'm gonna bring it to a close, you have a choice, it's either let her go forward with her motion to deny, or you can withdraw without precedent, prejudice, thank you very much, and come back after the discussion December fifth.
I guess we'll withdraw, we've been here four times already, so...
Is it, have you been here four times on the same item, the same house?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
How did that happen, the four times, nobody?
Yeah, once with the Planning Commission and then three times in front of city council, it was, it's been obeyed twice.
Yeah, it was obeyed because of what, what's coming up on the fifth, but we have our attorney here who wanted to explain something.
I was just gonna indicate this, even though you have the requirements for a short-term rental, you also have the requirements for a special use permit. The council has to make a determination and you have to prove to them that your particular application is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding development. The Mayor Protem has indicated that she does not believe that to be the case, therefore, she's within her right to move for the denial.
We understand, it would be nice to know that before we paid a thousand-dollar application fee.
And when did you pay the application fee, before you came to the council, right?
Correct.
See, that's the problem.
Before the Planning Commission.
Before you went to the Planning Commission because you didn't know what the result of the vote would be, but that, that was not my, I did not say that, you had to do that. I'm just saying, I can only vote now on what comes to us.
Okay, so...
I guess we'll withdraw, what does that mean for...
A withdrawal without prejudice, Mayor, Mayor Protem means that you can apply at any time after they, after the withdrawal without prejudice, if it's denied, you can't apply for one year.
So, withdraw and...
You can withdraw and then if, if something happens with the pending ordinance, you could reapply at any time.
With another thousand dollars?
They would have to reapply and do the same thing that they did previously.
They'd have to pay another thousand.
They'd have to pay another fee and...
And that can or cannot be waived?
The fee cannot be waived by the council.
So, can I ask a question?
Certainly.
You guys say that the short-term rental has the people, strangers coming into the neighborhood, is that correct? What's the difference when we are doing?
A thirty-day rental.
Thirty-day rental, there's still strangers coming into the neighborhood, but we don't have to get their approval.
I think what we've heard from Councilwoman, she's done so much research on this and it really is, in thirty days, I know it's harder to get a long-term rental of thirty days than five days, but the reality is the concern with the children in the neighborhood, you have children, so you know that.
Yes, we do.
And so, you can't guarantee the people. So, the, the choice is, and I just wanted to be clear, if you withdraw without prejudice, you can come back, but it'll be another thousand dollars and you're still not guaranteed that the council will do, so, or you wait a year, because Councilwoman has made her motion to... So, or you wait a year, because councilwoman has made her motion to deny the request, which means you can't come back for another year.
I guess we have no choice but to withdraw.
Withdraw. Any other comment, Mr. Lowenstein? Anything else, Mr. Scott?
Just to be clear, when we were originally offered to obey, it was not because there was a rule change coming up. We've always been.
No, please, turn on the light.
Mayor, there is, there has been pending for quite a while, several different council members who have several different changes or pending ordinances with regard to short-term rentals. So the abeyances that were asked for prior were because of those three pending ordinances of different council people, so.
Okay. So I think you're good. Somebody representing you, didn't you?
Again, we're a simple, middle-class family trying to plan for retirement. We're not a large corporation that's buying 20 short-term rentals and renting them out full-time.
And I can understand how you feel that way. I understand it. Do you have somebody who has represented you here?
No.
Okay, because.
We've only brought our property manager to speak on our behalf, because, again, the concern we heard, the only concern we heard is that we were out-of-town landlords. So, again, every time we've come here, we've heard a different concern, and we've made an effort to address each and every concern.
Okay, well, what I'm going to assure you of is what Mr. Scott said, because the council's working on how to address and what the final consideration's going to be on short-term rentals. We're dealing with neighborhoods out in the six wards, as well as the integrity of short-term rentals in the downtown, high-rise buildings. So what we're trying to do is come to as best a resolution as we can. So, your final decision is?
Withdraw.
Withdraw without prejudice, and is acceptable to you, councilwoman?
Yes, it's acceptable to me. This is a very difficult thing we're doing. We're trying very hard to do. There have been short-term rental problems throughout the world right now, and we're trying to do something in a way that we can do it right for everybody. I do know that the ward I represent, I have to be very careful. I have approved more short-term rentals than any other ward, and more come to me for approval, so I have to be very careful. And I hope you just appreciate that. That's what I'm trying to do.
For the planning commission, can we remove that sign finally for the last eight months we've had?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Our contracted sign company, after this action, will be out there. I think they tried to remove the signs within 10 days.
Within 10 days.
To take the sign down.
Okay, because it is an eyesore.
Barring that, yes, our sign contractor will go and pick up the sign. Thank you.
By the way, some of our new terms coming up will eliminate that type of sign. That's one of the things we feel is not right, so we are trying.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry. Okay, so we move on now to Agenda Item.
Mayor, you'll have to vote on the, you'll have to vote on the motion to withdraw without prejudice?
Oh, okay.
Yes.
There's a motion. Would you make that, councilwoman, please?
I move to accept the applicant's request to move without prejudice.
Okay, there's a motion. Please vote to withdraw without prejudice. I was just wondering if you had something to add. Okay, and that motion carries. So Agenda Item 91 has been obeyed to the 19th of December. So move on to Agenda Item 92. SUP 74024, Public Hearing, applicant owner David Hardy and Molly O'Donnell. Possible action or request for a special use permit for an existing short-term residential rental used at 1709 South Sixth Street, R1, Single Family Residential, Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Planning commission staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing, which I declare open. As the applicant's representative manager here, please come to the microphone, state your name.
Hi, my name is Sabrina Woldy. Address is 1600 Concordia Place, 89103. Sorry, a little nervous.
Okay, so let's go back. You've been here before, and I understand that your client, they're the ones that are teaching in the southeast, correct?
Yes, correct.
And the wife is expecting a child soon?
Yes.
And they were here, they were obeyed, but they did come back on this request?
Exactly.
Okay, so let's turn it over to Mr. Lowenstein.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The applicant is currently operating a non-owner occupied, three-bedroom, short-term residential rental unit that meets all the minimum special use permit requirements. The applicant is applying for the special use permit in conformance with Ordinance 6585. Staff is recommending approval with condition number two requiring the expundereant if the property is to be sold. At this time, I'll turn it over to Deputy Planning Director Mary McLone for additional information.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, this location has been a licensed short-term rental since June of 2016 for almost two and a half years. We're confident that they have been renting since they've been reporting room tax on a regular monthly basis. There has been absolutely no complaints, and we do not have any enforcement or compliance issues. Thank you.
And they're up for renewal when?
They are up for renewal June 1st of 2019.
And could I ask just a question, just because of the application? Why are we hearing it this early rather than later as we get into 19? Is it just you always go six months out or something?
Through you, Madam Mayor. It's at the applicant's discretion on when they want to apply for the special use permit to come into conformance with the existing regulations that require the SUP prior to July of 2019.
Okay, thank you. Now, this is a public hearing. Do we have anyone here on Agenda Item 92?
Is this on? Hey, good morning, council.
Good morning.
Or good afternoon. I'm Jack Levine, 1818 Eighth Place, and I'm not only a friend of the family that's requesting this, I was also their realtor. I'm also very familiar with lots and lots and lots of people in the neighborhood. This is the kind of special item that deserves your positive consideration. It's, we're not, I don't have anybody in my community, and it's a very large community that I'm in touch with, that's opposing this special use permit. It's a special use permit that came into requirement after they were already licensed people. There's no distance requirement variance that's being requested. They're in total compliance. They're not disruptive to the neighborhood in any way, shape, or form. I have opposed other special use permits where variances were required for distances because there was a distance law, and it was the only thing that we had to keep the corporate hoteling of our neighborhoods out of our neighborhoods. But this isn't that kind of a situation. And it's really hoped that they'll be able to come back and teach here again, but the job opportunities took them elsewhere. And they do have family members that they can't travel, they have little children, they have one on the way. Keeping the house in their name and keeping the mortgages paid is the way that they're able to visit their grandparents. So, anyway, we're all in favor of it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Hi, David Figler, 1302 South Sixth Street. I cannot applaud the efforts of Councilwoman Tarkanian and Councilman Coffin enough with regard to trying to sort out this mess that has occurred now, because I think we hit the short-term rentals before we worked out all of the unintended consequences, and a lot of people are getting wrapped up in the meanwhile, and it's very, very unfortunate. But what I'm hearing, and I go to as many of these meetings as possible, and you know I go to all the planning commission meetings, is we're really hitting this in such an inconsistent way that what now seems to be somewhat arbitrary to me is getting very concerning of what's happening. Look, I think my opinions on short-term rentals have been very clear. I think it was a bad idea to experiment, and I think that Ward 3 and Ward 1 bear the brunt of it. I wish that the compatibility standards would be applied consistently throughout, and that you would all determine that none of these are compatible. But that's not what's happening, and it's very, it seems like the folks that we like are getting it, and the folks that we don't like aren't getting it, and when, on this particular item.
Excuse me, one second. Excuse me if I could, Mr. Figler.
Okay, we're leading into where we're supposed to be into this particular. Well, you know, sometimes we have preamble, and I appreciate city attorney's comments.
One attorney to another.
Right.
Nail him. Get to the point, please, Mr. Figler.
And the point is this. In the last application, the folks were just deemed to be non-compatible. I understand, and I appreciate. I know Molly and David very well, and I know their frustration with the system. I know they were asked to do some additional expenditures, to have a notice meeting, et cetera, and they just couldn't afford it at the time.
So are you pro or con on this issue?
I feel that to be consistent, that they should be given some consideration and not be rejected out of hand. I know it's very difficult for them, and I'd like them to participate more, and I think that there is probably a better way than the way that it's going on for them.
Well, and I must absolutely concur with the way you say. This has been a real challenge for this council because of the varying challenges that the entire issue has in it. And as we look around the country to what they're doing, what the results have been, it has been a very painful one, but we're trying to do as best we can, one issue at a time. So on this particular item, number 72, you're a pro.
I'm in favor of these applicants, the way that they've done it, and how they were approved at all levels and don't ask for a variance, and I feel like the system is being really rough on them on this one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Figler. Okay, anyone else in the public wishing to make comment? Yes, please.
Craig Palacios, 208 Maryland Parkway. I own 800 East Oakie, which is within the 640 circle there. And having attended the meetings and listening to their story and where they're at, I think that they comply with the requirements that have been set out by the city of the state, and they're trying to sort out where they live and how that works, but I think they comply with the rules, and I support them.
Thank you. Well done. Okay, anyone else? Closing public hearing, and we are now turning this over to Councilman Coffin.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, was I, am I able to say something? I apologize, I wasn't sure if you were.
Oh, no, we thought you walked down water, and you were doing such a great job managing.
Oh, okay.
No, but if you want to say something that has not been presented before?
Okay, I have my own statement I'd like to make. Thank you.
If that's all right with you, let me pull back to Councilman Coffin, please. Go ahead.
Okay, well, today I'm here to represent David and Molly Hardy, who couldn't be here because they have traveled here several times, and, you know, due to financial reasons. I have been the property manager at 1709 South Sixth Street for over two and a half years, and during that time, we've had zero complaints, in part because of our rigorous screening of the guests, and because I personally check each and every guest in. I reassert the rules to them, I walk the house with them, and we have other factors that help us keep a close eye on the property, including the Ring security doorbells and the ADT alarm system. I also only live a block away, and I live in the Hunt Ridge neighborhood myself. I am here to support them because they've been a legal, licensed, tax-paying owner since day one, and honestly, I just feel that there is no one who deserves this license more than them. I am a Las Vegas entrepreneur, and I can tell you that this has been a really important part of what I've been doing financially. So, yes, that's pretty much what I wanted to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
They spoke very highly of you, so thank you for coming down.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Now, anyone else from council but turning this over to Councilman Coffin, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the second or third time we've heard this. We heard it October 17th. I was going to move for denial at that time. I'd heard all the stories, and there was a lot of resentment on the part of the professors to have to go through these hoops, but they have to be treated the same way everybody else does. I also live a very short distance from this home, and we have negotiated another short-term rental nearby which is going to require live-in at the time of STRs, owner occupied. And I cannot change my policy on this now. I'm going to hold that other applicant to the same standard I'm about to on this one, but let's go over this directly. Your clients, Sabrina, had an opportunity to hold a neighborhood meeting. They were asked to do that when, before I made my motion, and they could sense that it was going to pass, and so we did give them a chance to, I'm not calling on you for advice, I mentioned your name, but if you want to sit right there in front row, you can.
I have a statement to make.
So you'd be comfy in case you have to come up. So, we gave your client the options to deny at that time or take some while, so we obeyed it for a month so that they could hold a neighborhood meeting. Now, they were reluctant to agree to that, but that was the understanding. As they left, they told my staff person, Mr. Ortiz, they did not want to hold a neighborhood meeting, and they would not hold a neighborhood meeting. And all of the neighborhoods did not support this application. Immediate neighbors did oppose. And so, I feel like, in the absence of a neighborhood meeting, which they would have had to do, we gave them grace, we gave them 30 days more grace, and they wouldn't do it, and it was explained to them. Mr. Lowenstein sent a letter to Mr. Hardy explaining, again, what had been agreed upon at the meeting, and they still refused to hold a neighborhood meeting. But that's not expensive. Believe me, you can find out how to do that. The point is, they don't live in town, they live in Connecticut, both of them. They can't be here. You don't live in the house. If someone was living in the house permanently and would be there during short-term rentals, I would approve of that. But we have to go back to the fundamentals we argued about a year and a half ago, and that is, who do we complain to after a short-term rental leaves town and the owner is not there? The owner's not even in town anywhere, but not even at that residence. So, for that reason, there's a lot of hits against this application. So, Your Honor, I'm going to move now to deny this item.
Do you want to come forward? Please come back up if you want to make a comment.
Well, the Hardys did attempt to reach Councilman Coffin by phone, email, and through his staff in order to find out the purpose of the community meeting, as well as what the agenda would be and what the outcome could mean, and they were never informed. This, I'm sorry, if a purpose cannot be identified, how can you ask someone to spend over $500 to hold a meeting that gains them no greater clarity and stand before this body? Others have been granted an SUP in this same neighborhood, have never been asked to go through this process. The voices of the community have been overwhelmingly positive. This is the purpose of the postcards that were already sent as part of the application process. And people wrote it online, they came in in person, they sent in forms to back and support us. How many times must we be asked the same question, and how many times do we have to pay to have this question presented? Have, excuse me, having another community gathering seems like an arbitrary request, perhaps meant only to delay our ability to continue this process by placing an additional financial burden on the owners who have already spent thousands of dollars complying with extensive changes to the law in the last two years. So that's all I have.
Okay, so there, yes, please. Councilman Anthony, please.
Thank you. Again, these short-term rentals are becoming very confusing, and is Mr. Figler, is that your name? I mean, he kind of hit it on the, I mean, the nail on the head, is we're kind of all over the place on these short-term rentals. So, I have one here that I'm supposed to vote on, and the two reasons that Councilman Coffin gave for not supporting them are, it has to be owner occupied. Well, there's no rule that says it has to be owner occupied, you just kind of made that up on your own. So you can't, I mean, if the ordinance that we're going by said it has to be owner occupied, then I would support you, but I can't make up my own rules on whether or not to support something. So that's not an issue for me. And the other one is a neighborhood meeting. I don't think that's a requirement either. None of them have had neighborhood meetings, they just send out the notices and they get the information, and so that's not a requirement either. So, the two reasons you're giving me to deny this are not requirements, you're just kind of making this up for this one. And really, for anything in your ward, you want it to be owner occupied, and that's not the rule. We can't just come up with arbitrary rules on our own. So, I understand what you're saying, but it doesn't fit. So, unless you give me some other reasons, I'm going to support this one, because the reasons you're giving me are not valid.
Madam Mayor. Yes, please.
I'd like to, but I'd like to.
Yes, Councilwoman Fiore, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to support Councilman Stavros on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. If I could just address, you know, respectfully address through you to the councilman from Ward 4. This council did vote to delay, not the entire council was here, Councilman Fiore was in Singapore, I think, on October 17th. The issue is, we have saturation coming here. It is very, very, very scary if you go up and down this neighborhood, which I live in, Your Honor. There are a lot of houses being sold, flipped. We have a realtor here who I know and like and trust speaking up for this, but it's his client, you know? Jack, God bless Jack, he's got to work for his money too. Mr. Figler and I and Mr. Vanas on 96 worked out a compromise where there will be owner occupied at all times, so it can be done. So, it can be done, and again, this council voted to give them time to have a neighborhood meeting. It is important in all of these, in these... Before you put a business in a residential neighborhood, to let people weigh in. And they wouldn't, they refused it. Now, that doesn't sound like cooperation, and it sure sounds like a sob story to me.
Okay, any other comments here, please?
Madam Mayor, through you, could I... Do we have them pay another $500?
For what?
Well, what is the financial burden? Could you... Maybe I didn't understand that correctly. You said that there was another $500 to have a neighborhood meeting?
Uh, yes.
I don't know of us charging for a neighborhood meeting.
I believe that was the estimate of the cost.
Yes, it was the estimate of the cost of the announcement.
Oh, it was the estimate of the cost of sending it out, I see.
And organizing the event and...
Mayor, the applicant could send that out on their own. It's not necessarily that they buy our list. They could just get a list from a Realtor or someone else to then send out the notices on their own, so...
But as Councilman Anthony said, there wasn't... There's no rule, ordinance in place at this point for that. So, there has been a motion made by Councilman Coffin, and, no, let's just move this forward. We've done enough, and we have others, and we have a 2:00 appointment here at time certain. The motion is from Councilman Coffin is to deny. If you support denying, you vote yea, and if you are against denying, which means there'd have to be another motion, you vote nay. So, please cast your votes. And then please post.
Madam Mayor, I just want to say that I can understand this problem. In the past, I've always supported the councilperson's decision in their own ward. I will do that to continue the pattern I've always had, but I do feel that you've done a great job and that there's some deserving there.
Please post.
You're going to win.
The motion is denied... To deny is denied and fails, and I'm going to make a motion to approve this short-term rental, and that's my motion. And please vote. Motion carries. Motion carries. So let's move on to our point. At 2:00, our next items are going to be, time certain. These are agenda items 119 through 124.
Your Honor, I need to ask a question. It's very much in order at this moment. It won't take long, but we've got to ask a question before we proceed.
Is this in relation to what we just passed?
It is in relation to what's coming and what just passed.
At the time we get to what's coming, you'll ask your question right away.
Well, Your Honor, I need to ask a parliamentary question of the lawyer, though.
No, I think now we've voted, the motion is carried, you go ahead.
No, it's another question. Your Honor, let me ask a question of our council.
You're out of order? I'm sorry, I run this...
I'm coming through here, Your Honor.
Will you please stop this, Councilman?
Well, you're driving the agenda.
I'm running. No, yes, I am.
I know, you're breaking up our neighborhood.
So, we have it 2:00, please be quiet.
You are breaking up our neighborhood, Your Honor.
Please, let me read Agenda Items 119. Okay, this is Agenda Items number 119 through 124. It may take me five hours to read it, so I'll be right with you both. 119, S U P 74299, a request for a special use permit for an automobile rental use and related item. Number 120, S U P 74300, a request for a special use permit for proposed 22,200 square-foot expansion to an existing gaming establishment, non-restricted use, related item 121, S U P 74301, a request for a special use permit to allow a proposed 320-foot building height within the 200-foot airport overlay district, and related item 122, S U P 74302, a request for a special use permit to allow valet parking at the southwest corner of Ogden Avenue and Third Street, C2, general commercial zone. Number 123, V A C 74304, a request for a petition to vacate a 20-foot-wide public alley generally located on the south side of Ogden Avenue, approximately 150 feet west of Third Street. And Agenda Item 124, S D R 74303, a request for a site development plan review for a 610, 463 square-foot phased expansion for an existing hotel casino, including a new 320-foot-tall hotel tower, exterior facade improvements, and a new parking garage with waivers of Title 19 Appendix F, development standards on 2.68 acres, southwest corner of Ogden Avenue and Third Street, C2, general commercial zone. The applicant owner is Sam Will, Inc., et al. The planning commission and staff recommend approval of all items. These are in Ward Five with Councilman Creer. Our public hearings, which I declare open, and is the applicant or representative is pregnant? Present?
Present.
Not pregnant, present, you may be pregnant, Joe. Okay.
Ready? Mayor, members of the City Council, I'm Bill Noonan, Senior Vice President of Government Affairs for Boyd Gaming Corporation, and I'm here today representing Bill Boyd, our founder, and the family and the Boyd Corporation, who are here to talk about the next evolution of a major redevelopment for Boyd Gaming in downtown Las Vegas. Before I begin and introduce the project, I would like to recognize one of my colleagues who is here today, who I think all of you know quite well, and for the past 25 years, this executive with Boyd Gaming has led the development and the growth of Boyd Gaming properties in downtown. I'd like to recognize Steve Thompson, our Executive Vice President of Boyd Gaming. There he is. Thank you, Steve. Steve is also here because he knows all of the history, like most of you do and I do, of the many projects that have taken place in downtown Las Vegas. We're here today because we understand that Boyd Gaming really got our start in downtown Las Vegas, where we've grown actually to be one of the largest gaming companies in the country, especially from a regional gaming perspective. Rest assured, we remember quite well that our roots have always been right here in downtown Las Vegas. We're committed to keeping up with what's happening downtown. As you all know, we have three properties in downtown Las Vegas. We employ just over 2,000 employees in those three locations, and we're here today to talk about the next big development of one of our existing properties. You also, I believe, are aware that every year, we bring tens of thousands of Hawaiian visitors to downtown Las Vegas through the charter service that we operate out of downtown Hawaii. We also, what we're very pleased to tell you about today, is that we recently completed the renovations of the California, and it has been so well-received from all the customers that have come in and visited us, not only from Hawaii, but those that visit downtown and come into the California Hotel and Casino. But downtown is so important to us, and again, that's why we're here today. We want to make this a continuation of the improvements that we've made over the course of time, and we want this next project that we're going to introduce in just a moment to be one of our flagships in all of downtown Las Vegas. As far as timing of this project, being a public company, we have to, if we receive favorable approval from you today, we have to take that project back to our Board of Directors, get their approval for the final funding of the project. Several of you have asked me, what is the timing for when we believe we could actually start construction? We would hope late Q1, early Q2 of next year. So this is something that's going to be happening rather fast, and we hope to get up in operational and in construction sometime early next year. I would like to introduce my colleague that's here with me today. He's our longtime land use expert for Boyd Gaming, Russell Rowe. Russell is going to walk you through the meat of the project, and both Steve Thompson and I are here to answer any questions at the conclusion of Russell's presentation. I'll now turn it over to Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Bill. Russell Rowe, for the record, apparently I've been promoted. That's good. Thank you, Bill.
I like this guy.
He always says he has socks older than I am, so I take that as a compliment.
But you're graying, I want you to know.
I am graying, man. I'm glad you noticed.
Your socks aren't.
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll be relatively brief and just go through the project in really in an overview fashion, and if you have any questions, we're happy to get into the details. It's a three-phase project, the renovation of the Fremont. Phase one is the construction of a new tower, 25 stories, 509 rooms. That's on the northeast corner of the site. Phase two is the renovation and improvements to Third Street. As you know, that's really more of a pedestrian realm right now. We intend to remodel that into vehicular, public vehicular access to actually would match the cul-de-sac that you see at First Street that cul-de-sacs at FSE. We'll do the same for Third Street, but we're also going to add ride share and transportation services parking, because we know, just through working with our friends at FSE and at LVCVA, one of the concerns we have downtown is not enough access to all the amenities downtown for folks who want to come visit, who may not be staying downtown, or locals as well. So this will really provide greater access, not just to the Fremont Hotel, but to the Fremont Street Experience, to our friends on the north side of Ogden, all the way down to the Mob Museum. So we really think this is going to be additive for everyone, in addition to our property. We're also going to provide outdoor dining along Third Street, so that's really going to create an amenity zone for Third Street, and we think make it a just more vibrant environment than it is today. And there'll be also, from a transportation perspective, an additional exclusive drop-off pickup zone right here along the west side of Third Street. And then finally, Phase Three is the demolition and reconstruction of our parking garage. It's a seven-story parking garage, and we'll be adding a pool and cabanas on the top, which is not an amenity that Fremont currently has. And then we'll completely remodel the existing hotel tower, taking all of the rooms and combining two into one, so we're expanding the current rooms there and making them much larger and certainly more modern. So, this is a wholesale renovation of the Fremont Hotel that we look forward to, and of course, if you have any more questions, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you. I mean, wow. One of the things I know you've been working on, too, the parking facility is in Phase Three?
Russell Rowe, for the record, that's correct, Mayor, in Phase Three.
Okay, and so in that timeline, when you're working on Three, where do those people go to park?
So we...
Your employees, I might add, and visitors, or a combination, or just visitors?
So, we're working to provide alternative parking while that parking garage is under construction, working with the city and some of our partners in the community for that. We're also going to be providing valet access that we're working with the city on along Third Street during the time that parking structure is demolished and reconstructed, so our guests and visitors can access the property from Third Street. So it will essentially... We'll actually have an alternative registration area off of Third Street during that time. And actually, I'm glad you mentioned that, Mayor, because one thing I did forget to mention, we've been working diligently with your staff because of the other projects that are occurring in this area along Ogden. It's important that we all coordinate and work together to make sure we mitigate impacts, particularly on Ogden Avenue, but even in this greater area with respect to traffic with the other projects that are coming. So, we're coordinating with staff on that, and we want to make sure this area and all the developments occur as smoothly as possible.
And one last thing, if I could, Mr. Rowe or Mr. Noonan, the area immediately on this diagram to the right of your... That cul-de-sac at the end, what is that area, and is there entry... That, yes. And is that an entry into the Fremont Street Experience promenade? Does that remain as it is, or what?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct. So, the area to the right that you identified is the existing area that the Fremont Street Experience operates to blend in with the actual mall itself. Our renovation will occur where you see these, the red outline, but we intend to make sure that the transition there is smooth. There's not going to be any wall or anything like that. It'll be completely transitional, so folks can go from the Fremont Street Experience along the promenade through downtown Grand Property and all the way to the Mob Museum.
Very exciting, but now at this point, if the council should see it of great value, then you go to your board, and then you come back to us again, or from there, it's just to go ahead?
Mayor Bill Noonan, for the record, we would move forward once we get your approvals today. We would immediately then take the project for funding to our Board of Directors, and we would be able to move forward, assuming we move forward with all the conditions that are laid out in the application. I would also like to add, we want to really thank the staff. Having sat in that seat a long time ago, I know the amount of hard work and effort that goes into working with developers on projects like this. The planning staff, the public work staff, and the city manager's office couldn't have been better to work with as we worked through all the details of this really exciting project for downtown.
Well, I'm just really excited. I'm sure you're going to hear from other council, but we have a public hearing here, so I'm first in the normal pursuit, going to turn to Mr. Lowenstein for planning.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Staff is recommending approval of the requested development, as is appropriate in the downtown casino core, and the proposed improvements are consistent with other similar uses in the area. Thank you.
I think I'd fire you if I could, if you hadn't said that. It's so exciting. And, yes, okay, I want to just go to the public, and then we'll turn it back to council. It's just a wonderful time. Is there anyone from the public that would like to come forward and speak on this particular, any of these, 119 to 24? I'm going to close public hearing. We'll start with Councilman Anthony, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just want to thank you for your continued investment in downtown Las Vegas. We all really appreciate what you do down there. Second, I'm glad to see that that Third Street section is finally... Somebody's doing something with it. That's kind of like a barren area, there's really nothing going on there, it's a waste of piece of property, so I'm glad it's going to get put into good use. So I want to thank you for doing that. And third of all, I'm not sure how to put this, but I love living in a desert. I think this is a great place to live, but you must have a great property to attract people from the beautiful beaches of Hawaii to the desert. You must have a great reason for them to come out here, because we're all going the other way. So, I'm glad you're bringing that market here, because I know you're giving them a great experience when they come out here, so thanks.
Mayor, through you, to Councilman Anthony, we had the chance to meet with all of our many partners downtown, to include even the Mob Museum, to make them aware of the project and what we intend to do. We certainly are going to beautify that entire area. We're going to put an entire tower of rooms right outside the door of the Mob Museum and our partners across the street, so we think it's going to be a win-win for the entire Third Street corridor, if you will, as we move forward. Thank you.
Your team's pretty darn good, too, let me tell you. We know our team's fabulous, but you really do have a fabulous, fabulous... And Mr. Thompson, thank you. And the Boyd's, wow. And for those of us who've been here forever and ever, we just echo exactly what Councilman Anthony said. What a great addition, and it's amazing the sustainability you've had with the ninth... Or you are the ninth island. So, Councilman Creer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. First, let me just congratulate you on making a reinvestment back into downtown. It's vitally important that we have projects like yours and partners like yours to engage others, because I think this will be the impetus for some that are thinking about coming into downtown, whether that's for business use or residential use, or just come down to congregate for an evening. And I think this will help get over any stigmas that might be attached to downtown when they see a nice, renovated, beautiful property like yours that's coming into the downtown corridor. So, thank you, and I applaud you for really having the guts to come back and make that huge of a reinvestment. We'll take all the reinvestment we can back in Ward Five, and we hope that we can help you find some gainful employed people from Ward Five to come in and benefit from the reinvestment that's happening. Look forward to working with you on that, with our Ward Five Works project that we are executing on to try to get people in Ward Five working. As you know, that Ward Five has a 15% unemployment, and it's about three times the average unemployment around the city, so we need to do everything we can as we're bringing in business and reinvestment that we get people working from our ward and benefiting from the reinvestment. So thank you very much for that, and I look forward to working with you guys. Mr. Rowe hit on something that was... That is not necessarily a concern of mine, but something that we just need to be cognizant of, and we need to figure out the plan for, and that's just traffic, and that's just ebb and flows of downtown. With the Derek Stevens Project coming on board, with your reinvestment, I believe that there's some other properties that are looking to renovate and do some things. We need to figure out how we're going to flow. I've asked in our end Jorge Zavantis and Mike Jensen to get together to talk about traffic flows, ebbs and flow, not only for downtown, but also for the Symphony Park area, and as we're bringing people across Symphony Park with our parking garages and potentially a bridge that's going to come across where they land, where they go. There's some things going on within DOT right... There's some things going on within DOT right now that are going to get a, people going to land off of 95 into the downtown corridor. We need to understand all that. And so we look to, on our end, get a better handle of it and then work with you guys and share that information that we garner from as well. And we also look forward, if you were partnering with us on that, we would be more than happy to do that as well. But overall, I am in huge support. Mr. Rowe, I got to thank you for, I think you made a smart decision in hiring Kanani Espinoza, working with you. My longtime UNLV cheerleader of sorts for there, she's in the back. So welcome, Kanani, to, to Mr. Rowe's team and we look forward to working with you as well. She made an excellent choice. You know, one of the things was talking about obstruction of some other businesses as construction takes place. Do our best to mitigate that. You know, if you look at the Third Street corridor, there's a jerky shop that's there. It is kind of an outlier of, of an area, but there's still a, a working business that needs to not be hindered as much with the construction that's taking place on Third Street. I think when it's all said and done, it will enhance their business. I'm not sure if they're staying there or what, but I think with additional traffic there will help them out a lot. So-
Mayor Goodman, through you to Councilman Creer. We actually met with the jerky shop operators and they are very supportive of our project.
Yep.
They believe it's nothing but bright days ahead for their shop as well.
No doubt about it. And I think when it's all said and done, it'll be great. In the meantime, there might be some, some consternation, but we just need to do our best to help our partners down there and mitigate any consternations that may happen. So I am in a hundred percent favor of this project and I wish you all the best and I look forward to being there for the ribbon cutting.
And with that, you will make a motion on 119, please.
It would be my pleasure to make a motion on Agenda Item 119, SUP 74299, to go with staff recommendation for approval.
Thank you. This motion, please vote and please post.
Madam Mayor, if I could make a comment to your right?
Yes, please.
I just wanted to let Mr. Noonan know that I, that I think it's a consensus of the council that your promotion of Mr. Rowe was well deserved. I thought that was appropriate.
Boy, oh boy.
I, I wanted to say something also, if I might, Mayor.
Yes, please.
The Boyd Group has been such a solid backer of the city of Las Vegas and anytime anybody speaks to me about it, I always just say what a fine group you are to support our citizens so well in so many ways. And I also wanted to say something about Russell because he knows how much I appreciated the tremendous pamphlet he put together when the Running Rebels were going for the national championship and the NC2A had all kinds of rules that you couldn't do anything, which now they're starting to change finally, probably 30 years later. But Russell put together a pamphlet that was so good that the NC2A would not allow it given out on NC2A property that they were renting. It was very good. And every time he comes, I want the Boyd Group to know that every time he comes and meets with us, he's so well-prepared and so willing to work and things out so quickly. And of course, Bill, I'm saying this now, I mean, I don't know if you'll be before me again while I'm still in the council, but you've just been great every committee with which I shared with you and supporting the Boyd Group. Wonderful. And this is magnificent. As the mayor would say, this is the way we're going and I have many friends, my husband had lots of friends in Hawaii because we played each other often and they just adore, they just adore the Boyd Group. So thank you for continuing to back us and thank you for this magnificent new addition.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Okay, Councilman Creer, 120, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 120, SUP 74300, I move for approval.
Thank you. This motion on 120, please vote and please post.
It's my one.
And that motion carries. 121, Councilman Creer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 121, I move for approval.
Thank you. This motion to approve Agenda Item 121, please vote and please post. Motion carries. 122, please.
Item 122, I move for approval.
Thank you. This motion to approve 122, please vote and please post. Councilman Siroka? Oh, there it goes. Motion carries. Agenda Item 123, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. Item 123, I move for approval.
Thank you. This motion on 123, please vote and please post. In a minute. There we go. Oh, this is so good. Motion carries and on the final item, number 124, I'll say you, Councilman Creer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 124, I move for approval subject to any conditions set by staff.
Thank you very much. This motion, please post and, please vote and please post. Thank you. I just can't wait to hear from the board through you. Hi, through you, Mr. Noonan, and you're through you, Ms. Rowe, but I think by now your head has to be this big, so I don't want to hear from you or through Mr. Thompson. And this really is so exciting for downtown. We've been down to the bottom and we are just flying now. So thank you and just Godspeed and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, happy Thanksgiving to you and thank the staff once again for working so hard with us on this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, that was exciting. All right, so now what number are we back to?
Ninety-two.
Ninety which? Ninety-three? Okay. Okay. Ninety-three through ninety-five. Ninety-three, GPA 73577, request for general plan amendment to the, to amend the trails element of the 220 master plan and all related maps. Number 94, GPA 73578, or request for general plan amendment from PF Public Facilities and DR Desert Rural Density Residential to RNP Rural Neighborhood Preservation, R Rural Density Residential, ML Medium Low Density Residential Related Items. Number 95, ZON 73579, or request for rezoning from CV Civic and U1 Develop, PF Public Facilities and DR Desert Rural Density Residential, general plan designation to be RE Residence Estates, RD Single Family Residential, Restricted R1 Single Family Residential and RCL Single Family Compact Lot and a portion of 146.07 acre southwest, southwest northeast sides of the Clark County 215, generally bonded by Anne Road, Wallop Highway, Washburn Road and Alpine Ridgeway. The applicant is Upgrowth Nevada LLC or NV and the owner is United States of America. The Planning Commission recommends approval. All three items, staff recommends approval of items 93, 94 and 95. These are in Ward Six. Councilwoman Tarkanian of Public Hearing, which I declare open. And is the applicant's representative present? Councilwoman Fiori?
Yes. Good afternoon, Your Honor, members of the council. My name's Bob Gronauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing the applicant and property owner in these matters. And if I may, I'll go into the presentations here. If I can get to your overhead here, the first thing I'd like to do is give you an orientation of where the property is actually located. This is located out in the northwest. The property is actually is dissected with the beltway, as you can see, runs through here. This is Anne Road Interchange. That's located right here. Anne Road is a major thoroughfare that runs through the northwest in the rural neighborhood area in this, in this vicinity. We are bounded by Wallop Highway, which runs north-south in this area here along our east boundary and just to the south of us is Washburn and down here to the south of this is an existing gravel pit. A matter of fact, if you can take a close look here, you can see the alignment of where the previous beltway was in existence in this area, which cuts through the property in here along with some power lines, big transmission power lines in the property itself. And I'll get into that as I talk about the property and why we're here today. The first thing is on your agenda is item number 30, 93. On item number 93, it's a general plan amendment for the trail alignment. Your staff and Planning Commission has recommended approval of that. Simply put, we're making some changes in the area here where the equestrian trails is located along Hammer. Instead of going up Rufian in this area here, we're asking to realign it along Wallop. Your staff's in support of that. The next couple of applications that are before you is the reason why this application and these set of applications took approximately about a year to come through the system. A matter of fact, I have over approximately 80 revisions that we made to our site plan here. On a normal day, I'd probably go through these to show you the iterations, but since Thanksgiving is tomorrow and I want to go and play my father-son football game, the annual game tomorrow morning, I'm going to forego that and I won't get into-
I think we want to see all 80. Thank you.
And that's why. I'm not going to show you all 80. So what I'm, what I'm going to do is just get you right to where we are because as Commissioner Brown has mentioned, I've visited him 14 times. He'll tell you 14 times I've been in his office to talk about this property. I've been in Councilwoman Fiori's office 12 times. So, and we've had about a handful of neighborhood meetings. I know there's still a couple neighbors here who may want to make some comments on the application itself because it's 120-acre piece of property. It's part of the inter-local agreement and I'll go through it as we have these discussions. But quickly here on the overhead in this tan brown area that you see here, we're asking to have this as a general plan for the rural neighborhood preservation area in this area here, which would allow up to two units an acre. In the blue area here, which is adjacent to the transmission power lines that cut across our property here, in this blue area, we're asking it to be rural along with the yellow area in this area here, to be rural designation in this area. And the rural designation would be allowed up to 3.59 units to the acre. And the other property that's located over here, we're asking to be medium-low, which is on the other side of the beltway itself, which allows up to 8.49 dwelling units an acre. The zoning, the zone changes that are before you is going to be a zone change in the brown area that we're asking for RE. And the blue area is going to be RD. And the yellow area here is going to be R1. And then in this area here, we're going to be coming in with RCL lots. The most important part of these applications is something that we can't put conditions on, but I do need to make a representation here because I made this representation to Councilwoman Fiori, to Commissioner Brown and to the neighbors as I sent out an email on Friday with the plan that is actually here that I'd like to submit for the record when I get done going through this plan. Because the reason is, this is our proposed tenet of map, which is nothing different than what I've come through with other developers who's built in the northwest is because we have agreed to conditions or to do certain things. Your applications that are set up through a general plan amendment and a zone change application does not allow us to put conditions on there. So what we do in lieu of that is stand before you, submit in a, a proposed tenet of map to explain to you what is going to be submitted on behalf of, in this case, Mr. Cannarelli and Mr. Goett, who owns, who owns this property. So what you see here, as I can show you with the red dots on the plan itself, those are our RE lots that we're going to be coming in with a minimum of 18,000 square foot lots. Okay? Those are a total of 91 lots. The yellow that acts as a buffer to the RE into the R1, which is our RD lots, typically their minimum square footage is 10,000 square feet. We're coming in with 15,000 square feet and we have approximately 26 of these lots located along here. The next area is for the R1 zoning. We have a variety of lot sizes that go from 8,000 to short of 10,000, from 6,800 to under 8,000 square foot lots and anywhere from 6,400 to 6,800 square foot lots. And those are represented by separate, different colors. As I submit this, I just want you to understand and the neighbors, and I explained this to some of the neighbors who I've talked to, is there may be some changes yet to the plans itself. We may gain a couple lots, we may lose a couple lots. And the reason is, is we still got to go through our technical studies. There are still some constraints that we're trying to figure out with the power lines and so on. But the plan that I'm representing before you, we believe is going to be in substantial conformance to what we're going to be submitting with our tenet of maps when we have our builders on board ready to move forward. That being said, the last thing that I do want to mention here as part of the presentation is with respect to the reasons to approve this application. And as I said, as I've worked very long and hard with Councilman Fiori and Commissioner Brown, and both of them wanted to make sure that I put some of these matters on the record so everyone knows the reason why this application should be moved forward for approval with respect to what's being shown here. Number one, this is, as you can see here, is a unique piece of property. Actually has a beltway that goes right through it. As I mentioned earlier, we have an interchange for Anne Road located here. You have Wallop, another major arterial street, Washburn. We have the gravel pit. We still have remnants of the beltway, of the old beltway that's located here. And we have the power transmission lines that are located in this area where we have between the beltway and the power lines where we have some of our R1 zoning that's being proposed. In addition to that, with the new alignment in this area here, as you can see the curve, it makes it a little bit more difficult to come in with development that is already along Alpine Ridge in this area further up along the beltway. Where in that area, that was a 10,000 square foot buffer minimum up in that area. In here, if you take that same perimeter type of buffering in this area, we're actually building less homes than what would otherwise be required if you took that same buffering up there. There's the inter-local agreement, which is in Section 2D. In that area of the inter-local agreement, it talks about this type of property or this piece of property where it states that upon the completion of the beltway between Anne Road and Lone Mountain at the western beltway, there may be changes to the plan itself. This is specifically the changes that we are coming in with, with the uniqueness of the property that I just explained. And then the last thing that I do want to mention is I do have a statement from Commissioner Brown that he wanted me to make sure I put on the record. So I was transcribing it the other day. I told him I was going to be his spokesperson, standing up here so you can understand the relationship between Councilwoman Fiori, Commissioner Brown and myself and working on this property for over a year. And he said, Commissioner Brown has said that he wants to express his thanks to Councilwoman Fiori as it is always a great pleasure to work with her and her staff, Chance and Dan. And he wants to also say thank you to the neighbors for working so long and hard on this matter. And with that being said, I'm going to say happy Thanksgiving and I'm here to answer any other questions that you may have.
Thank you. I'm sure we're going to have it and we have public comments, too. I'd like to hear from Mr. Lowenstein and also want to find out what's the highest building that can go in there and are you putting power underground?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So as Mr. Gronauer has represented, that is for a proposed tentative map that has yet to be submitted to the city, so we'll address some of those things then. But the minimum, the maximum development standard for any of those zoning districts is two stories. So none of the homes will be higher than two stories. Now to be the bearer of bad news, the applicant has proposed the realignment of the multi-use non-equestrian trails for, with the future eastern Wallop right away, as well as a realignment and portion of the equestrian trail along the future western alignment. And staff can support the trail alignment, so it's not all bad. The other part is conversely, staff cannot support the proposed general plan amendment and rezoning as a conflict with the existing inter-local agreement as the applicant has proposed land use designations and zoning districts for the subject site that would allow for size minimums that range from 3,000 to 10,000 square feet where 18,000 to 18,500 square feet sizes are prescribed for this area and staff has recommended denial on the general plan and rezoning request. Thank you.
That's not so good. Okay, Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to, I suppose, our witness here. Hello, Bob. Question I have is, and when I looked at this preliminary earlier in the office, I didn't notice the proximity of that rock quarry to those single-family homes. And I'm wondering, how long, is it out of operation permanently now or is it going to continue in operation?
No, to the south, my understanding is at some point in time that will be developable property someday. And actually, one of the things that Commissioner Brown wanted me to make sure I put on the record is that, that future home builders who is going to be developing south of this property should not follow along with what has necessarily been approved with our project, that they're going to be expecting 10,000 square foot lot minimums to be built in that general vicinity. But that will come at the day when that property is going to be filled in and for development.
Oh, I'm sorry then. So it's privately owned? That's one that's been around a long time, hasn't it?
Yes.
Blasting and doing, is the blasting stopping now then?
I believe so, yes.
Are they blasting?
No, 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 you can't. But no, for the most part is, I believe that might be, that's part of one of the pits that are being filled up.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions further? I'd like to turn it to the public, though, if you're okay with that, Mr. Grona. Are there any, anyone who wishes to be heard on any of these items? Please be sure to say your name clearly. We don't need your address, but your name, please. And then-
Good afternoon, Mayor. Mayor Goodman, Councilmember Fiori. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Mark Bloom. I live about one block from the proposed Agenda Item. I live about one block from the proposed agenda item. I would first like to thank Councilwoman Fiori for working closely with Commissioner Brown, the neighbors, and the developer to hammer out a reasonable agreement. Hard for me to say. While most of us in this area would prefer only large lots, we also understand that some compromise was needed for this project. I would also like to submit for the record a petition with three hundred and seventy-five signatures. Sorry. Well, hope I didn't leave it at home, but I'll get it here in just a minute. The petition started after the first meeting with upgrowth, and there was quite an uproar and quite a ruckus about this project. The map presented a long time ago was a much higher density and something we just could not deal with, and was in direct violation of the interlocal. I was one of the main people against it. In a nutshell, this petition, which I'm sure I know I have it, I'll get it to you, asks the governing body, this governing body, to pass zoning which is key in keeping with the interlocal agreement. That's what three hundred and seventy-five of my neighbors are asking you to do. At the first meeting, the interlocal just seemed to be completely disregarded. Mayor, as you well know, it is almost inconceivable to get a handful of neighbors to agree on something, much less three hundred and seventy-five. This is tough. To some, the map that Mr. Groenauer presented does not comply with the interlocal. However, due to the clause in the interlocal, many of us realize that because the city, the county, and the landowners have come to an agreement, that this is in compliance with the interlocal. And it's taken a lot of time, and as Mr. Groenauer said, eighty iterations of this map, and I've been involved in eighty of them. In closing, Mayor, as you can see, there are hundreds of concerned residents in this rural part of the valley, hundreds, almost four hundred that signed the petition, who are active, prepared, and involved in our community. We are asking that any further growth into this rural area, take into account the rural character of the area and abide by the interlocal agreement. And I will find the interlocal, I will find my signatures with, the three hundred and eighty present, and I also have them on disk if necessary.
And I can't thank you enough for working on this, because I think your continued involvement in private, working with private, and Mr. Groenauer, from everything I've ever known of him all these years, and all his representations, goes back and back and back again. And that we have Commissioner Brown working and Councilwoman Fiori. I mean, it's a great team effort, and we want the best resolution for everybody all the time. It is a work in progress, though, so that must continue to move forward as it works for everybody. And I know from Mr. Groenauer and whom he is representing, that just, sorry to keep asking you to go to meetings, but I think that's critical, and when they have leadership in the private sector, that's how things work. And there's always compromise, and we just want to see it work as best as we can, and knowing we have a great staff here to help in that dialogue as it moves forward, it's wonderful, and we thank you for your involvement. And those who've signed, so you're going to get your signature back into Ms. Holmes's-
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, if I could, with regard to that issue, he can't bring them after the meeting, he'll need to bring them during the pendency of this meeting, so he'll need to get them-
Yeah, I think they're right here.
Oh, see, from your mouth? Right there, he found it. I'm gonna ask, is there anything else from our staff before I go to anybody else from public hearing on that? Thank you, Mr. Bloom.
Thank you, Mayor.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else on these issues?
Good afternoon, Jim Ordoff. I, too, am in opposition to this agreement, because it is in direct conflict with the interlocal agreement. And then to come back and say, well, we don't want anybody else to have these privileges later on, and only us, I think that's completely wrong for these people to say they're special. We have rules, a lot of people worked very hard on that interlocal agreement, a lot of people invested their life savings to live out there, trusting that your word was good. Now, it was advertised in the National Register when this property came up for sale, that they had to follow the local zoning laws and agreements. So therefore, we thought that they would be not favorable to getting something changed. But obviously, they had some other feelings that they thought they could get on, that the other people bidding said, well, we're not going to do this, because we don't want to do that kind of project. The county has invested millions of dollars in that equestrian park. This is the ideal place for this type of development. And if they can't make a go of it, then something's wrong. They need to make the houses east of the power line, all of them eighteen thousand square feet or larger. Anything other than that is ten thousand square feet or larger. That's what the interlocal calls for, and I hope you agree with me. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, we're so proud of Ward Six, not that we're not proud of all our wards, but really, it seems to be one of the last bastions of the rural lifestyle, and I certainly know that we respect that greatly, and appreciate your coming forward with your comments. And we still need the list, the petition. It went away?
It's coming to Dan.
Can you turn the list, petition list, into the-
It needs to be-
He's gonna email, he's gonna go home now, he's gonna email for me, and I will forward-
But it needs, yeah, it needs to be during this project, okay, perfect.
Anyone else, then, on public comment? Okay, I'm gonna close public comment and turn this over to Councilwoman Fiori, unless there's some comments by council. Thank you. Thank you.
I do have a question. Oh, I'm sorry.
So, one other thing, excuse me, if I might just, for one moment, Mr. Bloom, you best not sit here. When we're advised by legal, it's got to come in during the time of the council meeting. Well, you're gonna go home to your computer to email your list, correct? Is that what I understood from Mr. Burdish?
Well, it may be in my car also, it's all my-
Okay, would you do that? Because I'm not sure how long council is gonna go, and if legal says it, and we adjourn, you're out of luck. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And through you, I have to tell you, I am very grateful. And as Mr. Bloom had mentioned, in the beginning, a year ago, they began collecting signatures, and it was three hundred and seventy-five opposed. Today, we have two folks, and actually, Mr. Bloom is not opposed, we've come to an agreement, over eighty plans. So one of the greatest things about Ward Six is we don't move forward until our neighbors and until our, all of us come together. And that's what has taken place here, and it's taken a long time, and this is in the interlocal. And some of the things that the city is different from the county is, some of these lot sizes meet our county code, but not the city. And the interlocal sometimes is more strict for the city than it is in the county. So even though I'm a city councilwoman, the majority of the folks that I worked with on this project was our county residents, because we're neighbors and we're the northwest. So I just want to thank everyone again for coming together and making this work and making this happen after twelve months of hard work. So with that, I'd like to move to approve item ninety-three with all staff conditions.
Councilman Coffin would like to question if-
Question or comment on the motion, whatever it turns into.
Okay, is that okay?
Yes, through you, Mayor, to either Bob or to the councilwoman. We have a interlocal agreement. We have been at war with the county over so many things. And while the incumbent Congress commissioner is gonna be out of office pretty soon, I forget when his term expires.
Two years.
Two years. Can he really represent the feelings of the entire commission if, in fact, if what we're doing is violating the interlocal agreement?
No, actually, we are not violating the interlocal agreement. If you look at Section two, to answer the question, Section 2D, as in DOG, it states that this specific area could be looked at once when that beltway was completed. So the beltway was, as I was showing you earlier, was moved further west from our property, and that new configuration allowed to take a look with the county and the city between Ann Road and Lone Mountain. So we fall within that area there, because when the interlocal agreement was being negotiated by the city and the county, they knew that this, the final alignment of the beltway would impact properties in between this area. And that allowed you to do what we're doing today.
Okay, thank you, that's my answer I needed.
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Wes, had you made a motion on ninety-three?
I did.
Okay, there's a motion to approve Agenda Item ninety-three. Please vote, please post.
I'd just like to say that, again, I would probably go for the less intense ordinarily, but out of respect for the council person there, I'm gonna support it. But I can understand how these people feel that want the interlocal.
And that motion carries, let's move on to ninety-four, please.
Yes, so I move to approve Item ninety-four with all the staff conditions.
Okay, there's a motion on Agenda Item ninety-four, please vote and please post.
Then, Mayor, Councilman Sproke, if I may?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I really like the idea that you've worked together with the neighbors, you went through many iterations. I think that's a great way to handle a controversial issue, and gave the people an opportunity to have their voice and it to be responded to back and forth. I think that is a very professional way to proceed, and unfortunately, there still are some folks that are not happy, but overall, it was a great effort to bring a community together instead of dividing a community. So I applaud that type, and I applaud the council for supporting that type of working together between developers and members of a community.
Thank you, and I would add, Mr. Groenauer always is committed exactly to that, and has for the eight years that I've been on this council, and twelve years before me by my husband. You were just somebody who always works so well with the constituents, and we appreciate that. So on Agenda Item number ninety-five, please.
I move to approve Item number ninety-five with all of our staff conditions.
Thank you, there's a motion on Agenda Item ninety-five to approve, and please vote and please post. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and again, have a happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. Don't break a leg, please. I mean, this is not-
Oh, no, we're gonna beat the boys. We gotta beat 'em one last time, so have a good one.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to Agenda Item number ninety-six. Then you wanted to make comment before that, Councilman, when we were on the other ninety.
You're right, Your Honor, but because we did not switch the positions on the agenda, we might as well start and hear it now.
Okay, this is Agenda Item number ninety-six, SUP 73880, public hearing, applicant owner, James Vanis, for possible action requests for special use permit for an existing short-term residential rental used thirteen oh one South Sixth Street, R1, single-family residential zone Ward Three, Councilman Coffin, planning commission, and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing, which I declare open as the applicant, yes, you are present.
Hello, good afternoon.
And you are?
Joey Vanis, thirteen oh one South Sixth Street.
Thank you very much. And this is a public hearing, so we'll hear from Mr. Vanis, then we're gonna hear from staff, then we'll open public hearing, and we'll move from there. Please.
Thank you, council, for taking the time again. We've been through this, a few different iterations with this item, and abated a couple times, hoping to find closure here today. I've heard a few different things in the, in the meeting today that I think are relevant. You know, one is relating to Councilman Coffin's desire and David Figler's desire and everyone's desire, I think, to provide some clarity here and some sort of standard. It's a challenge. There are some things about, about our item that were conditions. We've met, I've met with, with David and the neighbor, he's as the neighborhood president, as a neighbor, and all the other neighbors, and worked through all of the concerns as well. So I think we're here after speaking with everyone multiple times and meeting with you folks, and, and our intention is always to be great neighbors, and to be able to just continue doing what we've been doing for two and a half years now.
Thank you very much.
So, as it relates to the conditions, I think we may have some questions that come up as we progress.
Okay, thank you. If you would, Mr. Lowenstein?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The applicant is currently operating an owner-occupied, short-term residential rental unit that meets all the minimum special use permit requirements. The applicant is applying for the special use permit in conformance with the ordinance six five eight five. Staff is recommending approval with condition number two requiring expungement if the property is to be sold. If approved, staff would like to revise condition number one to reflect the following. A required review shall be conducted six months from the date of final inspection at a public hearing before the city council. In addition to that, I will turn it over to Deputy Planning Director Mary McElhorn, but when, if the motion is for approval, there are other conditions, as alluded to by the applicant, that I'll be more than happy to put on the record at that time.
We would like to hear those, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McElhorn.
Madam Mayor, this has been a licensed short-term rental since August of two thousand and sixteen, and while we have received some complaints of parties and parking issues, none of those complaints have been a result of short-term rental activity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, this is a public hearing, and so anyone who wishes to speak on this item, please come forward.
Good afternoon, Mayor, of the council, David Figler.
There it is, done.
David Figler, thirteen oh two South Sixth Street. Just generally speaking, it's hard to maintain a consistency when you know the folks. It's a challenge, and that's why we look forward to coming back and talking to you about the potential ban and other restrictions. That said, generally speaking, this is a very big property, there were a lot of concerns that we had. We feel that it is, generally speaking, because it's so big, incompatible with the neighborhood and the historic neighborhood as it sits, and that they've done such a good job in making it such an attractive place, and it is so big that it invites violations of ordinances, such as one that just recently happened. But again, because we are communicating, Mr. Vanis was able to take care of that right away, and I appreciate that. I also want to say that I appreciate the efforts of Councilman Coffin, and his staff, and Mr. Lowenstein, and Mr. Vanis, and his representatives, and my partner Ray. We all met together in Councilman Coffin's office, and with the idea that since staff approved, and there are certain gray areas, that maybe we could put some conditions on. And Mr. Lowenstein did reference the one main condition, which is to have the public hearing in six months, just to see how it's working out. There are other agreements and conditions that Mr. Vanis has agreed to, but they're not going to be made part of conditions, but just being a good neighbor to try to let us know about certain things, especially as it affects the gray area that exists here. And the gray area being that when there's not a short-term rentor on property, that Mr. Vanis can operate it, as long as he's complying with the rest of the city code. That's sort of a gray area, the way that we all interpret this, and it's difficult. So I hope you give, if you are going to move it forward, that you give consideration to the conditions that are there. And also, there just needs to be a public comment and acknowledgement by Mr. Vanis that when it is short-term renters, that they have to utilize the onsite parking in compliance with the ordinance, and as he set forth in his application for the SUP, which is onsite backyard parking, which he has set up. So with that, I think Councilman Coffin has it well in hand, that we've made some manner of compromise, though, again, the position of the neighborhood is that, you know, maybe places like this with this gray area is not the best for our city.
Thank you, Mr. Figler. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? I'm gonna close public hearing. I'm gonna go back to Mr. Lowenstein for the conditions on this, please, but I do want to ask, you do agree that you will, if you sell the property to whomever you sell it, they realize that this SUP goes?
Yes.
Okay. So please, Mr. Lowenstein.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The added, additional conditions to be added that were alluded to before is, the first one being, the home shall be owner-occupied or occupied by the owner's designated representative, Ms. Janelle Maza, during all rental periods.
Okay, excuse me, I would want to get an agreement on each one, but I do want to ask, is that specific only to that person when he's not in residence? Is that what we're asking him to, if that's- Is that what we're asking him to, if that's to be specifically that person?
That is correct.
Are you in agreement with that condition?
No, I think there's the sticky point, not just with Janelle. Obviously, I can't commit to somebody's future who may or may not be with me in the future. I would love to have her as long as possible, working with me on this. The other part is, in terms of owner-occupied and what that means, this condition, so when I rent the house, I stay on property, but in a casita in the back. So, this condition of somebody having to be there, I said, "Look, I'm here all the time." If this is, I felt like it was a bit forced. We agreed to it because we want to be, have everybody happy. I am there all the time, but I don't want to have that condition of what if I, you know, what if one time, somebody can't? It is a little restrictive in the long term.
However, you could, in fact, at that point, apply back through Councilman Coffin, or to our planning department, that Janelle is out of the country, and you are designating this person. I think that is what the intent is, but I'm going to turn it back to Councilman Coffin here for that particular item.
Thank you, Your Honor. I threw you to generally our witnesses and other people who are interested in this issue. I don't even know how many neighbors are here other than David. You used the word "forced," Joey, and I think you're right. We did force this on you in our office because of our intention to try to have everything owner-occupied at the time of an SDR tenant. STR, not long-term, not short-term, just the short-term, and only, well, we didn't even force anything else on all the parties you have there, except for one thing. You did agree to make sure that you would be on notice that any violation of the noise ordinance would be regardless, and this is sort of a sweeping thing, not just on this application, but because you have so many parties you have told the council about, especially if you're going to have more than 10 or 12 people. That we agreed, and the representative of the association, Mr. Figler, gave the word of the association, that you would watch, obey the noise ordinances more clearly, because 50 feet off your property becomes a violation if it is heard. So, the force, I believe you agreed to that, Joey. But the one thing, as you said, was the rub, was the owner-occupied. I can't tell the opinion of the council today on this. I honestly can't. I cannot tell if I've got their backing. You agreed to it, but Mr. Figler supported another application, which did not require. I don't see how I can force that on you. I'm not going to force owner-occupied at the time of STR.
Okay, so that-
Everything else, all other conditions.
Before I go to Councilwoman, that was condition number one, so now you have changed that, so Mr. Lowenstein needs to change item number one. And Councilwoman Fiori, I will get back to you on this, but I just want to clarify, we're taking them, Councilman Coffin, one at a time.
You betcha.
So, you have to now, you are agreeing in your motion when we get there, that they don't need owner-occupied or representative-specific, owner-occupied. You're saying that?
The idea is that they use the usual and customary procedure for what is ever forced on others. We will then, of course, debate this issue in greater detail on December 5th when we talk about owner-occupied, but we might as well just let this one go through.
That's fine. Through you, Madam Mayor-
But just the noise, and there was something else.
Right, I do have one other condition, which is relevant to the noise. The first condition that I read would be voided.
Take the owner-occupied off.
Fine, that's voided.
So, the only additional condition that I have then is basically, it states as conformance to the noise ordinance.
Is that your only other condition, Councilman?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, now, if I may, Mr. Figler, even though I've opened up, closed the public hearing, with that condition now stricken, the only thing that Councilman's asking for on this approval now that remains is the noise condition.
As well as the public hearing for the six-month review.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I understand. This is, I thought we had it worked out, but STRs are tough, and I get it, and we're bearing the brunt.
Okay, so, thank you for coming up. I just wanted to make sure that we have a matter of record that one is gone, so now the only one is the six-month review and the noise ordinance, to which you agree.
Yeah, I do agree to all of that. I do just want a little bit more clarity, if we may, around this idea of noise. For the record, I'm very hyper-cautious of that. Anytime there's people over, I walk the outside property lines constantly and make sure people aren't outside making noise. I've only had six times this year where we've had more than 12 people, and we've notified the city, so we're not having parties every weekend. I mean, it's very rare, and we really are cautious of it. So, if there is a big noise, if I'm a big noise issue, I want to know about it, and I want to solve for it.
Okay, Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor, thank you.
So, I want to know specifically what the condition says relating to noise, if this is a big issue.
The ordinance, would the ordinance comply with the ordinance?
Yeah, just a regular noise ordinance, like everyone else.
Put on double secret probation here, you know?
Yeah, absolutely.
And then, the other thing is, that's noise for your parties too, not just for STRs. This is a big deal, because you make a lot of noise at your parties.
That's what I'm referring to. The renters who are there don't make noise, and, well, sometimes they do, but we're very cautious of it.
Mr. Figler's house is right behind my fence. His fence is across the street, 60 feet from your house. So, we all know about it, so you're on notice that you'll get reported anytime there is excessive noise there.
Yeah, I'm happy to comply by the rules.
If I may now go to Councilwoman Fiori?
Thank you. I just, because I have a lot of parties in my house, I have a lot of pasta parties in my house, and we have sometimes 100, 150 folks in my home, so I just want to make sure that we're not confusing his private constitutional residency rights with STR requirements, because if he's having a party in his own house, and it's not a renter, who are we to give him a hard time about that?
Madam Mayor, I believe, I believe the reference that the Councilman made was to our ordinance that we already have on noise. Yeah, and that's what he's, yeah, so it doesn't matter if you're having a party, or you're not having a party, or if you're an STR, you're not an STR. There's an ordinance on noise, and I wonder if someone could send this gentleman a copy of it, so he knows, because you wanted specific information, right?
No, what I was referring to, Mr. Tanyan, was what the specific condition was, and I think to Councilwoman Fiori's point, just ensure that any noise complaint, as would be dealt with typically as a noise complaint is dealt with, with residents versus, oh, you got one noise complaint, we're going to take your special use permit away.
The noise ordinance, the noise ordinance is the same for STRs or you owning a private party, so.
Yeah.
It's the same noise ordinance.
Okay. All right, any other comments, questions? All right, any other comment to add to it, so you're clear what we've got of the conditions which you accept?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Coffin?
Your Honor, I move for approval of this item, number 96, with the conditions as discussed and agreed upon by the owner.
With the six-month review?
Of course, six, yes, ma'am, six-month review.
Okay, there's a motion, please vote and please post.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Can I ask one question there?
Yes, please.
With regards to the expungement, if I could ask, planning, are these conditions recorded on the parcel so that any future owner knows that they're not going to obtain the STR?
Through you, Madam Mayor, yes, they are recorded against the property.
On every single item that we've had?
I believe anything with a set conditions of approval are recorded against the property.
And especially with regard to expungement, just so that any future owners know that they're not buying a short-term rental.
Yes, yes, okay, thank you. All right, now we're up to Agenda Item Number 97, rescind, public hearing, applicant owner Rebecca Dolman for possible action or request for special use permit for proposed short-term residential rental use at 1404 Francis Avenue, R1, single-family residential. This is in Ward III with Councilman Coffin. Both planning and staff have recommend approval. This is a public hearing which I declare open, and is there any process, Mr. Scott? We have to vote to rescind first, all right, so I need to speak to this. As you recall, you may not recall, because it was hard for me to recall, we had, the meeting was in October, I believe, where we heard this application, which I believe at that time, Councilwoman Fiori was out of town, not present. When it went to the vote, recommended to deny the application by Councilman Coffin. It passed, the vote was five to one. Councilman Anthony, as I recall, and please, Councilman, if I mush your words, tell me if I've said them incorrectly, at the point of the vote, you spoke up front early on and said, "This is duplicating what we've just heard in a prior short-term rental, therefore you are going to vote against that." And then everyone else voted with Councilman Coffin on this particular motion. What then occurred over a period of time was contact through my staff in my office, and at which point, too, there were other issues that hadn't been brought forward, and I said, "Please, you have to go back to Councilman Coffin in Ward III." This was his ward, and as that proceeded, it was his indication to his staff that he had made his decision on the motion. And so, as my staff, and I guess Ms. Dolman must have continued either to call or email, that there were extenuating circumstances that hadn't been brought out. And then, I said, "I'd be happy to meet with her." I did reinform Councilman Coffin that I was going to do this, and would he want to be present, and he said, "No, he didn't need to be." And then, I believe, I'm not sure if Ms. Dolman came in alone at that time or with someone else, and I said, "Well, I really want to get a hold of planning, and I wanted to get the clerk involved, because I wasn't sure if there was any process through which we could move anything, but trying to be courteous and look at every issue that we can, that's what we do, with full attention." I asked Mr. Summerfield, I can't remember if I had Ms. McElhorn requested, but Mr. Summerfield, who's the director of planning, and our city clerk, Ms. Holmes, at that meeting, and then Ms. Dolman came in with, I'm not sure, as a representative, Craig Palacio of Bunnyfish, who then made a very, very compelling, interesting presentation to, and my staff was present, because my staff had been in dialogue with Ms. Dolman over a period of time with this plea and this continuing plea. So, at that time, then they made an appointment with Mayor Pro Tem right after, and I remember the time specific, it was at 2:00, you were going to spend time with Mayor Pro Tem. But I thought the merits of what was presented at that meeting with Ms. Holmes and Mr. Summerfield had enough merit to bring it back to the council. I gave no indication other than, this really needs to be heard again in its totality. And I did, in fact, though, speak to Councilman Anthony to say that, in fact, his comments at the October meeting, which was then obeyed to November 7th, and it was at the November 7th meeting that the application was denied. And through the process, I other spoke myself on the phone with Councilman Coffin in my presence of my staff, or worked through my staff with his staff to make sure every step of the way, he was included and invited. So, at this point, for point of clarification, but no condition saying anything other than the fact, I wanted to bring it back so the council could be totally apprised of the totality of it all. So, I have to, by our legal process-
You have to move to rescind.
And I, since I voted with Councilman Coffin to deny it, I am in a position to be able to make that motion.
Yes, you are in the majority of the persons.
And so, if it doesn't pass, at this point, it's dead, and I'm sorry, and if they do want to hear it, so be it. We stick with the law. So, at this point, I'm going to make a motion to rescind Agenda Item SUP 74026.
I'd like to speak on the motion.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, through, to you and through you, to the members of the council. I don't quite know how to address your representation, that you told me we would be meeting on this subject, however, you could have said that. But what I did not hear at any time, and I sure would have objected if I had known you were going to put this on the agenda without asking me about it first, so it's kind of an intrusion into the Ward III business after we'd already made a decision. And so, I'm back with you again. You've brought it back, but really, nothing's changed. Nothing has changed at all from the denial. They live in California. They don't intend, maybe someday they will move here, but all of the fine answers to the questions were not given to us in the council meeting for us to vote on. They all started to appear afterwards, and some support appeared afterwards. Nothing at all like this before the meeting, and they didn't contact me after you met them, did not. So, I did not know this was coming until preliminary agenda was posted. I couldn't believe that you would do this, but here you have it. I will oppose this motion, and for the very reasons that I did originally oppose the short-term, very small lots. This is the oldest part of, one of the oldest parts of town. It's Hunt Ridge. It's historic, and so, what we don't want to do is start putting businesses into that area. So, therefore, I will be opposing your motion, voting no.
Thank you. So, you have clarification. I did not give you any indication of my vote either on it, but just an opportunity for council to be able to hear it. So, whatever way it goes, if it is denied, I'm sorry you made the effort to come back, and if, in fact, it's rescinded, then we can go ahead and hear from you. I still can't be telling you how it's going to go at that point, but I have made a motion to bring back number SUP 74026, so please vote.
Mayor, if I could ask a question of clarification? This is my first time that I recall, anyway, moving or voting on recalling a vote from a previous meeting. We've done that in the same meetings before. Is there some criteria that it must meet? Are there criteria in order to make this kind of a motion, or is there?
I have to rely on legal.
I believe, Councilman and Mayor, it's 14 days after the initial decision was made that you have the opportunity to have something called back, you as a council.
And how is that 14 days defined? What do you mean?
I believe it's in code, and maybe Mr. Lowenstein can read the exact code provision.
Sure, through you, Madam Mayor. The code reads, during the period of 14 calendar days following action taken pursuant to paragraph one and two above, which is in relation to the reconsideration of city council, action to deny an application. Any member of the city council who voted with the majority regarding the application may file with the city clerk a written request for the item to be rescinded and reconsidered.
So, just from my understanding, a written request to the clerk by a member of the council within 14 days of the previous vote?
Right.
And that's all that's required?
That is the requirement for the council member in which voted in the majority to have an item reconsidered. It goes further to read, if such a request is made, and subject to the provisions of paragraph four below, any, an appropriate item to rescind the previous vote shall be put on the next available city council agenda, and a follow-up item to reconsider the vote may be put on the same agenda or the next available agenda. So, those provisions then give the city clerk direction on which meetings that it can go to.
Okay, and I guess the following question, logical question, is I assume that we met that criteria.
Ms. Clerk, if you would answer, since you were at the meeting.
Through you, Mayor, yes, we did.
Okay. So, would you kindly vote, please? We have Council and Mayor Pro Tem still to vote, and Mr. Soroka. Colonel Soroka, sorry, you're not a mister. This is to rescind.
We met all the, excuse me, Mayor, if I could just-
Yes, please, Council and Mayor Pro Tem.
We met all the requirements pertaining to bringing it back.
That's correct, Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, we're not, and it's just coming back, and then we vote on the other.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
And post, please? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so, now we're going to move forward, and this is an opportunity, again, state your name, make your presentation, and I want to thank the council for this opportunity, because I felt the material that I heard, just, I would have really not been doing due diligence not to allow this opportunity, but you do know Mr. Palazzo, and you certainly do, Ms. Dolman, that it doesn't mean it still may be denied. So, if you would, again, announce yourself, announce your, and your relationship, and the only question I would ask of council, is this considered public hearing as well?
It is considered-
It is considered public hearing. And Mayor, just can I ask you, if they, did they present any documents or any items to you in support of their application? Because they should present those exact same documents here to the rest of the council, and they should be made part of the record.
The only thing, pardon me, I think it came in after the meeting, or maybe it was given to me at the meeting. In fact, to be perfectly truthful, I just kept it on my desk and didn't even read it, so I give it to the...
Yeah, do they have additional copies of that for the rest of the council?
Is this different from what you gave me?
No, I have it. Everyone has it.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Except for...
So, okay. All right. Now, if we could here, I just want to make sure that we're doing this. According to our codes and ordinance, I have two things. I have the copy that was, is this the same one? I want to make sure.
That's the Agenda Summary page.
Okay. So, this is the booklet? And so, you didn't get one?
No, that came around...
Okay, well, let's hear from them, and we'll go.
Wait, that came after the booklet.
Okay.
See, that wasn't presented to us.
Well, that's why they're here. Okay, so, let's go ahead and do this. Just stop me, if you would, council. Anytime that you need to interject, just do it, except Ms. Holmes has something.
Mayor, you need to read that.
Okay, I'm going to read the item. Yeah, 98.
Ninety.
Okay. Read here, Public Hearing, Agenda Item 98. Applicant Owner: Rebecca Dolman. For possible action or request for a special use permit for proposed short-term residential rental use at 1404 Francis Avenue. R1 Single Family Residential Zone, Ward Three. Planning Commission and Staff Recommend Approval. Oh, there we are. This is a public hearing which I declare open, and let's see. And so, if you'll introduce yourself, and if a representative is here as well, then we will go to Planning, then we will go to Public Comment, and then we'll go from there. So...
Mayor Goodman, Pro Tem, council, council members, and attorney, thank you for hearing us again, and thank you for everybody that took the time out of their busy schedules to meet with us between the last meeting and now. Craig Palacios, 208 South Maryland Parkway, Bunnyfish Studio. To be clear, I am here as a representative, but not any, under any sort of legal commitment. I'm a friend. We met Becky and her husband Edwin years ago when they moved into our neighborhood through a church that our family goes to and that their family goes to. During those years, we spent a lot of time with them as two neighbors. I helped them in a very casual manner as they were renovating the house, which was under terrible condition when they bought it. Gave them some off-the-record architectural advice, which they took, and took this house and made it into what it is now, and Becky will show you some pictures of it. Again, I'm here as somebody who spends more time in City Council and Planning Commission than Becky has, although, in the last couple of months, I think that that's changing. She has much more experience with you guys than I have in the time that I've been an architect, to the point where I'm recommending she becomes a professional at this, you know, she takes this on because she has a very, very deep interest in it. She's going to talk to you about a number of things, the first of which is that she is a, in my opinion, and I think by, by course of the law, a member of our community. She's currently living in Europe, where her, she was helping her husband take care of an ailing father who has since passed, and now, as unexpectedly has happened, she is helping to assist with the mother who's remaining. And that's yet to unfold. It could resolve itself in six months, it could be six years, it could be never. But what Becky's desperately trying to keep hold of is her home. And when it was turned down the first time, and we walked out of, out of chambers, she looked at me and she said, "If I lose this house, I don't have a home anymore. I'm living in a short-term rental in Europe. I'm literally going to lose my house and not have a home anymore." So, I think what we didn't explain properly the first time is that she's a member of a church, she's got a Nevada driver's license, she was, is, I'm not sure exactly how this works, if she's on hiatus, or if she's given up her position, but she's a, a member of the Clark County School District, she's a teacher. And she, at whatever time that this gets resolved with the family members, will come back to being a full-time member. And the, having the temporary rental is a way of offsetting, but in no way, no means totally offsetting, you know, the cost of having a home here, as well as keeping people in the house and the neighborhood occupied. Right now, since she's been unable to rent it, Becky's here a lot with Edwin when he can, but when they're not there, the house is basically vacant, which is not good to any, any neighborhood. The second thing that she's going to discuss with you is, is her abilities and her goals as a, as a host of a short-term rental. She's got professionals that are helping her with the maintenance and the operations and the rental. She's also got me and my family as sort of the immediate contact. The other night, her alarm went off. It was a false alarm, it was the wind or whatever happened, and we were the ones that were contacted. We would have, you know, moved over to take a visual of it. We were able to get in touch with Becky. Becky looked on the cameras, there was no need. We talked to the alarm company, and we resolved the situation. My office and my house is both within four or five minutes from the house. We're very familiar with it. We have keys, we have access to the alarm company, and we can help out in any way that we can. And then, the third thing that she wants to talk about is, and along with graphic pictures of the situation, is, I agree with Councilman Coffin, this is one of our most important neighborhoods. As many of you may or may not know, I built my career on trying to make the Hunt Ridge area, the downtown area, a better place. And I think with some of the projects that we've done, hopefully, all of the projects that we've done, we have made it a better place. My home was on Oki and Maryland Parkway up until recently. I recently moved into a, a little bit farther out in the county. 169, no, I know, it makes me sick to my stomach when I say it, but it's a good move for our family. But up until very recently, and during all of the 2000s, we lived in Johnus Park. My son went to Johnus Park School. And for similar reasons to Becky, we haven't given up the house. We looked at doing a short-term rental. And I'm within the 640 feet of the other applicant, and supported them in that, and in all fairness, had they not gotten it, I might have had the opportunity to be the person who's going to take up that role, as the person who has the 640 square, 640-foot radius of a short-term rental in Johnus Park. Somebody's going to do it. But I supported them, they seem to have fit all of the requirements of the law, just to give you some background on who I am and what I feel. So, but along with where I was going with the Hunt Ridge District and her neighborhood, it is a great neighborhood, but just like mine was in Johnus Park when I moved in, there was highs and lows. And she's going to show you some of the lows. And it's, it's a place where not everybody takes care of the house, and where homeless people come through, and where her neighbor was almost brutally murdered very recently. And the more that, you know, the less people that are in the neighborhood this is, she's going to show you without any, any confusion that her house is one of the better houses in the neighborhood, and if it's occupied by her and her family, or at least by well-curated tenants, that this can be a better place and continue to get better. And I'm going to turn it over to Becky now.
Okay, and thank you, Mr. Palazzo. And if you'll use that center mic, and then you can put, he can help you put up your photos on the panel there.
Okay. Good afternoon, Madam...
Excuse me, and if I might, Councilman Coffin would like to ask a question.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Through you to Becky. Becky, you weren't here at that meeting prior, were you? Were you...
No, I was here at the City Council meeting, yes.
October the 17th?
Yes.
Okay. I can't remember, I know Craig made a good presentation, and I did not realize that he works for, he works for Bunnyfish, but you are actually the owner of Bunnyfish?
No, no, I have, he's just here as a friend, representing, supporting me, yeah. I'm good friends with his one.
Do you own Bunnyfish?
I don't work at Bunnyfish, no.
She's a teacher.
Yeah, I was a substitute teacher here.
Why do I think you're a partner of it? Okay.
So, if you would introduce yourself formally, so we have a record for our clerk. Yes, please, push the button to get your, there you are.
Speak for one moment, and I'm sorry, I meant to do this, but I think, I want to, I want to state that, thank you, everybody, for your hard work on this, and we do understand what a difficult situation you have at your hands. The short-rent, rent, term rental thing is a tough one, because we all like to stay in it, but nobody wants them in our neighborhood, right? So, this is, this is fundamentally tough. It's tough, tougher, most of my clients own hotels and develop hotels, and then, you know, to be involved with short-term rentals is certainly something that we all need to sort of sort out. So, you're hearing a lot of these, these, these requests for SUPs, and all I wanted to say was that I think that there might be some confusion between Becky and some of the other ones, because Becky does not live in California. Becky lives in, in, in Las, in Nevada, in Las Vegas, at 1404 Francis. So, and, oh, a little while ago, you stated she, she lives in California, so I think it might have been just confusion with one of the other applicants on that other date. That's all I had to say.
Thank you very much for the clarification. All right, your name, please, again.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Rebecca Dolman, 1404...
Wait one second, let me get council, full council attention. Okay, so, what was stated by Mr. Palazzo is that she is a Las Vegas resident, doesn't live in California, and happens to be in Europe because of the sickness in her husband's family. So, please, go ahead.
Yes. I'm a, I'm a Las Vegas resident. This is not an investment property, the 1404 Francis Avenue. This, this is my house, all my furniture is in there, all my things. As Craig explained, I was, I had a death in the family, my in-law, so we moved there to, for emotional support, and I'm thankful for STRs that we were able to do that and have that opportunity to do that, and this pays for that, why we're abroad. So, I'm in a short-term rental myself in Europe. I have the contract, if need be, to show that, but I, so this, this is not a residence at all, it's just a rental property that we rent.
That's fine, if you can submit a copy, if, do we need that?
This is the only thing I didn't put in here.
Okay.
I thought of it.
So, if you'll get a copy and maybe can submit it through Councilman, but go ahead, please.
And so, when, when my family meets together, in fact, we, we meet at this house in Las Vegas, and so, I have my mom here, my niece, here for the weekend. But I plan to have a professional management company.
And we'll make a copy of that right now and give it right back to you.
To, to manage it while, you know, in my situation, while I'm gone. But I have the immediate support of my neighbors. I have a couple of neighbors here now. I just wanted to show you, this is my house, and these are the support of my immediate neighbors. They have really nice neighbors, I have some nice letters, I have some really great neighbors, and I had one over here, too, that Owen is here today. And so, they support this. Also, our, our neighborhood, it has a lot of problems. There's, my house wasn't burglarized, we've had a break-in, we've had a lot of problems in the neighborhood. So, these are some pictures of...
Now, can you explain, as you show each picture, how far away is this, your house? Is it five homes away? Is it around?
Yeah, this, so, this picture here is this house here. So, there's appliances in the yard, there's trash, and so, there's trash diggers because of that. Here's another one, that's more appliances in the yard. This one is about right here.
Okay.
These are all within, this one again, here's the, the trash, because of all the trash, they have trash diggers. Here's how, cars parked on the...
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk, that, that house is over here. Here's another one here, they park on the driveway. That house is right, oh, wait, I'm going back.
That's all right, generally, I just have close...
They're all within, yeah, our vicinity and on my street. And so, also, but I, I feel that, you know, our, my short-term rental, it benefits the neighborhood. Here's a picture of my house. We've put a lot of work in it, inside, the outside. Like I said, this is all my stuff, this is not staged for a rental. These are my personal belongings, my artwork, everything, my backyard. And I, my short-term, so, I've been a host for a year and a half, and my reservations have been, I'm Phoenix Fire Captain with his colleagues here for training, mother whose young daughter was here for Certes Soleil camp, a former roller derby player who's starting her own clothing line, a table tennis professional here for a tournament, I've interested in people from all over the world, and they bring stability and an extra eye on this neighborhood. So, my, my neighbors really appreciate that. So, they're not, these are small houses, they're not really party houses, so, and I'm, I do, I feel I do a really good job in screening them, so that, I'm very careful on, of course, since it's my stuff, and I feel everybody else is, too, they're careful of who they want in there. I, I, when I started this a year and a half ago, I went through all the, I have the conditional use verification form, I file my business license every year, I, I do my tax, commerce tax every year, fire, hydrant, update. So, I, the thing is, I did have a problem with, it's very complicated with the, all of this, and I did have a problem with, I didn't finish the whole process, I was told. But I'm not here because of code enforcement. I started this, the process is SUP June 18th. And so, I really tried to get everything all in order.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anything else you want to add to it? And it is public hearing, but I think at this point, I'd like to, and Ms. Dolan, if you want to make a comment as we're going along and asking, because I'm not sure you had that opportunity, Mr. Lowenstein.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this time, I'm going to introduce Planning Supervisor Steve Gobeky, and he's going to handle this item. Thank you.
Thank you, please.
Madam Mayor, this application is before you as a result of a code enforcement action for an illegal short-term rental use. The applicant is proposing to operate a non-owner occupied three-bedroom short-term residential rental unit that meets all minimum special use permit requirements of Title 1912. Staff is recommending approval with condition number two, requiring expungement if the property is to be sold. At this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Deputy Planning Director Mary McElhone for additional information pertaining to this item. Thank you.
And before you do that, Ms. McElhone, you do agree with that condition, that if you sell the property, whoever you sell it to realizes it is expunged?
Yes.
Should it get there? Okay, Ms. McElhone, please.
Madam Mayor, that is correct, that a notice and order was issued on this property on July 6, 2018. What appeared to have happened was, the applicant did apply for a conditional use verification permit January 31st of 2017. She did complete the inspection on February 21st, 2017. She was then instructed to get a license. She went and obtained the Nevada State Business License, but did not complete the process and got the City of Las Vegas Business License. Therefore, she was operating without a license, and ultimately, it was noticed through code enforcement. But once a notice and order was issued, the listing was removed off of the hosting platforms, and we have had no short-term rental activity at this property that we've noticed since that time. Thank you.
So, that means the property, except when you've been in town, has been unoccupied, which is what I think Mr. Palazzo said?
Since August.
Okay. Any other comment you want to make?
Yes, again, so, I'm not here before you, because of code enforcement. I started this process June 16th, because I made some big mistakes with the business licensing, and I, actually, I talked to him. So, I just wanted to say that.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, we have a public hearing, and if anybody'd like to come up and speak on Agenda Item 98, it would be appropriate now, and please state your name.
Good afternoon. Owen Messing, 1301 Francis. I live seven houses from the applicant. I've been on the street 38 years. I've seen a lot of good and a lot of bad. Mr. Coffin knows that. I care as much as he does about the street and the neighborhood, and I'm always in contact with his staff, with Mr. Ortiz. We've, it's just always right there, period. We've seen a lot of bad on that block over the 80s, the 90s, 2000s. In the 80s, there was a family there living in this house with a deranged son. And if you look at Metro's records, they never sent one car, there was always two cars, and sometimes four officers. That changed until they went. We had a meth house there before she bought it.
Okay, if you could get to the point, because we have other people and we do have a full agenda, are you in favor, are you in favor?
I'm very much in favor of it. I'll be very honest with you, there's nothing, she's an asset. Let's, let's put a baseball analogy. Good guys don't finish last. Let her go, let her go to bat, let her hit it once or twice. If she screws up, get rid of her. Come on. She's doing nothing wrong. That house is a model on that street. She had people come cut her palm trees, where everybody wouldn't, she did. I mean, there's not enough words to back it up. I mean, it shouldn't be a little piece of paper that says, "This is wrong, that's wrong." They are an asset.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Messing.
I've been on that street enough to see what good it can be.
Thank you. That's very positive. Thank you.
I appreciate everything, and Bob knows I'm not mad at him.
Okay. Thank you very much. And yes, ma'am, your name, please.
Catherine Finnegan, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. And I am here personally because I live at 1411 Francis Avenue, and the Dolmans live right across the street from me. And I have a view of their house and their driveways, and I can tell you, I have probably seen every single person who has stayed there, has been a guest there when they were operating. And I didn't realize that they weren't part of the usual people who came for the church events that they had. She's an amazing person, they're wonderful people, and I'm really happy to have them as my neighbors.
Thank you, Ms. Finnegan, appreciate that. Anyone else?
Hi, David Figler, 1302 South Sixth Street. Look, there's corporations that are buying up stuff, there's good people who have great stories that are very compelling, and you're going to act however the council decides to act in a way that I think I've pointed out is somewhat inconsistent. I appreciate their position here, but I just want to make no bones about it, short-term rentals are bad for our neighborhood. They take away affordable housing stock, which the city desperately needs, and which our part of Ward III desperately needs. It takes it away. It creates gaps in neighborhood watch. And it's a residential, not a commercial area, and you've heard all these arguments, but I don't think you heard about the affordable housing and the neighborhood watch aspects of it as much. So, I implore you, whatever you do with each of these applicants, including this particular applicant, stop the spigot. We're becoming inundated, and it is going to create problems for this community, especially our downtown wards, for decades. You have the ability to stop the spigot. Whatever you do with the ones that are in front of you now, stop future ones from coming in. Thanks.
Thank you, and that is on 12/55, so make sure you're there. And yes, sir, come back up.
Jack Levine, 1818 Place. The one thing that I've seen today, the theme that I've seen today is that we seem to be now talking about people that are, the house is their primary residence, and that occasionally it's being rented out as a short-term rental, as opposed to the corporate thing. When we sat in your office and talked, Bob, we talked about the traditional bed and breakfast model that you and I seem to be in agreement on. We were in agreement on the fact that it's the corporate ownership of motels operating as in single-family residences that we were against. So, I think we just need to change the nomenclature of primary residents that are, and there's no reason to set a number of days or anything like that, but that occasionally the houses being, but they still use it as their primary residence. Whether they're that week or not, needs to be what needs to be addressed. I'm in favor of this one because there aren't any current rules that are being violated in this application. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for staying. Anyone else from the public? Okay, I'm going to close public hearing, and since Councilman Anthony was the one sole vote, I'm going to let you make the motion, unless you've changed your mind after hearing this entire story.
So, it seems to me it's still Ward III item, Your Honor.
It is still Ward III item, but it's-
It's brand-new item, starting over.
Well, I mean, I can turn it back to you, which you said you would deny it again, so I'm going for an affirmative to move this council meeting forward. So, Councilman Anthony.
I'll make a motion to approve SUP 74026 on Planning Commission and Staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you very much. There's a motion, please vote.
No, Your Honor.
And please post.
How about the courtesy, Your Honor?
Yes, please.
Just the courtesy, to allow people to talk on a motion.
You may talk on it. I've called for the motion, it's been made, and a vote, so go ahead, talk. You had beforehand, you started even before Ms. Dolan answered, so please.
It's a preemptive kind of a move you just made.
Please, go ahead and make your motion, or make your comments, let's do it.
Do you want me to make a motion?
No, it's already been made, we're already in the vote.
All right, Your Honor, well, I can see how this is going to go. Look, Mayor, there are 16 letters here from neighbors who are opposed.
Okay.
There are five or four, not duplicated, three or four, not including Mr. Messinger, so we'll include Owen as a supporter. He's a neighbor, the other 16 people opposed are neighbors. Do you count the number and say, "Does that mean something?" In a small neighborhood with small homes, who want it preserved? It wasn't disclosed to us that there was some sort of relationship between you all, but I don't mind that. But I do mind the fact that you have returned here, and I believe misled some members of the council, to override a decision made by the council. If it is that easy to come back and beg for another chance, we will be busy a lot on these things. Every motion that we turn down will be met by a mission of people coming to City Hall and begging that somehow or another, our ears did not hear what you said. And you haven't introduced any new-
Let him finish, please.
And I'm not talking to you now, because it's a matter of the order of business now, as we are discussing this. So, I protest, protested the whole idea of bringing this back from the dead without consulting the representative of the council. It's probably going to happen again. But on the other hand, I respect the wishes of the neighbors, and the mayor and I respect that we represent those neighbors, too. So, very much oppose this motion, and of course, we're all being collegial here, and I won't hold it against anybody if I lose this motion. But remember, we're losing the downtown to corporate interests, and don't tell me that any one person who's come here and said they have nothing to do with corporations is telling the truth, because there's a lot of lying going on by people who are very well-coached. And we're going to lose our downtown. We have protected some of the very nice residential neighborhoods, like the one you live in, Mayor, and the one Councilwoman Tarkanian lives in. So, when I represented your neighborhood for 10 years in the Senate, I also watched out for it. I'm going to vote no, and I urge you to consider or reconsider your opinion.
I have a question, point of clarification. I know you said, you answered this, but I'm still kind of great. You live in Europe?
Yes, I live in Europe. I moved closer to be with my family, and so I'm in a short-term rental there in Europe.
Right.
This is my resident and residence.
Right, but you want to operate a short-term rental here, but you're literally in Europe.
Well, I-
So, someone had an issue-
I'm in a short-term rental in Europe, so it's-
No, I got you, okay.
Okay.
But if someone had an issue with the short-term rental, and they want to speak with the owner, you aren't going to be anywhere close in proximity to handle an issue that arises.
My, so I was managing, I was being the host, I have a house manager, I was also the housekeeper. My neighbors have all the numbers, I've never had an issue, but I realize that that is an issue, so I've reached out to a-
Yes, it's a big issue.
Professional property management company, Stripview Suites, and they're the best in the valley, they handle only short-term rentals, and so I understand that that was a concern, even though I've had no problem. But I understand that's a concern, and so we're, I've put that in motion as soon as I get a business license.
Thank you. And also, just for the record, you know, historically, we have a lot of people who come in front of the council, they come in front of planning or the council with hardships, and so many people think that because they have a hardship, and now that becomes a hardship of the council. And that's not fair to the council, to put that burden on the council, because someone bought a six-bedroom house that they, you know, couldn't really afford, and then they say, "The only way that I can afford this house is if I get this special use permit." Now, that's not fair to the city of Las Vegas to put that burden on the city. And so, that's another challenge that I have with this. It's not the city's responsibility. Unfortunately, I get it, circumstances happen, but in essence, it's not the city's responsibility.
Councilman, can I speak to this?
No.
Go ahead, please, continue, you're here on this issue.
The reason that we explained her personal issues, what you're suggesting might be a hardship, is only because this came up. We actually didn't come before you and talk about that or any of these things. We felt that she met the letter of the law that was created by the City of Las Vegas, which allowed for you to meet the laws and live within this radius, and she did all those things. So, we didn't actually come and say, "We'd like a variance because of a hardship." And trust me, I do this a lot with, you know, architectural projects, with parking and different things like that. We ask for variances or waivers because of a hardship. Sometimes they're imposed by the client, sometimes they're an existing condition, but we're not asking you to respond to a hardship. We actually feel that she meets the letter of the law.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So, I, you can talk to your staff to verify this, but before the October 17th council meeting, I really wanted to meet with you, and I didn't know that you were booked out so far in advance, so you had no appointments that I could meet. And then afterwards, when I felt, you know, I felt I was shut down because it was the bed and breakfast situation. And so, I again reached out to your office, and they said, "You do not want to see me." I sent you an email, I sent you an email before October 17th, I sent you an email after. You responded, but you said, "If your plans don't change, I'm not going to change," you know, because you wanted the bed and breakfast situation, the owner occupied situation.
Just want to answer that, so I-
And again, I tried to reach out before you four.
Thank you, Becky, I wanted to say to you-
No, 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 please let her finish, please.
I did want to give you the packet that I was able to give to everyone else, but I could not get to you. You did not want to talk to me at all, so I, I'm sorry.
And I can confirm your comments there through my staff, who can come up and attest to the fact that we reached out to your office, that every time and when we met, and then with Ms. Holmes and Mr. Summerfield again reached out to you, and, you know, that's beneath us to go there at this point.
Well, what we have to say-
It's your word, it might, excuse me one second.
Well, Your Honor, you know, you're starting to talk about this, I just really, really-
No, this is an issue of a particular, it's information-
I told staff if she had any, I told staff.
Okay, please, let's not do this now. There's an issue on the table, no, in a minute, in a minute. Where we are on this, there is a motion out there, and I did say, excuse me one second, that we can't guarantee you that this would go anywhere at all. It has given you an opportunity, which I appreciate your coming down, sorry for the hardship in your family. We absolutely understand that you own your house, all your belongings are in your house, you will come back to your house, your residence is Las Vegas. And Councilman, can you hear? This dialogue goes on. I was saying, this is her house, her belongings are in her house, and her residence is here, she's there to care for ill relatives or in-laws. And so, it was just an opportunity, there was no guarantee at all that this would pass here. It was just an opportunity to revisit something, and as far as short-term rentals, anything that's already in line, that has started before the 15th of December, or whenever it is, there's nothing new coming in for short-term rentals. And this is specific to one that was in the application line, and because of what you had brought to us, to me, it was very moving, I understood it. I see what you've done in the neighborhood, there may always be people that are pro and con, but the reality is, you've had your full opportunity here, and if it doesn't pass, that was to me the most important thing. I thought you had compelling reasons, and it made sense to bring you back. And I did reach out many times, and I think he may have forgotten some of them, I can bring staff in and repeat that, but that's not the purpose of this meeting.
Forgot what, Your Honor?
No, no, I'm saying that of the times that we had from my office-
Well, Your Honor, would you like to have the courtesy to at least extend the comments so that I can respond, courtesy to you?
What comments?
Courtesy to you.
No, 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 I'm asking, what comments was it?
Well, it is this, first of all, Becky represented it, she called the office, and she did. And I said to my staff-
Councilman, your microphone, put your microphone on.
Well, I turned it off. Thank you very much, Your Honor. I did receive your call, and I asked my staff, who then called you, and said, "Is there any change from what we saw on the 17th?" No change came, no change at all. There was no change, what were you going to say? Nothing. That's all. I mean, you found a willing listener, and I guess I can't blame you for doing that. But I don't think you think much of that neighborhood, that you own that house in. I spent a lot of time in those houses when I was a kid, a lot of time on Jessica and Francis, believe me, I know those houses better than you do.
I love that neighborhood, and when you're talking about a new mall going in, I turned to my mom like, "Yay, how fun, we can have a new mall, we can walk there to Fremont area." I love this neighborhood. I, you know, and I didn't come for, I bolded, I put on bold, you know, I'm a Las Vegas resident, my neighbors support me, I meet all the requirements.
Repeat that again, please.
My highlights were, and I met with everyone, except I didn't get a Councilman career was booked up, so I wasn't highlighting the fact that, for me, I was just highlighting the fact that I'm a Las Vegas resident, I, my neighbors support me. We've had a lot of problems with our neighborhood, like this, and I feel that I'm, should me be chased out of my neighborhood? Because, you know, I'm, my neighbor, my house is nice, and these are, these neighbors, the other houses need a lot of work. I highlighted how I meet the requirements of this SUP. And I love it here, I love Las Vegas, I'm excited about all the changes that are happening, and I was really happy that I got to talk with everyone, and they know how I, what I presented to them, and I wish I could have done the same with you before, you know, but I couldn't do it after either.
All right, well, I think there is a motion, and if it doesn't pass, I want to just go ahead and assure you, I think you've had the opportunity to present, and wish you well, wish your in-laws and everybody, and your home looks beautiful. And Mr. Palacio, thank you so much for coming in support and helping communicate something that we hadn't had before. So, Mayor, approach him.
Yeah, because I did want to say something if I could. If, in fact, the mayor's office, or anybody else's office of a council member brings an item back where the council person had moved for denial and it was granted, certainly the professional thing to do, and as I know from my almost 14 years here, is we have always discussed it with the council person involved. And I'm not sure how this misunderstanding occurred between the mayor's office, and I know that your people in your office, your assistant, for example, Bob?
I'm listening.
Oh, okay. I know that he feels that this request did not come in, at least, that's what I've been told, did not come in. So, somewhere, something got bounced bad. And when that happens, it's sort of natural that the council person, who works very hard in their law, in their district, would feel offended. But Bob, what I want to mention here, if I could, and you know that I've respected how you felt about many things, we have to separate any anger we might feel about that, if it's true, if it's not true, whatever anger, for whatever reason, from the situation with this group, or this lady here. And I want to tell you, first of all, where I see a difference, and you know I feel very much like you do on these short-term rentals, the difference is that this is not someone who lives in LA who wants something, or this is not someone here who's got another house someplace and says, "Oh, yeah, my kid's going to graduate in two years, and then I'm going to come." This is a lady, do you have your license? Is it a Las Vegas license, a driving license?
Yes.
She has a driving license here. Everything else is here. What happened is, a member of her close family became ill, and she had to go to a place where she doesn't want to stay for the rest of her life, because she's not even buying a home there or anything. She's there until the emotional situation or the help that's needed for someone who's lost a spouse is over with. And I think that's a big difference. I also feel, and if I might comment, that I do know Mr. Palacio some, and I know, and the reason why I want to explain to people who are here, the reason why we don't always believe everybody, is because they lie to us so often, and we find out they lie, and so we become jaded. Well, the reason why, I mean, I do know Mr. Palacio's and his family, and I know their integrity, and I know they're reaching out and helping people, and this is not a stranger, this is no one who has really nothing to gain from this, he's taking his time to give you help, and because I know the high integrity of himself and other members of his family, I can understand, I can believe this, whereas many times I can't. I used to be a believer all the time, and I found that wasn't very smart. So, I'm just wondering, Bob, if you might want to just think a little bit about this, because this might be one of those things, and I've had them in my own board, quite honestly, at the beginning, I felt, "Oh, no, no more of this, I'm not going to believe this," and I was very much against something. And then additional information came and changed it, and that's why I'm just mentioning this to you. Because, you know, I backed you on that other one today, because I feel it should, you know, I support the person who's the council person, but I want, did you say something? Are you laughing at me, Bob?
I was kind of giggling, because I think you voted the other way.
Oh, did I?
No.
I voted for you, doggone it. Everybody else got mad at me practically.
Oh.
But what I'm trying to say, this seems like a very different situation, because it's the first time we've had that, and it's something that doesn't appear to be a lie, it seems very true, surely we could prove all this. And because we have someone, Mr. Palacio's, that I happen, as I say, know this family well, that is offered to help out if needed. I'm remembering correctly, I hope. So, that's why I'm asking, Bob, out of the kindness of your heart, at Thanksgiving time- So that's why I'm asking, Bob, out of the kindness of your heart at Thanksgiving time, if you might really think this over carefully.
Well, if I could respond to your, Mayor Protem, through the mayor, and to the council. We'll get back.
Turn your mic off, please.
Maybe there's too many on. Oh, well. The thing is, is that it still doesn't change the situation. You've got a bunch of small houses. Some of them are in disrepair, and of course, some of them are out of code. We do our very best to avoid having, maybe the volume's too high. I think that you make a reasonable request, Mayor Protem, except for one thing. Can you learn to say no sometime here?
We always say.
That's what I'm trying to get us to do.
Does everyone post, does everyone vote and please post?
Bob, I just want you to know, I've said no lots of times.
Yep.
Thank you, and the motion carries.
Thank you so much.
So, thank you very much. Thank you for coming forward. We appreciate it. It was a very unique situation, and we wish you well, we wish your in-law well, and hopefully you'll be back in Las Vegas. I think you've done a beautiful job with that property. So thank you, council, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Happy holidays.
Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item, council, 100.
Which is?
Okay, we're on to items 100 through 103. GPA 73572 on a request for a general plan amendment from R Rural Density Residential to SC Service Commercial, number 101, ZON 73573 on a request for rezoning from U undeveloped R Rural Density Residential General Plan Designation.
Who wants to talk to you?
Oh, sorry.
We're okay. It's, no one else.
Oh, okay. Nobody else can leave. We're down to four. Okay. I mean, you can get up and walk around, because you can't leave. Thank you. Okay. No, you can't. You have to be here on the panel. Sorry. Pardon me. So we're going back to 101, just to make sure I read the whole thing. ZON 73573 on a request for rezoning from U undeveloped R Rural Density Residential General Plan Designation to C1 Limited Commercial. Number 102, SUP 73574 on a request for a special use permit for proposed 3,043 square-foot beer wine cooler off-sale establishment use with a waiver to allow a 385-foot distance separation from a school where 400 feet is required. And 103, SDR 73576, a request for a site development plan review for proposed 9,043 square-foot commercial development with a waiver to allow buildings to not be oriented to the corner and street footages where such is required on 2.02 acres, southeast corner Clark County 215 and Wallop Highway, U undeveloped zone, R Rural Density Residential General Plan Designation proposed C1 Limited Commercial. The applicant owner is VFR Southwest Desert Equities Planning Commission recommends approval of all items, and staff recommends denial of item 102 and approval of 100, 101, and 103. These are in Ward 6, with Councilwoman Fiori, our public hearings, which I declare open, is the applicant and/or representative or both present.
Yes, Your Honor. For the record, Jay Brown, 520 South Fourth Street, representing the applicant, with me is the applicant's architect, John Carroll.
Welcome.
The applicant, as you mentioned, Your Honor, is proposing a commercial development at the southeast corner of Clark County 215 and Wallop Highway. It doesn't appear that there are any issues with regard to items 100 or 101. Both staff and the planning commission have recommended approval. With regard to item 102, the applicant is requesting a special use permit for proposed beer wine cooler off-sale convenience store use with a waiver to allow 385-foot distance separation from a school where 400 feet is required. We're only 15 feet short, number one. And number two, I think very importantly, in addition, there's a right-of-way in excess of 100 feet separating the site from the school. And planning commission, as you mentioned, is recommended approval. Finally, on item 103, the applicant is requesting approval of its site development plan. Staff recommends approval, as does the planning commission, and Mr. Carroll will review it with you now.
Okay. And again, if you'll repeat your name, sir, for us, for the record.
John Carroll, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. This is our site plan we have, which we have convenience store, gas pumps, and inline retail with an end-cap drive-through. To the north of it is the 215, to the south is Darling, and to the west is Wallop Highway, which is proposed to be 100-foot right-of-way. As we are proposing on our site here, we have app landscaping, we're proposing a six-foot wall along the east property line to the undeveloped land to the east. And then for our aesthetics of the buildings, this is what we're proposing for, the gas canopy. So it's going to have some, a little bit of modern looks to it. This is the gas station. This is the inline retail with the end-cap drive-through on it, and they're just carrying modern themes, and they're adjacent to the 215 freeway.
Okay.
I close by saying that at the request, the councilwoman, we held a neighborhood meeting with staff present, the neighbors in attendance approved of our application, and we'd ask that you prove it as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lo, no. Please. And re-announce yourself.
Madam Mayor, I'm Steve Gavicki, planning supervisor.
Thank you.
Given the subject site's location along a freeway right-of-way and on-ramp where the capacity for higher vehicle traffic has been increased, the site is no longer appropriate for residential uses. The site is in an inappropriate location for commercial uses, and the proposed development overall is compatible with the adjacent land uses and districts. The proposed beer wine cooler on-sale use does not meet the minimum 400-foot separation distance from a school. While staff supports commercial development at this location, this particular use is incompatible with the school, which is located on the same side of the Clark County 215 freeway. Staff therefore recommends approval of the general plan amendment, rezoning, and site development plan review, but recommends denial of the special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You want to make a comment back on that?
Nope.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on behalf of these, any of these items? Hearing and seeing no one, we're going to close public comment. And any comments from council? Councilwoman Fiori, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So again, Ward 6, we don't get to move along with anything until we have our meetings, until we hear from our neighbors, and until our neighbors approve. So I'm excited to say that our neighbors do support this. So I'm going to just, it is going to be Thanksgiving tomorrow, so hopefully we can just move this along, and I move to approve item 100 with all staff conditions.
Thank you. There's a motion on agenda, item 100, please vote and please post. And Councilman Soroka has been excused. And Councilman Coffin, yea or nay on this?
Yea.
Yea, please, if you would.
Thank you.
And post, you did. And the motion passes?
Madam Mayor, thank you. Happy Thanksgiving to all, and also, the owner of the property promises me he'll just take a minute or two. He wants to say thank you as well.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor Goodman, Councilwoman Fiori, all the members of the council and staff. On behalf of the owners, I just wanted to make a couple of-
Your name.
Excuse me. I apologize. David Saltman, 8215 Southeastern Avenue. On behalf of the owners, two things. We deferred to Mr. Brown's expertise in handling the matter, but of course followed it very closely. Very much appreciate your approval of this matter. I think that this particular parcel is a key parcel in its relation to the high school and the city and county parcels. I think it's going to do a lot to continue to enhance the area. Very appreciative of your approval. And I'll leave it at that and simply just say happy Thanksgiving and thanks again.
And to you and your whole family.
Right, exactly.
Okay, councilwoman, let's go on to 101.
Okay, thank you. And we are going to, I move to approve item 101 with all staff conditions.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve on 101. Please vote and please post.
He was a lifer at the middle.
And that motion carries. Let's go on with agenda item 102, please.
I move to approve item 102 with all staff conditions.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve on 102. Please vote, please post. That motion carries. Let's go on to the final one, 103.
I move to approve item 103 with all staff conditions.
There's a motion on 103 to approve. Please vote, please post. That motion carries. Happy Thanksgiving, I know it will be.
Happy Thanksgiving to you, too.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to agenda items 108 through 111. Okay, 108, GPA 74340 on a request for a general plan amendment from RNP Rural Neighborhood Preservation to R Rural Density Residential. 109, ZON 74341, a request for rezoning from RE Residence Estates to R-D Single Family Residential Restricted. 110, VAR 74344, a request for variance to allow no amenity zoning, to allow a private street without a gate, to not be developed to complete street standards which is such, where such is required for proposed residential subdivision. And agenda item 111, TMP 74347, a request for tentative map for proposed 10-lot residential subdivision with waivers to allow no exterior streetlights, no equestrian trail where such are required. The applicant owner is Investor Equity Homes LLC, et al., on 4.04 acres, southwest corner of Russell Street or Russell, and Tenaya Way, RE Residence Estates, proposed RD Single Family Residential Restricted. Planning Commission recommends approval of all items. Staff recommends hooray, denial. These are in Ward 6, and are public hearing items, which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Good afternoon, Your Honor. Members of the council, for the record, Chris Thompson, 500 South Rancho, Suite 17, here this afternoon, representing the applicant. I'd like to begin by orienting you to the location, if I can get the overhead, please. Subject site is located at the southwest corner of Tenaya and Raycel. It's bound on the north by Raycel, on the east by Tenaya. To the south and west are lands within the county, they're RE-zoned, lie within the county's RNP district. To the north and east is Silverstone Ranch Planning and Development. It's actually their perimeter wall, so those are rear yards that face the proposed development. Going to the city planning element, you can see where the parcel lies. It is surrounded to the west and south by county RE-zone property. Project before you was originally approved by Clark County Commission in 2009. Ever since then, that approval's expired. The property has been annexed into the city of Las Vegas. Application for you today is really a request with slight variations to secure that entitlement. Density and intensity are exactly as approved in the county. The proposed development will consist of 10 single-family residential lots with a single 40-foot wide private cul-de-sac with ingress and egress off of Monte Cristo. The development has been oriented into the county RNP area to keep the community in harmony with that surrounding RNP neighborhood. The requested variances include with this application, or to ensure the development matches the surrounding RNP developments. With those is the request for the modified trail section. Again, rather than use the city standard, use the standard that the county uses, so that's a continuous homogeneous frontage all the way around this site and the surrounding properties. Additionally, there's a request to not have a gate for a private street, which is required by code. Again, within this area, we see with Commissioner Kirkpatrick, she likes the communities to be open. And finally, the waiver of the streetlights and curb-gutter and sidewalk on the perimeter streets, again, keeping with the RNP nature of the area. We did have a neighborhood meeting at Centennial Hills YMCA on September 27. Very lightly attended, actually didn't have anybody show up. I sat there for an hour. And then this item was before the planning commission on October 9th was unanimously approved. Finally, I would like to mention that we have shared this plan with Commissioner Kirkpatrick's office. She is in support, and we've made changes that she wanted to make sure that it fits in with her RNP area. So with that, I'll go ahead and conclude my presentation, make myself available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Let's turn over to planning, if we could.
Madam Mayor, the subject site is located within the interlocal agreement area, within planning area 2, which is designated to have a density of no greater than two units-
You have to say your name again, every time.
Steve Gavicki, planning supervisor. The subject site is located within the interlocal agreement area, within planning area 2, which is designated to have a density of no greater than two units per gross acre, and for each lot to maintain a minimum buildable net lot area of at least 18,000 square feet with a goal of at least 18,500 square feet. As proposed, the R Rural Density Residential General Plan Designation will allow for 3.59 units per acre, per gross acre, and the proposed zoning of RD Single Family Residential Restricted will allow for a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. The proposed general plan amendment and rezoning does not support the intent of the interlocal agreement between the city of Las Vegas and Clark County. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the requested general plan amendment, rezoning, variance, and tentative map. If a motion is made for approval, Public Works does have some amended conditions for the tentative map to read into the record. Thank you.
So at that time, should it pass, you're going to read those Public Works amendments, or? Of course. Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard from the public on agenda items 108, 109, 110, 111? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
New, but not new.
Name.
John Bare, B-A-R-E. You remember me. You were a big shot senior. I was a rookie freshman in Gorman.
Oh, my.
Oh, my God.
Oh, man, oh, man.
Okay. My sister was one year ahead of you. Huh? Bare, B-A-R-E.
Bare, okay.
You were on that side of Charleston. I was on the other side.
It's not bear-related too, though.
Okay. Basically, basically, I'm still one of the real residents, the city resident. I'm here for my nephew, who is two doors away on Tenaya in one of the REs. And development is great. It'll be great to have the houses there. The only thing we're concerned with is the elimination of the equestrian trail around the perimeter of the thing. We don't see it as a safety hazard or anything other than just an encroachment to gain more land, to get more footage for the track.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So naturally, naturally, we're against it. We sent some placards in. How many actually did? We weren't, somehow we missed a meeting. But anyway.
Well, I think it's very good that you've made your point, because I know how much in favor Councilwoman Fiori is about all these attributes that are out in the ward, and I'm not sure if she's going to want to bring Mr. Thompson back up to discuss that, but you made a record of your comments, and I'm sure Councilwoman's heard them. So thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy turkey day.
You, too. Thank you.
I never got with you of any of your historical needs, because I can tell you everything on the north side of Charleston as he can the south side for the same area. Probably more because I was one of the five boys during my era, from '46 to the '70s, that were in that area, because everybody else had moved out.
Forty-six, wow. You beat us. We came in '64.
I know.
So thank you.
Okay, let me sit down. You have things to do.
Thanks, happy Thanksgiving. Anyone else wishing to be heard on these items? Okay, I'm going to close public hearing. I'm going to turn it to Councilwoman Fiori and Mr. Thompson. You may want to respond to if Councilwoman wants equestrian trails or not, whatever. Go for it.
Yeah, the request is not to eliminate the trail. The request is to use a modified trail section. So the city trail section requires a streetlight, requires a split rail fence, has a list of things that make it a very formal trail. Within the RNP and the county, they use a type-two based horse trail, 10 feet wide, which is what we're proposing, and we will provide the entire 20-foot width, so that if at some point all of this did kind of change what it was, the common element around the property is there to go ahead and create whatever sort of trail that would need to be updated in the future, but the trail that will be provided.
Did you hear that, Mr. Bear? Did you hear his comments?
Yes, I am.
That the Baer, good. Good. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Just to clarify, because I didn't quite understand that. The item says with waivers to allow no exterior streetlights and no equestrian trail where such are required. So you're going to change that? Okay. That's it.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So, again, in the northwest, prior to me being on the council, our commissioners that are in the northwest and our predecessor, they really didn't love each other. And so we do. So Commissioner Larry Brown and Commissioner Kirkpatrick and I, when my city and their county bumps up against each other, we literally meet and talk about it. And this particular parcel was Marilyn Kirkpatrick's parcel. And now it's in the city, because they annexed into the city. With the request, number one, anytime anything in Ward 6, our horses have to have access, period. So I will never approve something that our horses, if it's a horse trail, doesn't have access to. So with this, as it says, it's not having a horse trail. What it's saying is it's going to be the same as the county code, to where we're not designating the trail, but the horses can be on the trail, and we're not putting lights up, because Commissioner Kirkpatrick wanted her county space and our city space to stay the same, so that's why we're looking at these waivers. But our horses in Ward 6 will be traveling amongst this area and on that and around this parcel. I hope that's not so confusing. Mayor Protem.
As long as it stays solid that way.
Yep.
I sometimes question some-
Nope. I'll get rid of developers before I'm going to get rid of the horses. Just know that in Ward 6.
Uh-huh. Okay.
Yeah. All right.
All right, so shall we proceed with 108?
Yes, let's proceed. 108, so I move to approve item 108 with all staff conditions.
So there's a motion on Agenda Item 108? Yes?
Yep.
You're cool? Okay. Please vote, please post. And again, Councilman Soroka's been excused. Motion carries, 109.
109, I move to approve item 109 with all staff conditions.
Thank you. There's a motion on 109 to approve. Please vote and please post. That motion carries. And 110?
I move to approve item 110 with all staff conditions.
Thank you. There's a motion on 110. Please vote and please post. And the fabulous 111, that carries, 111.
So 111, I move to approve item 111 with all staff condition and as amended.
Okay. And I'll amend the-
Can you read that? Yeah.
And you are? Bart Anderson, Public Works. And conditions 8, 9, and 10 in your staff report need to be altered a little bit to read as follows. Condition number 8, dedicate an additional 10 feet of right-of-way for a total radius of 30 feet on the southwest corner of Racel Street and Tenaya Way. Additionally, grant an equestrian trail easement over the required equestrian trail. This trail shall be maintained by the homeowners' association. Number 9, construct pavement on Monte Cristo Way meeting standard drawing number 209 as modified by the approved drainage study. All other off-site improvements are hereby deferred. In accordance with Title 19.02.02.5.F, the applicant shall make an improvement contribution equal to 50% of the city's bond estimate costs for all deferred improvements. The streetlight contribution on Monte Cristo Way may be reduced to 25% if a service is provided. The required equestrian trail must be constructed meeting current city standards. And number 10, should read as follows, prior to the approval of construction drawings, sign a covenant running with land agreement for the possible future installation of half-street improvements per city standards, including curb and gutter, sidewalk, street lighting, permanent paving, and possibly fire hydrants and sewers on Monte Cristo Way, Racel Street, and Tenaya Way adjacent to this site. The covenant agreement must be recorded with a county recorder, and a copy of the recorded document must be provided to the city prior to the release of this parcel map for recordation of this tentative map, I'm sorry.
Thank you. And with each one of those conditions, you agree?
We do agree, yes. Thank you.
Okay. So now...
We had a motion to approve item 111 with all staff conditions as amended, read by Bart Anderson.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion on 111. Please vote and please post. Motion carries, and thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you very much. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Appreciate it, Mr. Baer. Thank you. Class of what at Gorman? What year?
Mr. Baer.
1964.
64. The year I came.
Are you happy?
First neighbors were the Remoers when you lived in Barkin House.
Yes. Thank you.
Your Honor, I have to say about Mr. Baer, he was a freshman when I was a senior.
Yeah, he was a big shot.
Yeah, I was class of '61. Thank you for surviving. I'm glad you've lived this long.
And you're okay?
Personality, yeah, you're high in height group.
Thank you.
That's why the mayor shakes your head.
That's what the mayor was afraid of.
And you're okay now with the horses, right?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Good. Go ride. Happy Thanksgiving. Go ride. Happy Thanksgiving.
Not alive.
Okay.
The kids, uh...
Okay. All right, we're on. Next is up. All right, so 112 has been abayed to the 5th of December. So we're on to Agenda Items, and we do have, this is public hearing, so those of you who have been sitting quietly waiting. This is 113, 114, 115, 116, 117. 113, ZON 74250, on a request for rezoning from C1 Limited Commercial to R4 High Density Residential. Number 114, VAR 74251, a request for variance to allow two proposed six-story, 72-foot-tall buildings where 55 feet is the maximum height allowed. 115, VAR 74518, on a request for variance to allow 482 parking spaces where 528 are required for proposed multifamily residential development on 5.38 acres. Number 116, SUP 74517, on a request for a special use permit for community center private accessory use. And Agenda Item 117, SDR 74252, on a proposed, on a request for a site development plan review for proposed 280-unit multifamily residential development. The applicant is Silverstein Properties, Inc. The owner is GGP Meadows Mall LLC on 9.63 acres located approximately 2,121 feet west Valley View Boulevard, north side of Meadows Lane, C1 Limited Commercial Zone, proposed R-D4 High Density Residential. Planning Commission recommends approval of all items. Staff recommends approval of item 113 and denial of 114-1 through 117. These are on Ward 1 with Councilwoman Tarkanian, are public hearing items which, public hearing items which I declare open. Applicant or representative present?
Yes, good afternoon. Jennifer Lazovich, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here today representing the applicant. If you can look at the overhead, please. So the location of our property is right here. We are adjacent to Meadows Mall, which is located here. This is Meadows Lane. This is Valley View Boulevard, and then this is the 95. This is a 10-acre piece of property that essentially sits between the Meadows Mall here, and then as you travel west, the Toys R Us used to be over here, Cardenas is now here, and a number of other businesses that sit closer to Meadows Lane. The property where we're proposing this multifamily project has never been developed for anything. It has sat vacant for all the years that the retail has been around it. And this project has come together as a partnership between John Tippins with North Cap Development, who's in our audience and is familiar to many of you, as well as with Silverstein Properties, which is a family-owned company out of New York City. Two representatives from that company have flown out from New York City to be with us today, Serge Demigien as well as Tom Lucid. Background on Silverstein Properties, they have developed the New World Trade Towers in New York City. They've also done the Four Seasons, a number of office projects, condo projects, other multifamily projects. They're very experienced in the development market, and so this is a partnership between those two companies. When they looked at an area to build this project, Mr. Tippins calls this a passion project. He lives downtown. He believes wholeheartedly in the city, all of the city in particular, the redevelopment and expansion of not only downtown Las Vegas, but the medical district. And the medical district, Councilwoman Tarkanian has done a wonderful job, really with planning that and getting a lot of uses to start to come in there. But they need some housing options. And to try to get some housing options close by that would be high-end, market-rate housing is an important piece that's kind of missing in this area. So Mr. Tippins reached out to a number of employers in the downtown area, and I'm not going to read the letters, but I am going to turn them in for the record, but I want to tell you who they're from. And they've written letters of support of this project. The first letter is from World Market Centers. There's a letter from Fine Properties. There's a letter from the Molasky Group of Companies, SDMI, which is another medical employer here in the downtown area, SRS Real Estate Partners, and Douglas Crook and Associates, as well as the Moonridge Group. And a number of these people-
Have you submitted those here?
I will.
Please.
A number of these companies who wrote these letters are also involved in, thank you, are also involved in the medical district and bringing uses into there that fulfill what the city's vision is. So with Silverstein and North Cap, they believe strongly in this piece of property to be a good use as a multifamily development. In working through, we did do a voluntary neighborhood meeting. We understand and respect the neighbors' concerns, just on multifamily projects in general. And, but a couple of things that I do want to point out. So the R1 single-family homes that are located south of Meadows Lane, if you're familiar with Meadows Lane in this area, there is no immediate access by car or even right now by pedestrian to come out of this single-family home community and onto Meadows Lane. If you want to get in or out of the homes that are south of Meadows Lane, you need to, I came in through Decatur, but you need to go over that way. It's a little deceiving, because it looks like there's a road right here called Essex, but it doesn't actually go all the way through to Meadows Lane. And then, of course, north of the project, we have the 95, which separates us from the homes that are north of here. On the application itself, we are asking for a conforming zone change to go to R4, but I do want to point out that this project would have been conforming and could have been built in C1. We wouldn't have needed the zone change, and maybe not some of the waivers that we're asking for today, but it would have maybe likely required a component where we added more retail. And in an area that has been struggling with retail, not just here, but everywhere, with bricks and mortar retail, we didn't really think that that was, you know, if it walks like a duck and it talks like a duck, we should be a duck. And in this case, we felt that we should be true to what we were, and this project is really truly meant to be a multifamily project, but acknowledge the commercial uses that are next to us. So in that regard, it's conforming, because it comes across as more of a horizontal mixed use. So we did ask for the zone change to R4, which staff recommended approval of. And then we had a use permit for our clubhouse. Now, on our site plan, we have a fairly large clubhouse that's located towards where Meadows Mall is. It is a private clubhouse. It is only for our residents. Our entire project is gated. But because of the size of the clubhouse, and we want to do a lot of special and unique things inside that clubhouse, we had to ask for a use permit to get that clubhouse the size that we wanted. And when we asked for the use permit to get the clubhouse to be that size, it came with additional parking. So we've asked for the parking variance, because, again, we're not opening this clubhouse up to anybody from the outside. It's for our own residents, and we need parking for our project. Our project is parked according to code. The only thing that made me have more parking was the larger clubhouse that is built entirely for our own residents. So we've asked for the use permit, the parking variance for what the clubhouse would require. We have asked for a height increase for these buildings, to go from 55 feet to 75 feet. Your codes have recently been changed, actually, to acknowledge that height increase. Interestingly, if we had stayed in C1, I wouldn't have needed that increase either. You know, again, in the C1 area, I could have built this project or entitled this project with a lot of the underlying approvals that go with C1, but... So we've asked for that, and then, of course, we have the site plan review that puts it all together. The final thing I want to point out is that we worked both with the Planning Commission, specifically with Commissioner Quinn, as well as Councilwoman Tarkanian's office, on the fencing for the outer perimeter of our site. And specifically at the Planning Commission, there was a condition added, which is condition number one on the site plan review, that states an eight-foot wrought iron fence shall be required around, well, that says the east perimeter of the site. But in further working with Councilwoman Tarkanian, I think that the height of that is important and necessary for this area for various reasons. So we provided this detail both to Councilwoman Tarkanian's office as well as to staff. It does show the height of eight feet, but it gives some ideas of the type of fencing we could use. The curving at the top was very important to Councilwoman Tarkanian for reasons that she may choose to share on the record. But we're also going to have landscaping. I mean, our plan, as you can see it here, these are just picture, pictures of existing fences that we would like to utilize, but our exterior perimeter also has landscaping. So it's going to be that wrought iron fence with landscaping on either side of it, and I think that that would look very, very nice. Our only entrance and exit is over here off of Meadows Lane. And as I mentioned, the project itself is gated, so you come into this Portica Share area. Here is our residential leasing office. But beyond that, here, as well as here, the project is gated. This shows you the exhibit, the elevations, which you already saw previously, but the reason I wanted to point these out is to further point out that it's an interior-accessed building. There is no exterior exposed stairwells, all the units and all the doors to the units are on the inside of the hallways, so it's very secure in and of itself. Be happy to, I know that was kind of a long presentation, but I had to explain a lot of things, so be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, ma'am. I look at this, by the way, this elevation, please leave it up there.
Okay.
Is that the elevation as 75 feet or as 50-some feet?
As 75.
So that's-
We have components of it that go up.
This is what you've applied for.
Yes, correct.
But right now, the code is saying you can't go that high?
Correct.
See, what I can't figure out is why we don't go ahead and allow that, because it's right on a freeway. You've got commercial on one side, and you, well, you've got a big mall and a parking lot on the other side. So I don't see how height would affect this particular situation. It may, not at all. I don't think it could possibly affect the lifestyle of anybody else around there.
I don't think it actually affects the lifestyle of anybody, but because I asked for that R4 zoning, within the R4 zoning category, you have a height maximum in that category. If I had stayed in the existing zoning or current zoning of C1, I wouldn't have had to ask for that increase, because it would have been allowed, but...
You will, and you know, that's a trap some might fall on. But, Your Honor, I'm just wondering if we could have explained to us, can we waive that? I hate to see underbuilding on an area where no one else is going to build.
Well, let's hear from Planning, but I thought we did pass the 75 feet, so why doesn't that apply?
Through you, Madam Mayor. That is in regards to fire and building codes, the zoning ordinance, the maximum height restriction as is, as Ms. Lazovich stated. And to your point, Councilman, yes, that is why the variance is on this applicant, part of this project, that is a mechanism by which to seek relief.
And when do we address the zoning period to get in compliance with what we passed?
Staff is considering a future text amendment to revise the zoning district's maximum height limitations to either meet or exceed the new building and fire standard.
In our lifetime?
Yes.
Okay.
Your Honor, I can add to that. Staff is not considering, staff is writing that text amendment. Isn't that right, Mr. Silverstein?
See, that's even better. Thanksgiving, see? Way to go.
Absolutely.
Wonderful. All right, so how about comments? Anything from staff?
Madam Mayor, Steve Gebke, Planning Supervisor.
Three times the charm. Way to go. Go for it.
While the proposed multifamily development adheres to some of the objectives of the Las Vegas Master Plan and the Meadows Walkable Community Plan, staff recommends denial due to the associated variances pertaining to parking and building height. Staff does recommend approval of the proposed rezoning, as it does conform to the existing MXU mixed-use general plan designation. And staff also notes the subject site contains an existing off-premise sign that is currently in conformance with the existing zoning district. However, the proposed rezoning of the property to R4 High Density Residential would create a non-conforming use of land. As such, staff would request that the billboard be removed by way of condition of approval on the site development plan review. Thank you.
To which you agree?
To which I do not agree. At the Planning Commission, Jennifer Lazovich, for the record, at the Planning Commission, they added a condition. It is now condition number five on the SDR, which states that the existing off-premise the existing off-premise sign shall be allowed to remain. The existing off-premise sign that is there today is located approximately here, right adjacent to the 95. That, if this project should be approved and the applicant closes on the property, they will never own the property where the billboard sits. So, to say it another way, it is not ours to give away, it remains with the ownership of the mall.
Oh, that's not the Stone Crabs ad, is it?
It might be.
I think it is, and that's in perpetuity, I think. Is it? You don't know? You know, the ad is you go around by the Meadows, Meadows Mall there, that one sign before you slip off onto Valley View. So, it's probably that one that we're talking about.
Yeah, I believe that one was put in before I came on the council.
Oh, yeah.
And I think that is true, ma'am.
Okay, all right. This is a public hearing, anyone here on that particular issue? These very patient ladies, come forward and state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Michelle Van Lander, and I am here representing myself and also my brother, who owns 4300 Nolan Lane. I oppose all of the items that go along with this property.
Excuse me, could you tell us where in relation to the proposal, where your property is? Are you south of the proposal?
I am south of the proposal. I'm inside that neighborhood community that doesn't actually have an access area.
That access, oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah. However, this is still going past Decatur and Valley View, and both of those streets are very well congested right now, and I can't imagine adding construction into this mess because we already have construction in this mess. You know, with the 95 constantly expanding and changing and everything, this is already a very highly, you know, constructed area. Adding this in is just going to make everything a giant mess. If you have something like this and there happens to be an emergency, you know, something of, say, like a mass casualty incident, I can't imagine having emergency vehicles trying to get into this area. It's already difficult to try to go south on Decatur, you know, towards Alta, and then just having this area as far as Meadows Lane, because Cardenas is like right there in the corner, it is such a heavily congested area. I just don't understand how this is going to work, as far as that goes. On top of that, it's two six-story buildings, and here it says 72, not 75. I just, as somebody who like has a home in this area, it's just a giant eyesore, as far as I see it. On top of that, it's literally right on the 95. We've already had incidences where, you know, we had that earthquake a while ago, and you guys were worried about the structure of the bridges nearby. How is like two six-story buildings in large construction not going to affect that as far as the 95 construction and those bridges? I'm like, I'd love an answer to that because I really didn't see anything there. On top of that, you guys want, you know, 40, or what, 482 parking spaces where 528 are required, 46 less parking spaces for this type of development is just not going to stand. I'm in the neighborhood nearby, I understand how like this neighborhood works. I really don't want to see extra cars parking or Ubers coming through and lifts, adding to that traffic congestion that can cause a lot of issues. And just because, you know, we're south of it, doesn't mean people won't park there because we know how Las Vegas is, if you can find the parking space, you're going to make that parking space work. And I just don't want to see that as far as inside this neighborhood. Other than that, I'm like, I'd like to make this short and sweet, I really just do not want to see a multifamily residence in this area as far as on that property. This is already a commercial zone, why not keep it a commercial zone? I really don't want to see it become, you know, more, more housing, more people, more crime, I just don't see it as something as it's going to be safe. And as of right now, the way that I see it, because I am renting out that property right there in, on Nolan Lane, that's just going to affect our family as far as having that because I see that as it's going to affect my wallet with people not wanting to rent a house if they're going to rent, you know, high-end residential units, so...
Thank you. Thank you for coming, thank you for waiting, thank you for your comments.
All right, thank you, and have a happy Thanksgiving.
You too, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, anyone else, public hearing? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
My name is Virginia De Silva, and I oppose the project because the school is so small. Where the kids are going to go, it is no schools around. So, it's going to bring more to the Cloud County School District when it's no schools around. The high school is small, the elementary school is small, so where are they going to put all that? Also, the water, the water that I, how many families are going to use the water? Is able to, the water district is able to provide that water to that area? Already it's polluted, so where are they going to bring the water from? It's no water. All the time, they increase our prices because it's water shortage in here in Las Vegas. And I don't think so Las Vegas neither. Already it's, where's they going to go? We homeowners need to stop growing trees or something because of water. So, I oppose this project.
Thank you.
For the school, the congested streets, and that street that you are talking about is one way in, one way out. If it's a fire or something, how the fire department is going to go and extinguish that fire?
Thank you.
So, I oppose the project.
Thank you for coming down, making your comments. Okay, anyone else? I'll close public hearing, and any comments from council?
I did have a question for the applicant, and the last public comment sort of hit on my question was, there is one way in on Meadows Lane, and I was going to inquire about crash gates and about fire egress and ingress in case something happened. I think that is a very valid point.
Thank you, Jennifer Lazovich, for the record, and just, these are vehicular, right? So, the, off the street is Meadows, off of Meadows Lane right here is our main entrance and exit, but if you come over here, it might be kind of hard to see with the microphone, there's another gated vehicular access opening in this location and right here. And as you know, if you've driven this site, Meadows Mall has a ring road around the exterior of it, and so technically, and my apologies for not making that clear when I did my presentation the first time, there would be three ways in and out. Now, you'd have to, you know, be able to be a resident, you can't just come in here unless you had the ability to get in.
Right. I just wanted to ask that question so that, I thought that's what those little cutouts were, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Councilwoman.
This land has been vacant almost since the time it's, well, anything else was built around there. We have not had anybody rushing to build anything there. During the time I've been on the council, which is almost 14 years, the only suggestion ever made was, well, perhaps we could put an outdoor theater there, but nobody wanted to do that. And also, there would have been some problems with having an outdoor theater there. When you have to make decisions, you have to look at everything. We have there a business area which is declining. We have a mall, as many malls throughout the country, is fighting for its life. They've been innovating, they're trying everything that they can do. We all, however, on the other side, have other problems. We have youngsters who have been in that area, and I know that, I wasn't quite sure, could you show me on the map where these two ladies live? You had the map there earlier, yes.
I did not get the address of the second lady who spoke, but the first lady...
Where does the second lady live?
Oh, they, same property, so they live south of Meadows Lane.
Oh, same property, yeah.
Over in this area somewhere.
Is that about where you live, ma'am? How far back do you live from?
Excuse me, if you could come up and point to where you are.
Oh, you're, they're over on this side because they're closer to the YMCA.
Oh, I see, okay.
Just my map doesn't go down far enough.
Okay. Which is, we, the reason why we, I was concerned is I've had the Meadows Mall people tell me through these 14 years that we have ruffians who live in your area, and those ruffians, they didn't want to have a way that they could get over to the mall because they didn't want the mall to have problems. People in your area tell me they have ruffians in the mall, and the mall people are coming over and causing problems. Somebody's coming one way or the other because, as I go and look at the walls, there's holes kicked in these walls so that you kids sort of climb your way up like a rock formation. And I believe that it's going to continue unless we start to change the atmosphere of that neighborhood, and we have to get some new stuff out there. We, and that we've been working with the mall people very hard in getting new types of businesses, cutting-edge businesses, innovative businesses, not the usual thing which seems to be having problems like Macy's and Sears and Penny's. And to me, this is a good project for that area. Why? Because we don't have anybody else who wants any other projects there. There's not come in 14 years since I've been on it, not one has come to us for that, for a project there. And secondly, you're going to have people who will have income that they can spend at those businesses, and those businesses need that income. And you're going to have, you know, maybe they'll need a barber shop or something we don't have yet in that particular area, God bless you. And you have to look at that. I've been someone through all these years who has been very careful in not impinging upon neighborhoods. I've worked very hard to protect the citizens' rights, but I'm not anti-development because I know development is needed at times, and this is one of the areas where it's needed. I think we have in these lots, people who dirty them up, I think people trash them at times, and it doesn't look good for the area. You have a beautiful project here that I'm going to condition has lush landscaping, and I think, you know me on that one. So, and also, the people who complained that lived across the freeway, it didn't affect them really at all, that I could see. We drove these areas to see what it would be as far as our viewing, and I don't think from where you live, it's going to cause that much problem either because we're going to put them right next to the freeway. I mean, you know, it's going to be hugging that area that's already has multi-story buildings, not that tall, but they have multi-story buildings. In addition to that, the medical district needs people, these are professional people, and they need a place to stay, and these people need a place where they can have, we need places that will take those who have lower incomes and those who have higher incomes. We have this proposed here, and we have a lower-income one which might be coming out later on Decatur. But I have to tell you that I feel that this is necessary. I only had seven complaints about it, I expected more to tell you the truth because usually if there's something, when you didn't want the opening to go to the mall, I think I had a lot more than that, I know I had. So, to me, this is not, a lot of people objected to it. I think a lot of people know that that's, that area there needs to be perked up, it's starting to decay some. We've been fighting it, but we have to have a big something more, and I just think this will help us there. Now, in order to protect the vandalism, whichever way it goes, that's why the eight-foot fences, that's why the curvature at the top, and in order not to make you into a solid block prison-type thing, that's why we have the wrought iron going up and down because you can still see the beauty of the green grass and things like that. Now, as far as security, you have security in that apartment building, don't you?
Yes, we have 24-hour personnel, hoopie and staff.
And how many would that be of at a time, do you know?
Hard to say, I don't, I was trying to say, hard to say, hard to say how many it would be.
Okay, because you need good security there.
Yes.
And also, as far as the schools, are you aware that they're building a new school now where Griffith Elementary, which was a small school, is being torn down and they're building the larger school? They're making it a two-story school, but it's going to contain more children. I do not think there's going to be a problem finding a place for children in that particular area because they're expanding the school, and my understanding is they've already started that. Now, as far as water, I agree with you, I absolutely agree, but there's nothing we can do, and if we don't build, they're going to build every place else. Some of the, I do believe we're in a much tougher situation with water and having so many new people come from California, so many new buildings, I'm sorry, developers, but that's what I'm afraid of, I'm afraid of the water problem. Nothing we can do with that, though, that has to be determined with a different agency. As far as fire is concerned, we will have the fire department give its inspection, and believe me, in Ward 1, and I think throughout the city, we are very careful about the fire situation, and we have one of the best fire departments in the country, they're highly ranked nationally, and we would not do anything at all to in any way impede doing as much as we can to prevent and to contain fires. And then, I didn't understand fully about the trees, but I will tell you that nationally, the feeling is more trees, more trees, more oxygen, more trees for the environment, more trees for healthy living, and we've tried to add the trees, too. So, I wanted to answer as many of your questions as I could, and I wanted you to know why I'm going to move for approval of this. I greatly appreciate you coming, though, and giving us your thoughts, and letting me maybe perhaps give you information that helps you understand why, and I move for approval of this project, and it better be good, okay?
Okay, let's take it one at a time, let's start with agenda item 113, please.
All right, agenda 113, I move for approval.
This motion on 113 to approve, please vote and please post. And again, Councilman Soroka has been excused. That motion carries, let's go to 114, please.
And I move for approval on item number 114, and with all of these motions, I'm considering meeting any conditions that have been placed.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion on 114 to approve, please vote and please post. Motion carries on 115, please.
And I move to approve on 115, I, I've discussed with you about the parking, and I think that the way you're planning it is going to work out, but that's something you have to watch very, very carefully.
Understood.
So, I move for approval on that.
115, motion to approve, please vote and please post. Motion carries on 116, please.
And I move for approval on item number 116.
Motion to approve on 116, please vote and please post.
And Jennifer, you, oh, excuse me, you're, you know, and I know how well you work with individuals that are developing, to let them know that, make sure it looks nice. Just remember, we may not be Summerlin, but we may be the future great medical district that people will come from all over the world, so we expect as good as Summerlin or anyplace else, okay?
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and finally, on agenda item number 117, please.
Move to approve.
There's a motion to approve on agenda item 117, please vote and please post.
And I hope that this turns out to be a tipping point for that area. We've tried it with a few little stores, but we, you know, we got some good stores that moved out, some that went out of business nationally, and we've had a few come in, but we need something really good, and that's why we're counting on you. That's your contribution to our city.
No pressure, got it.
Thank you, and all we do aside from wishing you happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving to all of you.
We hope this is one of your first-year projects, there's a lot to build here, it's a great place to live, being a former New Yorker, I can tell you, no place like Vegas.
Thank you very much.
This is a good place.
Okay, we have already, we have obeyed number 118 until the 19th of December, and oh my goodness, look who's here, our, oh my, please stand up so everybody can see you. Oh, would you look at this turkey, oh.
I think, ma'am, that she came to you for dispensation, the way that turkey did with Trump.
Mayor, I have to tell you, yesterday, we had a council person, not to name any names, Councilwoman Creer, that mentioned that he might miss out on some holiday festivities. So, I wanted to bring the holiday festivities to him.
Oh, are you the best?
That's so kind of you.
That is so sweet.
And you do it so well.
Happy Thanksgiving, I'm the city clerk, that's right.
The city cluck, is that the sweetest? We'll show the president of what you do with a good turkey. Wow. We, she is, pardon, give me a break. Okay, so, and we've heard, that was the 19th, for number 118, it's been obeyed to the 19th of December, and we've already heard 119 to 124. So, we are now on 125, you came back just in time before your goose is cooked, and we are on agenda item 125 to please set the appeals filed or required, public hearings, instructing the city clerk to set the public hearing dates, appeals with city planning commission meetings, dangerous building nuisance litter abasements.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you, oh my, it's so sweet. This is our final public participation, citizen participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of city council, no subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name for the rec- If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name for the record, the amount of discussion on any single subject as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed. It may be limited. It's your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in any dialogue. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? And because it's 5:00, and it's Thanksgiving Eve, I'm going to set the time at 1 minute each. So, anybody, please come forward, state your name for the record. And thank you. And Ms. Stacy. Thank you.
Stanley Washington, Your Honor. I think it should be reversed since it's Thanksgiving. We should get five versus three. I came all the way down here for three minutes. One minute, I respectfully request--
Okay, no, enough. You get three.
Thank you. Thank you. Stanley Washington, for the record. Two items. Number one, I don't recall that the World Market Center item ever got a public hearing. I know it came before redevelopment, of which then it was said it was going to be a public hearing that was deferred to the city council. And it got to the city council, it became a consent item. So, it's never had a discussion about the $30 million TIF money that they got, the employment plan, how it's going to work. We never got an opportunity to meet the developer, as we have in previous times. In 2004, you came, Mr. Kishani, Mr. Sampson. We always go ahead and have our opportunity to meet the developer, Your Honor. The idea that we're going to give somebody $30 million, and we never get a chance to go ahead and meet and plan the community is kind of like, you know, unheard of to me. So, I'm respectfully requesting that the councilmen have that town hall meeting, so we can go ahead and meet the developers, and go ahead and do the business that we're supposed to do, like we'd normally go ahead and do there. And of course, it's his prerogative not that we're going to go ahead and, you know, and do what we have to do anyway, because I've been doing this for a very long time. Like I said, none of you were here in 2004. Your husband, excuse me, your husband was there, and Brad Jarvik was over there, and we had to have to stop and get it right then. So, the fact that we have to do it a little bit this time, too, that's okay, we'll get through it. So, councilmen, respectfully, okay? Number two, the Opportunity Zone. I'm understanding that the reason why the city's not promoting it, because it's not a city event. That's what I've basically been told. Meanwhile, I don't know how many events that come out on the different newsletters promoting different community events and things that are basically going on. So, if I'm being told today that the only way an event makes it to any councilperson's newsletter, that it has to be official city business, then I need some clarification on that. So, if the councilmen are even willing to go ahead and do that, I know you can't do it today, but certainly, we need to go ahead and know in terms of that. Because the fact of the matter is, is we, this is a program, now even though it's being put on by the state, it is specifically targeted for communities like the Ward 5, 89106, which is the most unique in the whole state. So, the idea that we have our constituents and our people out here who don't know about this, the city staff, and all the other folks know about it, but we're not promoting it because the state is putting it on, it's not on ours, but it's for our community, doesn't make sense either, okay? So, once again, there's 485 seats in this chamber here. I need, my job, I need at least 200 of them coming out to find out what's going on. Your Honor, you know it is, we're always the last to know, because we're not engaged. So, I would think that this, this council, to make sure that the people are here, because the program is for them. It was put together by four black people. Senator Booker out of Jersey, Senator Scott out of South Carolina, and you had Congressman DeTuchin out of Cleveland, and the one out of Wisconsin. Four specifically communities like ours, for us. So, the idea that we're not all on top of this, and not just the councilmen, quite frankly, I haven't heard any of the elected officials talk about it, which is shameful to me. But that's okay, Your Honor. I've been doing this for a while. I'm the vanguard for the community. I will continue to go ahead and do that. You guys have a good day. You, too, Ms. Faurier. I haven't been over to go ahead and talk to you in a while, but I'll be back. Thank you very much.
Dorothy Barnes, P.O., Box 466, Las Vegas, Nevada. I'm still trying to get the police--
Take your hat off, please.
Ladies have to take their hats off?
Yeah, everybody takes their hats off unless it's for the--
Had to cover my hair. Anyway, I was hoping to find out, why is it taking so long to remove my name off of this program where they're running drug operations? And evidently, my name is in there. People, they have told them to discontinue using my distress signal. People after money, they're still trying to use it. It's like I'm still being horse-whipped and driven by these people that's greedy, putting people on drugs to collect money. I know a number of people they put on this drug. And those people are stifling their addiction. They're turning to me to use me to pay for this drug. I'm asking the police, why don't you question the people and find out who's giving them this drug? And get that person under control distributing this drug. Evidently, it's an illegal drug. It's not being issued through Walgreens or CVS. Something has to be done soon. Thank you. Happy, how about Thanksgiving?
We'll see you soon, we know. Anyone else wishing we heard, just come forward, state your name.
John Johnson, for the record. I'm coming for a couple of different reasons. The first reason is about the cannabis consumption lounges, or permits, or whatever. I've been engaged in this for a very long time. Senator Ted Sagerbloom is a very good friend of mine. We have Isaac's THC Club, which is named after Councilman Isaac Barone in North Las Vegas. And we're working to get one in North Las Vegas, as well as one here. So, I've had meetings with Minerva. I have emails documenting our long history of emails, and us going back and forth. I feel like I've been kept out of the loop on the recent meetings and everything that's been going on. I also found out that Councilman Creer, you went to San Francisco to look at some ordinances, or look at San Francisco. It seems like the community is getting everything last minute, when you guys have these forms and stuff like that. So, I'm trying to find out, is there an email list, or who can I contact?
If I may, we're not allowed to respond, but I'm going to take the prerogative of the chair. If you will be in touch with Councilman Creer's office, he will be able to give you at least some links and find out where you go. Because I have a son in the marijuana business, I'm not allowed to even get involved and respond to you. But because it's a ward, perhaps, issue, or a funnel issue, I mean, you can call any office, but because you mentioned Councilman Creer, you at least know who he is, and you can just call his office, and I'm sure they'll be able to provide you with contact information.
But, and that's the point, and that's why I'm coming here, because at the end of the day, you guys have--
Oh, got, answer. Councilman Scott, I mean, our counsel, Scott.
I was going to indicate that the marijuana social use venue ordinance is out for its business impact statement. If you, I'll give him my email address, and he can contact me, and I could be in touch with him with regard to where we are on the ordinance.
Good. So, Brian Scott, our counsel lawyer, he'll give you his email, and if you'll step down to the end there, if you'll step down there, he'll get that to you.
Okay.
Happy Thanksgiving, thank you.
Can I say one more thing, please?
Sure.
All right, so, also, we want to talk about the historic West Side. I know you guys pulled something off of the agenda earlier, that we're going to do that. But I want to talk about the condition of the historic West Side, and what we're trying to do. You know, it's been a long time that it's been--
Right, that's, that would be Councilman Creer, for sure.
Yeah, correct. So, you know, it's been a long time that it's been underdeserved and not developed. So, we've developed an organization, and we're going to be coming every meeting, and we're going to be talking about the condition of the historic West Side, and the lack of preservation, and the lack of economic infusion that has been lack of. So, yeah, we're definitely going to be bringing that to the council over and over again. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving. And, okay, anyone else? All right, we will move on to Agenda Item Number 127, which is council recognition. So, we're going to start with councilwoman, everybody's deserted, you're on.
And they need to stay.
Okay. In case my family's calling me to start--
Same old, same old, here we are. Go.
I was just going to say, in case my family's calling me for the turkey stuffing preparation, I have to stay so they have a quorum. I just wanted to--
Right, you do, that's--
But, really, the only thing I wanted to say is that there's so many things going wrong now, but so many blessed things we have, too, that I hope, I hope we think of those in our families and are thankful. So, from all of us, I say a very wonderful Thanksgiving, and God bless you all. And that's it for my topic today.
Wonderful. Let's move right on down. Councilman Creer?
Thank you. As I mentioned, Creer's community conversations have been canceled for November, December, due to the holidays. January 24th will resume at Tenaya Creek Brewery, which is located at 831 West Bonanza Road. Any questions, you can always contact my office at 702-229-5443. Get a chance to see the Smith Center, which is located in Ward 5. The Lion King is here, celebrating their 20th anniversary, and performing at the Smith Center until November 25th. More than 90 million people around the world have experienced the awe-inspiring visual artist for the Lion King. Tickets are available. Visit thesmithcenter.com. Dear Folks Christmas with Izzy and Herman. Dear Folks Senior Center located at 3343 West Washington Avenue will present a Christmas story in partnership with J.T. McWilliams Elementary School on Saturday, December 8th at 9:30 a.m. Residents Izzy and Herman are promoting the opportunity to adopt a student to help make their holiday more joyous. If you'd like to get involved, a student list is available, and gifts are requested by November the 29th. For information, please call 702-229-2787. Mariachi Soul de Mexico. Mariachi Soul de Mexico will present Mariachi Christmas featuring De Jose Hernandez on Friday, December 13th, at Sammy Davis Junior Plaza in Lorenzo Park. This is a fun-filled family event. For tickets, call 702-229-2787. And then, the Las Vegas Youth Basketball League, Doolittle's annual basketball league for 4th and 5th graders, is underway. Volunteer coaches are needed. League play begins January 23rd. Games are played at Doolittle Community Center on Wednesdays and Thursdays from 4:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. For more information, call 702-229-6374, or 702-229-1736. And then, Las Vegas Lead Hazard. Lead impacts the human body, so please contact the Las Vegas Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes Program at 702-229-5935 to receive information for free lead, free paint for eligible households. Don't forget, you can always stay in touch with us on social media, on Twitter, @Cedric Creer, on Instagram, @CouncilmanCreer, and then on Facebook, Councilman Cedric Creer. Thank you, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much.
Feliz Dia de Gracias.
That, very good. Call Councilwoman.
Trying to show off there.
I know, I know. What's up with that? So, Ward 6 updates. We will be resuming Mondays with Michelle on December 10th, from noon to 6:00 p.m. at Centennial Hills YMCA. And I have to tell you that we are, first of all, Happy Thanksgiving. Put your fat pants on tomorrow, and eat, 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 and have a good time. But we are preparing for a Christmas Fantasy Forest in Ward 6. So, Tulie Springs, we have 30 different Christmas trees that are being designed by many of our folks, including the Northwest. Our Commissioner Kirkpatrick is doing a Nellis Air Force tree and an education tree. Our Commissioner Lawrence Weekly is doing a Kwanzaa tree. We have a mosque in our Ward 6 that is decorating a tree with mosques. We're going to have menorahs out there. Hanukkah is December 2nd. We have a lot of businesses out there designing a tree. My tree, I'm designing with guns and diamonds. That's my Christmas tree this year at Tulie Springs. And so, on top of all of the Christmas Fantasy Forest, so you guys get to run around the forest and see all these trees lit up and beautiful, we're going to have our Cowboy Christmas, December 1st, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. And meanwhile, it's in Tulie Springs, Floyd Land, but understand, because it's our event, it's the Christmas Fantasy Forest, there's no charge to get in our park if you're coming to our event for the Christmas Fantasy Forest. So, when you get to that gate, you say, "We're going to the Christmas Fantasy Forest," and they'll say, "Have a good time." So, on December 1st, in the Christmas Fantasy Forest, we're doing our Cowboy Christmas. And I'm going to have the Cub Scouts out there serving you guys hot chocolate, thanks to Commissioner Kirkpatrick, she is sponsoring that. On December, every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, you can just bank on Santa Claus being in the forest, so you guys can take photos with Santa Claus every single weekend. He is going to be there. And then, December 15th, we're going to give presents out to the youth, like we did last year on Santa and the Parks. We're going to be giving out lots of presents. So, this year, from the 1st to the 31st of December, we're making a whole December all about Christmas. And so, that's my big Christmas Fantasy Forest. We will talk about animals. So, I'm always trying to adopt these bunnies out now, because we have a rabbitat, I call it, in the Tulie Springs. And so, now, so this week's animal that we're going to hopefully adopt is Blueberry, which is a rabbit, seven-year-old male rabbit. And you can go to our Animal Foundation and adopt him. He would be a very nice addition for Thanksgiving. Don't cook him. And then, we have a cat. Her name is Piney. It's a him, his name is Piney. And he's six years old, and you can go to our foundation and adopt him. Happy Thanksgiving, we love you.
Thank you very much, everyone. Staff, thank you. Our little cluck right there, thank you so much. This has been wonderful. We wish you all happy vacation, if you're taking them, if you're not, and you're still here. Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you, tech, from behind. Thank you, our marshals, who always keep such good eyes on it. And to your families, best of everything. And just a couple of other reminders. Christmas tree lighting ceremony at Opportunity Village this Friday at 6:30, and a menorah lighting at Opportunity Village on Sunday, the 9th. The Great Santa Run downtown on Fremont Street, December, Saturday, December 1st, at 8:30 in the morning on the Third Street stage. And the Christmas tree lighting ceremony on Fremont Street will take place at the Third Street stage on Tuesday, the 4th, at 5:00 p.m. And a menorah lighting will also be downtown on Fremont Street. I don't quite have the date, because Hanukkah is on the 3rd, I believe, maybe the 5th. Anyway, most importantly, everybody, our next meeting is December 5th, here at City Council, at 9:00. And anyway, God bless, be thankful for everything that's good in your life, and things that are bad, just know there's always tomorrow, and everything looks up. So, happy Thanksgiving, and our best to everybody.